In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening, everyone. I want to apologize in advance for my voice. I had been sick in about three years, so, and I don't miss it, but I'm not feeling too well tonight. So if you find me falling asleep here at the chair, I'm going to apologize in advance. It's, I am really under the weather. So I'll do the best I can to speak up, and if you can't hear me, just let me know. We'll start the meeting off with any board member reports. Mr. O'Leary?
Nothing other than, Mr. Messer and I are going to be meeting again tomorrow with the town administrator.
We did have a meeting with Andover.
With Andover, Jim. So I'll defer to Mr. Messer.
The meeting with Andover, our consultant and our directors that met with the other side on getting the answers that Mieprhied asked, that Andover had a answer, I think that promise is gone. We have a meeting tomorrow morning, hopefully we get an update. So right now, if all Andover's questions were answered, then the only thing in the path to filing FDIR is identifying a location for the chlorine injection plant on Route 28. That still is in negotiations.
Okay.
And that's all I can tell the board at this moment.
That's okay. That's good.
Steve can comment otherwise.
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Schultz?
Are you two honorary citizens of Andover yet, or?
That happened last year.
Just one issue. Michael and I, and Mike Gilberto as well, we sat through CIPC last week, and we did a study on capital projects that we're looking at for the next few years. One thing I want to alert the public to is I really believe we need to put some money into our roads. Some of the roads in town are in tough shape. I think at the pace we're going, the roads are going to trend downward, and we need to jumpstart that program with some more funding. And one of the things I would ask for everyone to consider is using the interest money from the Pulte investment money to earmark that towards the roads, to try to get more funding to the roads, because if we don't increase our funding, I think our trending is going to be in the wrong direction, and we need to get ahead of that, because it costs so much less to basically fix a road to the point, if you wait for it to get reclaimed, it's going to cost you multiples for that same per foot of road. So this is something I think we should think about.
May I comment?
Please.
It seems like the cleaning of the roads hasn't taken place. There's a lot of sand on the roads as it relates to my trip from my house to here. Yeah, I can feel it on the bottom of the car, which seems to, I know the weather hasn't been the greatest, but it seems like they do need a good cleaning. In the process, identification of the holes and things, damage has been done over the winter, should be noted, and they should start a repair cycle. I know some of the roads really need to be replaced, but the hole should be filled. And I think we're getting close to the time of the year that that needs to be done, if we haven't passed it already.
Mr. Gilberto?
So I'm happy to report the next meeting, what the exact schedule is for streetsweeping. Regarding the patching of the roads, where we do have that new hotbox trailer, I know that we have been doing patching throughout the, throughout the winter, when conditions allow for it. Mr. Messer, if there's any specific location that you want to provide me after the meeting, I'm happy to forward it along to make sure it gets on the radar as soon as possible, if it is not ready.
Yeah, but typically, streetsweeping wouldn't start yet. I mean, we're very fortunate that the winter has, seems like it's coming to an end, but I don't want to jinx us.
But it's a little early, I think, for the streetsweeping typically, but an update, I think, would be.
Yeah, usually we're sometime in April, so I'll give a more detailed update next week.
Jane, make sure the minutes show the chair said winter's over. I didn't say that. Don't jinx me. Anything else, Mr. Schultz?
No.
I just wanted to congratulate Jennifer Ford, our Youth Services Director, and Amy Lutzkoins, who coordinated the reality fair. Couple of us, Selectman Schultz and I, were there manning a couple of the tables, and it was for the junior class. It was a great job by everybody who was there, and they made us lunch, and the kids had an eye-opening experience. So it was a great, a great time, a great day with the kids.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed it. I had an unexpected passing in the family, and so I missed out on the opportunity, but...
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed it, too, because I participated last year. What a great program.
Yeah, it's a great program.
You know, it's great for the kids, and really kind of fun to participate, too. And it's a great learning experience for them, so.
Yeah, their facial expressions are pretty good, right? When you tell them, "Okay, you need a second job." "I've got to go with it."
"You need a second job, you've got to pay some utilities."
"I have to insure this car?"
My son is a junior, and he wants to be a writer, and he kept coming over to my table saying, "This is depressing. This is depressing." Yes, you know, "Get a second job and leave your parents alone," you know? So it was a great, it was excellent, excellent. Jennifer Ford, this was her first reality fair, too, and she did a tremendous job putting together and organizing, and I know Amy helped her out a lot with that as well, in the Youth Services.
That's great that you brought that up. Thank you. Anything else?
I guess I either missed it because I got careless in reading, or I wasn't asked.
Well, we'll make sure you're on the list next year, because they're always looking. I think you were on the email. I could have sworn I saw your name on that.
Must have missed it, then.
It's okay.
And there's one more thing I just wanted to mention, and I'm sure that we're going to talk about that 40B development, because I noticed a couple of comments that were made on social media about whether or not the board had voted to approve the project, and I just want to clear up any misconception that the board of, the select board is the board with jurisdiction to approve or deny, but we had quite a few people that appeared here not too long ago at a public meeting about it to participate in commenting, and I know that there was a pretty decent effort made by the town administrator and staff, and Danielle McKnight, to incorporate all of the town's concerns, or the people that showed up here, the residents' concerns about the 40B. So that next goes to zoning, to the zoning board, bar of determination, but at this point, in the preliminary phase, it's been given the green light to go ahead, and that stuff is on the town website, too, for anyone that wants to read it further.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up under my board member comments, because I wanted to let the public know, because I think there's a misconception out there that it's been approved. And my understanding is, the only thing that's been approved is that they're allowed to submit an application for the project. That's all they've been allowed to do. Has not been approved. This is where the process starts. So I just think the community needs probably a little clarification on that. I don't know if Andy or Mr. O'Leary want to maybe, you know, highlight a little bit more of the next steps.
Yeah, I would be happy to. And again, first of all, I want to acknowledge the effort put forth by two groups. One, citizens at large, as far as offering their input and opinions and concerns in relation to the proposed project. And again, the administration and town hall employees, as far as following through, as far as addressing all of the issues that potentially face the proposal as we understand it. But to the chairman's point, exactly, this is just the first step. And again, basically, I would have been very surprised if the state didn't say that the site was suitable for housing, because it is suitable for housing. Now, is it suitable for 200 units? I don't think so. And again, there's a long process to go through, which will allow for a significant amount of public input, there'll be public hearings, there'll be notifications for abatis, you know, within 300 feet, and of course, with social media and everything else, and the town, I'm sure will include others, you know, to be assured that there'll be proper notification as far as what the public hearings and input is being asked for and so on. So to your point, Mr. Chairman, you're right. This just provides Mr. Yaber and his group the opportunity to file a comprehensive permit with the town and submit for some financing approval through the state. So it's got a long way to go. There's a lot of discussions going to take place. There'll be, if past practice is going to be repeating itself, there'll be subcommittee, there'll be a subcommittee appointed by the zoning board of appeals to sit down with the developer, to see if we can come to some sort of a conclusion in relation to an acceptable proposal. If that's the case, that's what will go forward to the board of appeals, as far as the comprehensive permit. If we can't come to an agreement, then the zoning board of appeals does not find that what's being proposed is acceptable to the town, it then gets appealed to the state. But we've got months and months and months of work ahead of us, so. But again, I'm not surprised, but one thing that I do want to comment on, as a result of the public input and the work that was put in by the administration here, I don't think I've seen a comprehensive permit application with so many areas of concern addressed in the letter by Mass Housing, that pinpoints specific areas that need to be addressed by the developer, you know, as part of the comprehensive permit process, so that was very helpful.
Steve, is the next step basically wait for the proposer to file the ZBA?
Right. So the next step is it's for...
It's in their court.
It's in their court to determine whether or not they want to move forward, and whatever they determine to move forward with will be filed with the zoning board of appeals, and that's what we have to react to. And again, that could change from what was originally proposed.
Mr. Schultz, you want to?
Yeah, just a couple of things to clarify, to see some of the comments on social media. The town did not, this board did not vote for this project. It was not before this board. The town, in conjunction with a lot of different departments, filed a letter of essentially opposition outlining the issues that the town had with the project as currently offered. And a couple of things for the public, once the request is filed, the zoning board of appeals will have 30 days to open a hearing, 180 days to close that hearing, and then have 40 days thereafter to issue their decision. So you're looking at a minimum six-month timeframe for anything to really happen here to be finalized.
Do you want to talk anything, just briefly, about some of the actions you and the town planner are working on in regards to getting a grant to maybe support some of our efforts?
Yeah, I had a chance to talk with the chair of the ZBA today, and the ZBA is in the process of forming rules and regulations for this project at the advice of town council, which will enable us to get some grants for the things such as a wetland review, the stormwater review, the different firms the town would hire throughout this project that the developer would pay for, or we'd get grant money for. So it was good education for me, and that's kind of where we're at right now, as I think as Mr. O'Leary just stated is correct, is waiting for the developer to make the next move.
Mrs. Minipelli?
And then another important point in terms of the process, too, is that the abatis will receive written notification of the hearing, and because the project is so important, we would, I'm assuming, that we'll also be receiving written notification, but that the town will be publicizing that public hearing. Just in terms of the informational meeting and the comment, comment period of time, we had a number of people that showed up here for, to put in, put in. So we should be, again, essentially broadcasting and publicizing when that hearing will be, because people will also be able to come and speak in favor of it or against it, and just to repeat what Selectman Frisco had said originally, the town is not against 40B. That would be wrong to suggest that we are, because there have been a number of other parcels that have been approved for this type of a development. But I think there was a strong opposition in this particular area because of the location for many obvious reasons, not the least of which is...
And the density.
...conservation and density, and hopefully those things can be worked out to people's satisfaction, but people will get notice of the hearing, and I'm assuming we'll be also posting it in some visible portion of the website, so that people will know in advance, and we'll make sure that we're, you know, keeping the public apprised at our meetings and when that, when those hearing dates will be.
Okay. And that's all I had. Mr. Gilberto?
Just one final thing relative to the proposal for 20 Elm Street. A lot of folks have asked if there's any opportunity to appeal the issuance of the project eligibility letter by Mass Housing. There is no formal appeal process, and in fact, there was a community that appealed in Superior Court. It was the town of Pembroke. They appealed, and ultimately, the case was, I believe, dismissed. Did I get that right, Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, and the reasoning is, it's not a dispositive action by Mass Housing, meaning all this thing, all Mass Housing's letter does is allows them to apply. It doesn't approve the project, allows them to apply for the project.
Thank you. Anyone here for public comment? If not, we'll take the minutes of March 18, 2019, regular in executive session. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 18, 2019, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
I have a motion of second by Mrs. Minipelli. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 18, executive session minutes as written.
Second.
I have a motion of second by Mrs. Minipelli. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, we are at the 6:15 hour of the evening for Town Own Land, continued from March 18, 2019, starting with map nine, parcel 54, 55 Old Andover Road. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a continuing hearing from a couple of weeks ago, relative to requests to purchase town land. The purchase would be conducted via a competitive auction run by the town's tax title attorney. I'm putting up on the screen here that will actually approve the order before you...
This is 55 Old Andover Road?
That's correct. 55 Old Andover Road, and it's that, the site actually surrounds One Bear Road, which is the other parcel that's been requested from us.
Do we have any residents here that are interested? No. Two gentlemen. I know what you're in the air for. Okay. Hey, we've got it.
Fortunately, I seem to be struggling to...
Well, it's in our, I think it's inside page 25, right?
Correct. So we, what we've done is basically reviewing with the building inspector, the town planner, and the conservation agent, we've come up with a recommended motion relative to this parcel. For the public, it has finally come up on the map, and now let's come back down from the map. Okay. So we have a recommended motion relative to 55 Old Andover Road, and you can recognize the format here for the different conditions. And again, as has been the case over the past couple of meetings where we've discussed this, we have a new condition that we've added, stipulating that the property shall not be subdivided. That's number six. That is a new condition over this most recent iteration of these reviews, and we've included it here again. In the case of 55 and Old Andover Road, we recommended that three of the conditions be approved, that the, first, that the site not be used in and of itself as a separate building lot. That's pretty customary for what we've done. Second, sorry, number three, which is the second condition we're recommending, that no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises, unless the premises is combined with the adjoining, and premises not used to create a new or additional building lot. And then again, of course, that the property not be able to be subdivided. I am noticing an error in regard to the dollar amount. The motion identifies a minimum bid price of $600. That was intended for a scenario where we had a buyer looking potentially to buy our three properties, and we didn't update it. It should read $1,000. That would be half of the total cost. There's another parcel which the property owner is interested in that's surrounded, it's the one in blue up on the map here. Those two combined would end up being about $2,000, and we believe the same buyer is going to buy both of them.
Okay.
So if we could just make the note that instead of $600, it reads $1,000. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
Why, I know this is the only two lots that have been requested, but why would we not put the other lot up that's directly adjacent to it additionally?
57, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was curious, too.
Other than it hasn't been requested.
So really, that's the only reason we did not receive a request for this parcel. What we, we would need to...
This is the success, is, man?
We would need to advertise that parcel through a new advertising process, because we haven't gotten a full location for that parcel. But I don't, if there's anything that includes us, at least to my immediate knowledge, from selling that property, if we wanted to do that at one point. So it would be much like...
The proximity of it all is just so close, and, you know, part of our goal is to get it back on the tax rolls and let the neighbors enjoy the use of it, but also have the rest of the community enjoy the tax revenue that we should be receiving on it.
When I went and looked on the map, it looks like one of the structures is already, some portion of it falls into the town-owned properties, or is, am I misreading that on the map?
The driveway?
No, the structure. There's an extra structure.
There are two structures that appear, and I'm sorry, but we're not, we're always in trouble typically here this evening, but there are two parcels that were actually demolished, two structures that were demolished after the tax title, and you can see them both gone right there.
All right, so those are both gone?
I believe that they're not there at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
So we can come back to the board with a requested, a recommended action of parcel 57?
Well, we could take the action tonight on these two, and then...
You know, I'm just thinking out loud now, and I don't know why I didn't think of this sooner, but, you know, why wouldn't we conjoin these three lots and then offer it all up? That way, we can be assured that everything is back on the tax rolls, as opposed to slivers all around.
So we'd have to have it re, we'd have to send someone out to survey it, right?
Well, you talk about a public hearing, that's, that's the advertising of public...
Well, but to do what Mr. O'Leary's suggestion, which I think is a good idea, we'd have to resurvey the whole thing and go through the legal process of changing it, right?
Actually, I'm kind of looking at Mrs. Minipelli to confirm or to correct me, but I think the way we would probably easiest, most easily handle it would be to auction all three as one, I think one auction, so that they're either all purchased together or not purchased together. I don't know if the law prohibits us from doing that or not.
No, I don't think so. I, did, did we survey the other two lots, though?
No.
It looks pretty well-defined on the map, although it might not...
What Steve's saying is...
These are the only requests that we have.
Yes, right.
But I mean, while we'd like to honor the request, we'd also like to do what's in the public's best interest, and that's to get back on the tax rolls, and, you know, who would then want to purchase that one little, the one in blue?
Maybe the person across the auction, you know? It makes sense, because the requesting party only asked for the, those portions.
The two.
Right. It's 54 and 58, but the woman, the individual who owns up above, might be more interested in 57 than the people that live at number 53. So...
That is possible.
Not necessary to combine it, but if they, you're, you're making an imposition of don't subdivide it, so if these individuals adjacent to it purchase it, they can't create a separate lot.
Well, it's eight, nine...
Or if that's what we both do.
7,000 square foot.
No, of course not. No.
Mr. Messer.
It's our land.
Question for you, Michael.
It's tax-taking, right.
And the map that I have, Bear Road seems to cut through that lot. I don't know whether it's correct or not. Bear Road is an accepted street, so what would happen there?
So the, it will not change the location, the location on the ground of the street, nor will it change the location of the layout on any plan if we go through with this thing. What would change is where the town currently owns to the center line of the layout, the town would no longer own to the center line on that side, it would go to whoever the buyer would be. So that's really the change that would, would happen. And the land on the other side of the road is currently privately owned at 53 Old Andover Road.
Well, it's to the middle of the road.
Okay. So what's the board's desire? To go through with these two parcels and then add the other one later?
Regardless, if we're going to do something with the third one, we need to advertise it. We wouldn't be able to do it this evening.
Sure, absolutely. That's what I'm saying.
What we could do is if the board's intention is to allow all three of these parcels to be available, then we could authorize it with the dollar amount corrected to represent one-third of the cost at $2,000, so about $600, like it's written. But we would hold on the auction until we get the board's approval on the third parcel and do them all at once. That's how we would proceed, if that's the board's desire.
Mrs. Minipelli?
I mean, to my recollection, the owners were kind of already tending to that area, and I, I think they were really specific about the portion. I know it's going to auction, so it's anyone's bid that the higher, highest bidder wins, but they were already tending to that, from my recollection of our public hearing. They're already taking care of that portion, and that was really all that they were interested in. So, and again, there might be someone across the way, or to the north of that parcel, or northeast of that parcel, that might be interested in acquiring number 57.
Okay, so we need a direction here. I like what the town administrator's proposing, but if the other board members rather just go through with the way it's structured, Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, just, Michael, it's just a matter of advertising, you're right, the top one. We've already got the meets and bounds, there's a plan on record at the registry, we don't need any engineering on it.
Yeah, I mean, we describe it as just...
Yeah. We just haven't...
I don't see a need to survey it in order to achieve it, it's just a matter of...
No, but if we were going to combine it into one lot instead of three...
You may need to.
We would have had, we would have to...
No, the deed will just say parcel one, parcel two, parcel three, in the same deed. You're fine. I agree with Mr. Gilberto's point.
I think we should, I'm fine with advertising the two, but I'd also like the third one included.
Yeah, yeah.
At the same time, Michael, so just delay it.
So we would hold, we'd delay. We, I think we intend to do the same with the property over on, is it Audubon, Is Your Street, Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Because a similar issue came up, where there's a third parcel, which we believe is ripe to be advertised at the same time, because it is in such close proximity, so we intend to do the same thing for another area of town already, so that this would not be inconsistent with that.
Okay.
What's the dimensions of 57?
I think it was 4,500?
Yes, 5,000.
Oh, 57? Was that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, .10 acres.
It's about three of an acre total that we'd be...
So if that's the case, we're talking about $675, it should be $2,025 times three?
I think all three in together come into about an acre.
Right? Yeah. So we, I think we, I want to say we used $1,800 has been the number for the cost, plus, plus the additional cost, so I think if you, if you...
600 is good.
Vote at the 600, we should be able to.
All right. So you need another motion for us to advertise this other parcel, or how do you want to do that?
No, we just give you direction.
Are you just going to do it?
We need to put it on the agenda for the board to vote to do it, I believe.
Okay.
Why can't we do that tonight?
And if we don't, we'll just...
Why can't we do it under old business?
Because we, there's a, there's some notification requirements for other boards and committees prior to us going forward with it, so we, I think we should be...
Chop, chop, huh?
I would, I would encourage we do them all at once.
It's called the open meeting law. Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Chair?
All right, go ahead.
You, you had highlighted 62. Is that the, is that a...
That's in the butter.
Is that a lot configuration?
That is a lot configuration, yes.
And I believe they access it through Bear Road, right, generally?
I believe so, yes.
So is that little, is that little...
Their frontage is, their address is actually...
Goose neck and a street or a roadway?
That's Old Andover Road, so the address, I believe, is Old Andover Road for 62.
Wow.
Number 59.
Yeah, so it's Old Andover Road, the frontage is on Old Andover Road, but it's a crazy-looking pork chop lot.
So potentially, 62 might be interested in...
In 57.
...acquisition of 57 as well.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so we'll proceed with these two, and the administration will put on the agenda...
The next, begin the process, put in this parcel and the others on Audubon Road, which we discussed this morning.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, this is public hearing or not?[1709.83]
It's a continuation.
All right, so...
For March eighteenth.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, if there's no other comment or input from the public, I move to close the public hearing.
Regarding fifty-five.
Regarding parcels fifty-four and fifty-five, map five, parcel fifty-four and fifty-five.
We have separate motions for these, for these parcels, but if you want to close for fifty-four and then close for fifty-five, that might work.
I don't see fifty-five.
No, it's, no number, it is fifty-five, but it's fifty-four and fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
Yeah. The street address is fifty-five.
It's parcel fifty-four, number fifty-five, Old End Over Road. That's the street address.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, I just spent ten minutes on this.
Fifty-five is the only one that's...
All right, so Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing on the proposed selling of map five, parcel fifty-four, fifty-five, Old End Over Road.
Second.
I have a motion to second, just to confirm. You said fifty-four and fifty-five?
Parcel fifty-four, which is fifty-five, Old End Over Road.
Yep.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay. So, motion to second, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sell by auction, town-owned land designated as map nine, parcel fifty-four, located at fifty-five Old End Over Road, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter sixty, Section seventy-seven B, at a minimum bid price of six hundred, uh, six hundred dollars.
Second.
Yep. Buyer to pay all fees, costs, and expenses associated with the conveyance, subject to the following restrictions. One, not to be used in and of itself as a separate building lot. Two, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on a, on the premises unless the premises is combined with adjoining and premises not used to create new or additional building lot. And three, property shall not be subdivided.
Second.
I have a motion to second, any more discussion? None heard, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing on town-owned land, map nine, parcel fifty-eight, One Bear Road.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? None heard, all those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to sell by auction, town-owned land designated as map nine, parcel fifty-eight, located at One Bear Road, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter sixty, Section seventy-seven B, at a minimum bid price of $600. Buyer to pay all fees, costs, and expenses associated with the conveyance, subject to the following restrictions. One, not be used in and of itself as a separate building lot. Two, no building, other, or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises unless the premises is combined with adjoining and premises not used to create new or additional building lot. And three, property shall not be subdivided.
Second.
I have a motion to second, any more discussion? None heard, all those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. I'm sorry.
And Mr. Chairman, the next parcel is located at twenty-three Riverside Drive. I should note that we did receive recommendations from the Planning Commission and from the Conservation Commission not to sell this parcel because of its location on the riverfront. But however, based on what I took from the feedback from the board at the last meeting, which was that the board was interested in considering a sale, we did review the conditions and have highlighted the conditions that we would encourage the board to place on the property, the restrictions that we place on the party, if property, if it in fact does desire to sell the board, to sell the property. The first is it would not be a separate building lot, the second that it would not be used to satisfy minimum zoning or health code requirements for construction on or use of any building on adjoining land. So that one is there because, you know, depending upon which property acquires it, there may be a need to, to use it for some purpose related to septic system or otherwise. And based on its location in the, in the riverway, the feeling was that we would not want to create additional land to be used for that portion, for that purpose, for environmental reasons. Number four, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises. Again, that condition is there because of the property's location on the riverfront. And then number six, the property shall not be subdivided.
Okay. Mr. O'Larry?
You know, my only concern again is when we put this, you know, shall not be used to satisfy minimum zoning or health code requirements, which would be, you know, replacement of a septic system, you know, it's still going to be subject to conservation, border health, wetlands protection, and all the rest because of its proximity to the river. But if you look at the configuration of these lots, all along Riverside Drive, they're back up to the river, some of them are very small, very narrow, and, you know, they may have to build, build an elevated system, you know, and they may have to put a tight tank in there. I wouldn't want to preclude these people from putting the tight tank on this particular parcel if they own it. That's, you know, and I understand the environmental concerns, but I believe those environmental concerns would be addressed during the permitting process. They wouldn't be allowed to do something that would adversely impact the environment, but at least they're going to be acquiring some additional space right next to their current home to address the issues if they come forth later on. If you look at, I mean, the, the house is very close to the street, off of the river, you know, for a reason, you know? And if I recall correctly, I think the topography there is pretty steep. I, I don't know, I just, why would we not allow them to, to address their septic issue within the current guidelines and restrictions?
Mr. Minipelli.
I didn't, from the individuals that were here and interested, again, we've talked about the access to the river, and it wasn't for any intended purpose of putting anything on it, it was because they were taking care of it and also maintaining it. I think one particular owner said it was in his interest to maintain it. But, I mean, we have two boards telling us, you know, against selling it, and perhaps that's because they may have been, it looks like there's different parcels in between those homes already, so it may have formed part of buffer for what was already on those lots or was being intended for those lots already. So I think the owner was really clear, he's already keeping it up, upkeeping that, and that, that was the intent, was to just keep maintaining it, not to build anything on it.
Just please state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, I'm Julie Craver, twenty-five Riverside Drive.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Julie Craver, twenty-five Riverside Drive.
Thank you.
We put in a request to purchase the land. We don't have any intention to build it. We just wanted to maintain it. We have two kids, they enjoy going over there. We just want to keep it.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm not concerned about whether you're looking to build on it or not build on it, my concern is that if you're going to be purchasing it, why wouldn't you have it available to yourself, should you have to replace your septic system to use it for leaching or a tank or some other purpose of that nature? Because what we're proposing, being asked to vote on here is to preclude you from doing that. You know, there's, if you had to do your septic system over, had to put a new tank in, you know, you had to put a tight tank, it's like, why would you not want to use this? And why wouldn't we want them to be allowed to use this for that purpose? It's only going to enhance the public health situation. I'm not worried about you putting a garage or a shed or anything else on there.
Mr. Misery?
It seemed to me that to have an existing system and they need to move it or expand it, they're not making the situation any worse than it already is if there is an issue.
No, this would enhance it.
It would enhance it.
This would enhance it.
It would be a benefit.
But what we're being proposed, what's being proposed to the board for consideration is to preclude them from doing that, and that's my concern.
Yeah.
You know, this would enhance their ability to come into compliance.
So they're making a recommendation, and we appreciate the recommendation, but we have the ultimate decision, so if you're making a recommendation to modify it...
I'm just throwing it out here for discussion.
I'm with you, I, I'm in agreement.
And again, I'm just more concerned where, you know, we appreciate you stepping forward and being willing to buy it, and it's great to put it back on the tax rolls, but, you know, I'm more concerned from a public health standpoint, why wouldn't we allow you to consider using this?
It's not like their excuse for many other requirements.
Right. And again, everybody else along the river, I think currently, the current situation, this just provides additional space for consideration to have a more compliant system.
Okay. I'm trying to find the motion again so I can just see the restrictions again.
It's number two on the list.
Number two?
Yeah. Premises should not be used to satisfy minimum zoning or health code requirements for the construction on or use of any building or adjoining land.
It's page seven, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I just wondered if the administration had any other input from the border health as to how this would, not putting this requirement, it would make things worse. I just, I don't see it myself, but...
I don't, I don't immediately have in front of me the response back from the board of health relative to this, to this property. Again, I think the restriction is more focused on the pack, the fact that the neighborhood is already proximate to the river and concern over future alteration of land associated with development. That's where it came from.
So we could, I'm sorry, Mr. Minipelli, you wanted to go first, my apologies, go ahead.
No, but I'm assuming also that they would have to apply to relocate it, and that would, Conservation Commission would come into play in that...
Conservation, border health, everybody else, all the current restrictions are still in place, and to me, this could only enhance their ability to be in compliance.
So we could go with one, four, and six on this parcel, and I think everyone's satisfied, knowing that if there is a request to put some kind of a leaching or a septic field in this area, they'd have to go through the permitting process and approval process anyway.
Yeah, they have to jump through the hoops.
Are we all in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. If we don't have any more discussion on this, I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close, close the public hearing on the sale of town-owned land, map seventy-eight, parcel seventeen.
Motion in an early second from Mr. Minipelli. Any more discussion, unheard?
Mr. Chairman, I move to sell by auction, town-owned land designated as map nine, parcel fifty-eight, located at, this is the wrong address here, at twenty-three Riverside Drive, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter sixty, Section seventy-seven B, at a minimum bid price of, this is a single parcel, just six hundred? It would be eighteen hundred.
It would, it would be eighteen hundred.
Okay.
I don't know why that didn't get updated.
Okay. Minimum bid price of eighteen hundred dollars, buyer to pay all fees, costs, and expenses associated with the conveyance, subject to the following restrictions. One, not to be used in and of itself as a separate building lot. Two, no building or other structure...
No, 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 no.
No, no, I'm saying number two, but it is number four.
Okay, got it.
No building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises. And three, property shall not be subdivided. I just want to see something here.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to second, any more discussion?
Why wouldn't we go with three again? Please go second again.
Again, I believe that the intention is to restrict the construction of a building or structure on the property in the proximity to the riverfront, that's why.
Okay.
It's the board's determination, obviously, but I think that's why you're seeing that condition show up here, based on the recommendation of the conservation agent and planner.
You're asking why we're not going to use three?
Right.
Well, I thought of when I read it, yeah, because we typically use that.
If someone wants to put their garage or a shed there, again, it's still going to be subject to zoning, it's going to be subject to setbacks, it's going to have to go zoning Board of Appeals, it's going to have to go to conservation, it's going to have to...
Also, a structure could be a septic system, you could argue.
Yeah, I don't know how that would be interpreted.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's why I think we used the language Steve's talking about. Do you want to modify your motion?
Mr. Chairman, again, subject to the following restrictions, not to be used in and of itself as a separate building lot. Two, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises unless the premises is combined with adjoining and premises not to be used to create new or additional building. And three, property shall not be subdivided.
Second. I have a motion to second by Mr. Schultz. Any more discussion? None heard, all those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
And Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, I know Mr. O'Larry corrected the parcel's address, but the motion reflects map seventy-eight, parcel seventeen.
Yep.
Correct. Yes, twenty-three Riverside Drive.
So Mr. Gilberto, what's the next step for the individuals that are interested in bidding?
So we'll be working with town council with our tax title attorney to move forward with an auction, so this property will be disposed of at auction. It should not be held up by some of the other things you heard this evening that need to be delayed because we've, we'll be handling it separately as its own auction.
Noticing...
Should be soon. There'll be a notice in the paper, we'll have Karen call you to let you know that, to keep an eye out for it and when the bids are due. And just to be clear, because we had an issue with this come up in the past, basically, we set that fee to cover our attorney's fees, there's also an advertising requirement, so there's a cost above and beyond the eighteen hundred dollars for the cost of advertising in the newspaper and then reporting at the registry of deeds. So it's eighteen hundred dollars plus that cost, okay? But that should be soon, it should be in the next few weeks.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for coming in. All right. Again, I'm sorry, folks at home, especially listening to me sniffle. Believe me, if I didn't have to be here tonight, I wouldn't, but I'm going to struggle through this. All right, next, we are reconsidering sale of town-owned property, map eight, parcel two oh nine, eight Audubon Road.
I believe we have one more parcel under the hearing eighty... Interesting. You know, for whatever reason, we don't have eighty-six Boroughs Road advertised on the meeting agenda. I'll provide an update, we'll put it on for the board to act on accordingly. But the news is good with regard to that, we had a meeting with the owner, he wants to subdivide a portion of the conservation property off, the conservation agent looked at the property, the two are in agreement as to where the line could be drawn, he's willing to have his surveyor draw the line and come back to us with a plan. So that is moving in the right direction, but it will take time. So this is a bit unorthodox, but I think we should vote the motion to continue the hearing nonetheless, we keep it open, and we'll make a statement at the next meeting that the action was taken to vote to continue. It won't be until much further along in June, motion to continue hearing.
Yeah.
That's correct.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to continue the hearing on map eight, parcel one forty-four, eighty-six Boroughs Road, to Monday, June seventeenth?
Correct.
June seventeenth at seven thirty P.M.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Mr. Misery, just... Second by Mr. Misery. Any discussion?
No discussion. Aye. Call for a vote?
Oh, I thought Mr. Misery.
No, he seconded it.
I thought you wanted to say something.
No, I seconded it.
No, no other discussion? None heard, all those in favor? Aye. I thought you were going to say something, my apologies.
No.
I can't hear you, though, my ears are completely blocked, so...
It's all right.
Now we're on to eight Audubon Road?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Gilberto?
Mr. Chairman, through you, subsequent to the board's vote at the last meeting to sell off the property located on Audubon Road, map eight, parcel two oh nine, we received an inquiry from the resident who made the original inquiry, asking about the ability to jointly purchase the parcel, and I think, my understanding is with the intention of subdividing the parcel, which is something that was included in the approved restrictions for the conveyance of the parcel. You have a, a, a letter or an email that we received on March twenty-first from the petitioner, Mr. Nikosia. He, I believe, is here this evening, and it might be best to offer him the opportunity to explain the nature of the request if the board's still inclined to hear.
Either at the mic where you're sitting or to the podium?
Hi, everyone. Ed Nikosia, number two, Poplar Terrace. I had originally inquired about purchasing number eight Audubon Road. Grateful the board approved the sale of it. However, you know, after I looked at the map and then spoke to another abboter, John Magazoo, we said, you know, really, the, the intent of the, my wanting to purchase the land was to preserve the private, open space around my home. You know, Mr. Magazoo owns a piece of property at the crest of the hill with some flatland. That's more appealing to him than it is to me, I don't really, I wouldn't have direct access to it, I could walk up this steep incline to get to it. So if we were, if we were allowed, if the board approved, that we would be able to purchase it together and then split the land so that Mr. Magazoo, Mr. Magazoo could enjoy the flatland at the top of the parcel, and then I could preserve the open space behind my home. Now with the restrictions that are in place, it says no subdivision. Would like to, if we are the successful bidders, be able to purchase it together and then split the land so that he can have, he can enjoy a portion and I can enjoy the portion that we originally, per my original intent.
John, which, which one is Mr. Magazoo's? Mike, can you click on 196 real quick, please?
Yes, 196.
It's, oh, it said, maybe it hasn't been updated. Is that 12 Audubon Road?
Yes.
Yes, and I believe, I understand your question from Mr. Roberts.
We caught it at law and it's all white, right?
No, that's at the top of the hill, 196 is.
Oh, that's what that means. Okay. Yeah.
That's a, that's where the flat land is, and then it extends a little bit towards Boroughs Road being flat, and then it drops strictly down to the rest of the property. So, my request would be, would you allow us to purchase it? If we're the successful bidders, allow us to purchase it together and subdivide it after the sale.
So, there's no, is there, there is a building on 196 now?
No, sir.
Yes, sir. The shed.
Is a shed. Shed. And then you would build a house on that lot once you get this one in?
I legitimately, I could build on it now, but it's very confined. It's a 5'4" square foot lot.
Yeah. So, you would be wanting to acquire a portion of it so you could build a larger house on 196?
Just so you're not fitting that house with the septic system all into that small space.
I just have a question. So, 196 is a lot with the shed that you own even though our record doesn't say that, and 197 is ours.
Your...
Right.
No.
Records should say that.
197 says...
Paid all the taxes for it.
Yeah, no, it just, it takes a while to update. It does take a while to update.
When did you close on it?
Last October.
Yeah.
September, maybe, October, I don't know.
Are you saying 197 is town-owned land?
That's what this map is saying. So, there's nothing on 197, but there's a shed on 196?
Which is privately owned. An encroachment from 189, 190 from the years.
Yes, Mr. Schultz.
Mr. Magazoo, would you be looking to keep the confine, the footprints of the house on the 196 lot?
Yes.
Okay. So, you might use the other lot for maybe septic or...
Right.
Would you have an interest in?
There's swamp, wetlands down the bottom of the hill. I haven't even figured out what the distance off of that is or whatever, but if I had to switch one for the other, house over there and septic over there, whatever.
Mrs. Minipelli.
I'm just, we're putting it out to auction, so why would we sell it to both of you? We'd let you bid, each bid for it, and the highest bidder wins. I don't know why that, why wouldn't we just do that?
Well, I have a different question. Why wouldn't we sell Mr. Magazoo 197, and he can get what he wants, and then we sell 209 and...
You haven't been approached about 197.
That's what I'm saying.
John, no interest in 197?
That's what I just said.
It's on the other side, adjacent to it down the hill.
You're welcome.
Up the hill.
I agree with you. I mean, I'd agree.
Because 197 is ours.
Yeah. Right up here. Yeah, I'd buy that, too.
We also can get you a deal on it.
Well, again, you know, for us, it just, it seems a lot, I should always speak for myself. More logical to send you, sell you 197, allow you to do what you want to do with the lots combined, and then allow 209 to go off as a single.
If you do the overlay, yeah, if you, right, if you look at the topography, 197 kind of drops off where the land next to me, to the west, is nice and flat, same as my land.
The top of 209.
If you look at it, see the overlay? See how it just, 197 just drops off? I'd buy it just to buy it for square footage.
Yeah.
But usefulness, it has little or no use.
And Mrs. Minipelli, I think, I don't want to answer for them, but I think they're trying to be good neighbors to each other, and they're both trying to seek out the benefit to, without bidding against each other. I get it.
I just don't want to bid against it, and it's just not going to happen.
You might not be the only people that show up, though. There's other parcels in here that might want to bid for it.
Other people will show up to bid?
Yeah.
Well, I'm in a different type of opinion.
208 might want it. 208 is right there and might want that big chunk of land.
Which one's?
There's a house and everything on 208.
We did one not too long ago, up off of School Hill Lane and Oakdale Road Extension and Lee Road, where two abutters agreed to buy it, and then we didn't put the restriction on it, and they were allowed to subdivide it. You know, because we didn't put the restriction of no subdividing because their intent was to purchase it together and then subdivide it, and one take part of it and one take the other part of it.
I'm fine with it.
I am not proud of that.
It works.
Yeah. And, yes.
If I may, years ago, my next-door neighbor and I, the Roncos, there was a piece of land also, I believe, was Audubon, and the board at that time allowed us to purchase it together and subdivide it so that we could both just enjoy the small pieces behind our homes and know that we each had our own ownership to it. So, again, you know, in cooperation with John, so we can enjoy it together and both realize what we want out of it, we're asking now that the board consider allowing us to purchase together if we're the successful bidders and be able to subdivide.
Mrs. Minipelli.
So, subdivide, the subdividing also has to get approval, how it ends up being subdivided?
Last time, it was an approval not required because it was the two owners, and we simply just drew the line, had it surveyed and recorded, and that's the same.
And Mrs. Minipelli, just so you know, if we do it this way, and there are other bidders, we still have the right to pick whoever bidder we want, even if one bidder is higher than the other in the event of the purchase price. We still, and this board has, yes, absolutely.
These are being sold at auction, these properties.
But we have...
We've done Chapter 30B disposals where it's the most advantageous proposal, but these are being sold at auction to the highest bidder. So, that's why the restrictions are.
See, the other ones that you're talking about is, you know, whatever we can do in the public's best interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is public auction.
If I may, the last, when we did this with our other neighbors, the Roncos, the stipulation was that it would have to be, if it was purchased by more than one individual, to enable the splitting of the land or the subdivision, it had to be amongst the abutters. So, I couldn't buy the parcel and then sell half to someone who lived, someone else across town. It was limited to the, to the successful bidders and the abutters.
Yep. Okay.
So, that's, it narrows it down again. It's actually to our advantage.
Well, I don't have an issue with it.
No. So, the question before us now is, do we want to reconsider on March 18th vote? I have no problem.
I have no problem with it. I would accept that request. Board members, Mr. Misery, Mr. Schultz, Mrs. Minipelli.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to reconsider the vote of March 18th, 2019, to sell land designated as map eight parcel 209 eight Audubon Road.
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Minipelli. Any discussion?
Are we reconsidering it or just amending?
We're reconsidering the vote.
Reconsidering the vote?
Yep.
What are we doing? Avoiding it and redoing it or?
We have a new vote, new motion that we're recommending the board vote in its place that summarizes this, and the reason that we felt it was better done in one...
So good.
The reason we felt it was done in better, better in one clean vote is that these restrictions get recorded with the property, so there'd be a clean paper trail that shows that this was the vote that counted, so to speak.
But is this motion actually looking to accomplish what we're talking about, particularly in Mr. Magazoo's case, if he's a successful bidder with Mr. Nikosia, to put a structure on there?
No, and again, the reason for that was because of the fact that the property includes wetlands. And while we don't, we believe, we know the intention of two prospective bidders of how they would subdivide the property and that they would be using a dry portion of it. We don't know who else may bid on it. Again, that will be subject to regulation from the Board of Health and the Endor Conservation Commission, but because this is both a wetland and a floodway, it has a restriction recommended from the Conservation Commission.
So, it doesn't allow for necessarily what's being suggested if they're successful?
Well, I don't think, if I understood, Mr. Magazoo, he's not going to put a structure on this, but he uses it to...
Well, he said he may put a septic on there, he may flip it, use the septic out front, house on the back, back and side.
Okay, then we, then the way that's, the way we approved it, we will not be able to do that, if I recall.
Well, if we were to approve what's being proposed.
Right.
All right. So, maybe, I'm okay with reconsidering the vote. Can we continue a hearing? Or can we advertise another hearing on it and then get it clarified as to what we can do to assist in accomplishing abutters to subdivide and potentially use a portion of it?
Because the way we voted with the restrictions, you won't be able to do what you want.
Anything.
I don't mind restricting it so that I can't put a building on it. That's, I don't care about that.
Do we vote where you can put a septic on it? Did we vote where you can put a septic on it? So, I think you may be, I'll give you your copy.
Yeah, that's all right.
So, looking here, it can't be used as a separate building lot.
Yep.
We all, I think, agree to that. The premises shall not be used to satisfy minimum zoning or health code requirements for the construction on or use of any building on adjoining land. I believe Mr. Magazoo said he could build a house on the property now, that he's looking to acquire. So, I think we have that issue also addressed. And then, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises unless the premises is combined with adjoining lot and premises not used to create new or additional building lot. I also believe that that's consistent with what the use is. I think, I think we've got it covered at least from those conditions.
Okay.
And we're not intentionally not covering it. If we identify an issue, we'll come back and reconsider it again, but...
And if we put up 197 for sale, that may even, you know, if there's any issues, we can address it with 197.
So, is it the board's desire that we come back with 197 and handle it the same way as this?
I want the same thing with 194 and 195, too. We've got these little, again, it might all be of interest to Mr. Nikosia, but really, it's...
So, those two, we intended to bring back from the last hearing discussion.
Yep.
But we'll add this 197 as a third property to go with it.
And again, maybe we, there's an economy of scales here where if we do it all at once, the cost of conveying could be less if it's all included and he's the successful bidder.
It's possible, yeah.
Okay, so we have a reconsideration. I say we vote on that, and then Mr....
Motion is before us.
They have a second by...
Mrs. Minipelli.
Mrs. Minipelli. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And, okay, so Mr....
Could I just ask that I hear the restrictions again? I'm sorry, I got a little confused.
The proposed restrictions would be not to be used in and of itself as a separate building lot. Premises of property shall not be used to satisfy minimum zoning or health code requirements for the construction on or use of any building or adjoining land. And then, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises unless the premises is combined with the adjoining lot and premises not used to create new or additional building lot. So, those, if you can join it with yours, put your sheds out there, do what you want to, yeah. Put your horse stable.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, that being said, Mr. Chairman, I move to sell by auction town-owned land designated as map eight parcel nine located at eight Audubon Road in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 60, Section 77B, at a minimum bid price of? $600, buyer to pay all fees, costs, and expenses associated with the conveyance subject to the following restrictions. One, not be used in and of itself as a separate building lot. Two, the premises shall not be used to satisfy minimum zoning or health code requirements for the construction on or use of any building on adjoining land. Three, no building or other structure of any kind shall be erected or maintained on the premises unless the premises is combined with adjoining lot and premises not used to create new or additional building lot.
I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Minipelli. Now, do we close the hearing? Do we have to close the hearing?
Well, we reconsider.
Yeah, so we're not actually in a hearing.
Good.
We reconsider.
Mrs. Minipelli.
So, the only thing we took out was the contingent not to subdivide, to allow for this to bidder and then dividing it up amongst themselves.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Be looking for that notice for 197. Vote to sign, discharge, and release, 40 Main Street, number seven.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I do not believe a representative of the Housing Authority is here this evening. I can report that we did meet with the Housing Authority Executive Director on Thursday and got some clarification from them regarding their intentions with this property. Probably the most important thing I'll note that came out of that meeting is while this was a lowercase affordable housing unit, section eight in nature, it did not qualify and has not qualified for inclusion on our subsidized housing inventory because of the nature of the requirements. The Housing Authority tells us that they are interested in selling this property to address some deficiencies in their budget associated with the maintenance of it, but that they intend to keep the other property that the board previously signed off on refinancing for in February 2017. All of that said, they were not able to be here this evening. They are able to join us on April 22nd, and we'll try to make space on that agenda for them to be here that evening to further explain this. But ultimately, we'll be recommending proceeding with the vote.
You would be recommending?
I expect that we'll be recommending it. I would like you to hear directly from the Housing Authority, though, in case there are any other questions. I don't want to misstate it.
Okay. Anything else?
Personally, if they're satisfied, I'm satisfied. I'm not looking to necessarily bring people up.
So, you're suggesting, Mr. O'Leary, we just go ahead?
Put it to a vote. You know, again, I'm okay. I was concerned, you know, because there wasn't an awful lot of clarity.
Yeah.
And if the administration is clear as to what the intent, and it makes sense and it doesn't adversely impact our affordable housing inventory, why not?
Do we have a motion?
I was the one with the first initial question.
Right. Do we have a motion tonight?
I believe there's a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the paperwork.
I'll take a motion.
Unless you want someone's smiling face in front of us on 20th.
Yeah, of course we do. Of course we do.
We do? I'm just wondering.
I'm comfortable with the board voting to authorize the signature. We'll just close the loop one last time with the Housing Authority before he actually signs it, but I think that we can address and take care of it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and authorize the chairman to sign and discharge and release for 40 Main Street, number seven, as requested by the North Running Housing Authority.
Second. Motion in a second by Mr. Schultz. Mrs. Minipelli, anything else? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, we have a few more minutes before we get into the budget hearings. We have about three minutes. Do we want to appoint to the Historic District Commission? Mr. O'Leary?
I'm sorry.
If we could jump down to appointments for Historic District Commission, try to bang that out in three minutes would be...
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Thomas Parker to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2020.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Your liaison, right, Bob?
Right, but I hadn't caught up with that one. It's okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Daniel Greenberg to the Recycling Committee for an indefinite term.
Second. Motion?
The chairman of the Recycling Committee recommends the appointment.
Okay. Motion is second by Mr. Schultz. Anything else? Any other questions? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Any other appointments?
Nope.
Mr. Gobert.
Just to note, relative to the Recycling Committee, I did happen to run into the chairman, or at least a member, I don't know if Azavino is the chairman of the committee at this point or not, but I know they plan to approach the board about potentially reducing the size of that committee.
That I had heard.
To address issues and challenges that they've had regarding QUoR. But that'll come to you as a separate request down the road.
The appointment is for an individual's retired attorney, so I assume that his availability is going to help him out.
Okay. All right. So, that's going to bring us to the time where we discuss the FY 2020 Department Budget hearings. These are the remaining budgets we needed to go through. Please, all, if you want to be heard, just, I will, just signal me out and I will have you come to the podium or you can sit up here at the microphone. I'm going to apologize in advance. I am fighting a brutal cold, so if I pass out in the chair, don't worry, I'm going to be fine. I'll get through it. But I, I'm going to apologize in advance of my sniffling and my broken voice. So, we're going to start with library, and we're going to do Hillview, Elderless Service, Veterans, Conservation, and Administration. Do we have anything else? Those there?
Relative to budgets?
Yep.
Not for this evening, no?
Okay. And then, following that, we're going to do a review of the FY 2020 Revenue Plan and Expense. If I know, thank Tom, given your time to be here tonight, we appreciate it, but if you can stick around for that portion, it would be, I think, beneficial for both of us if you could, if you have the time. Mr. Gobert, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I'll just remind folks what I said at the beginning of each hearing, which is you're going to hear this evening a request from the library director and the Board of Trustees relative to the library's fiscal year 2020 operating budget. As is the case with other departmental budgets that you've heard so far, I have not yet made a recommendation relative to that department's budget to be forwarded to town meeting for approval. I intend to make my recommendation on the library and the other budgets scheduled for this evening at the April 22 meeting for the board to discuss and ultimately finalize on Monday, May 6th, when the warrant is signed. Okay? With that, I will turn it over to the Director of the North Reading Flint Memorial Library, Sharon Keller.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Good evening.
Yes.
Thank you all this evening for this opportunity to present the Flint Memorial Library's budget. I want a staff who have come here to support us along with trustees and friends at the library and support staff here, so thank you for the opportunity to present our library. The budget that you received tonight is actually an updated budget proposal. Adjustments were made after the budget was submitted in December. There were a couple of things, it was, my merit raise had not been added to the budget that had to be added. And also, we changed the substitute technician budget line to accurately reflect how many budget hours we were using. So, it was from 12 hours to 13.5 hours per week, and we made those adjustments and you have the updated budget proposal that we're going to hand out to you now. Excuse me, I don't have any...
Oh, Mike, you have to point to the change slides?
Andy, where are you? I can't get to it. What page are you on? In ours. In ours.
So, the FY 20 budget request is $640,103, and you can see the increase. We are once again coming to you asking for a Coordinator of Outreach and Adult Program librarian. I will discuss that in a different slide, so I will just go past that. The MVLC assessment is a required consortium fee with an increase, and this year, there is the National PLA Conference that hopefully I will be able to attend and that the increase is reflected there. There is a decrease in electronic subscriptions. We do not need to purchase RB Digital, which is our electronic magazine platform, although it's hugely successful and we're still going to have it, it is now, comes out of, comes out of the MVLC assessment, so we don't have to pay for that separately. So, there is a decrease of $1,500 reflected there. Any questions before I continue?
Does that mic work?
Yes, that mic is working. You can't hear?
No.
Maybe you can speak up just a little bit louder and if we can get the speakers turned up.
Is that better?
No.
It's...
You want to sit here? I'll sit over there.
Oh, no.
Do the best you can to speak a little bit louder. I'm sorry.
Sure. Okay. I wanted to take a moment to explain exactly what a certified library is and the importance of having a certified library in your town. There are some key requirements. Certification is made by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, and there are requirements that you must have. One is that your budget must meet the municipal appropriation requirement, which ours does, this budget request does meet that, that it's open to all residents of the Commonwealth, no charge for services. The population drives a minimum open hours per week, and since we are over 15,000 people population, the requirement is 50 hours, and you must employ trained, trained library personnel and have yearly circulation reporting. And all of those are pretty basic, pretty common things that we would be doing anyway when we provide library service as part of our mission, but it is, those requirements have to be met in order to be a certified library. This is one of the most important slides, the certification benefits. What do we get for being a certified library and why is it so very important that a town has a certified library? Can't hear me? I'm hearing that people cannot hear me, so I don't know what to do with the microphone. People at home can't hear me? All right, people at home can't hear me at all, so...
All the people at home?
No, it should be...
No, it's the folks up here in the front row couldn't hear you, right?
It's the mics in the room, the speakers in the rooms.
Phil, are we able to get a little more?
It's a delegate.
Maybe you can draw on my sniffling.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Again, I'd just like to stress how important it is to be a certified library and why it's so very important, and by far the most important is interlibrary loan, the ability for a patron or any resident to be able to access any material from any library or college/university library in the country. It allows us to access materials everywhere. If we were not certified, we would not be able to share in that. We are part of the Massachusetts, I'm sorry, Merrimack Valley Library Consortium, which is 36 libraries. Those libraries transfer items daily, so you can request something from a different library and have it the next day or in two days. So, the service there, people in North Reading use that service every single day. And it also saves money for North Reading because if there's a less popular item, we don't have to purchase that item ourselves, and our space, our real estate is so limited at the library that it helps us very much. So, it provides a valuable service that, that the people in town, residents, have come to expect and deserve. Also, another benefit is receiving state aid funds. We receive approximately $15,000 per year. It's not guaranteed. It goes year by year, and it is to be used for things outside of the operating budget, extra things that we want to purchase. Consultant services, we are actively using them now as part of our strategic plan. We have already used the services of two building construction specialists who have come to the library, met with us, got draft plans from the Building Department to talk about different things that we can do to update the library as part of the strategic plan. We've also had a local history preservationist come. We have a beautiful local history room that's a little hard to keep the temperature controlled, no matter what we do, so we wanted to make sure that those items were safe and if we wanted to move them, what that would entail. So, we were able to use those services and will continue using those services as part of being a certified library. And also workshops and webinars, the staff takes, attends a lot of professional development, training sessions, webinars, webinars, that is part of the certification that we, we utilize weekly, monthly, and we all benefit from it. So, being a certified library is extremely important. It's things that we have come to expect. We do not want to not have a certified library in town, so just want to explain the importance of that. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Serving the community, 63.7 of North Reading residents are active cardholders. I actually find...
I do have a question.
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, and you may have said it and I missed it, but when you talk about the building construction specialist?
Yes.
My understanding is that that's a, a key planning effort related to the gift that you received from the estate of Charles A. Anderson last year. So, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, and I will discuss that on a different slide, but that is to utilize the money from the Charles A. Anderson Gift Fund.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, of course. We were proud to see that, like I said, 63.7% of the North Reading residents are active cardholders, and I want to stress that it is active. It's not someone that's had a card for 30 years and doesn't visit the library. It is, they are becoming active and a purge it every two years. So, these are people who are either visiting the library or using the online resources. So, that's, to me, that's a staggering number, and it shows what a vital resource the library is and how many people the library actually serves. Last year, we circulated 92,420 items, and I'd like to stress that although electronic resources are extremely popular, they continue to grow, and electronic resources were up 58.4% last year. At the same time, our print circulation was down 1.5%. So, it just shows that we, we bring a new audience to the library or more people are finding electronic resources, but they're still coming in, they're still checking out books, and that print circulation is, is just as busy. And we're actually beating the Merrimack Valley Library Consortium. They're actually down by 4% their print circulation, and so we're, we're doing even better than that. So, our, our library is being valued and it's being used. The Activity Room, 630 uses, I'd like to stress that that is library programs, but it's also North Reading nonprofit organizations, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, sports teams. The room is used constantly, and it's an absolute asset to the town because it provides meeting space, perfect convenient location, and also vital to the community. And museum passes, over 1,000 uses. Those are discount museum passes that allow people to actually go, be able to afford going to the museums at a discount rate, and, and those are used regularly as well. Any questions? This is something we'd like to stress as well, that just in the fall and winter Storytime program, 648 children, parents, and caregivers attended. And it's not just, we don't want to call it Storytime because it's actually a lot more than that. Curriculum development goes into it. Children are learning different things. It's songs, stories, and play. The Children's Department works very hard to make sure that they, like I said, have a curriculum where kids are with their caregivers, are with their parents, having fun and learning at the same time. So, has, has been very, very popular and continues to be. Okay. So, program attendance, as we've talked about in the past, programming at the library and all libraries has become an expectation. It is vital to the library. Residents expect it. And here, it shows the, over fiscal year, the attendance and the amount of programs, and as you can see, they've, they've grown tremendously, the amount of programs we've had and the number of people who come. And we continue to do that. It's an expectation, it's something we love doing, but it's, it has, it's become a very, very large part of what services at the libraries provide. And here, here I come to, we're coming to you again this year, and this is how, this is why we need the Coordinator of Outreach and Adult Program position. As the expectation continues to grow, as the population continues to grow, we have to make sure that we do the varied and increase the breadth of programming for the library so we have something for everyone, whether it's educational, entertainment, something creative. We, we are constantly looking to bring the best programs in, and it is, it has become a full-time job, and we are all doing the best we can, like we always do. Our staff pulls together, does what they can, but it has become beyond the scope of add-on responsibilities. It, it is a full-time job in itself, and this position would seek grant funds. Ideally, we could pay for some of the programs, help plan the adult programs, conduct outreach events, which we would love to be doing, getting out into the community more, and also establish a homebound service. Currently, we have one staff member who visits four homes, and there is a demand for it, and there's an increase for people who can't make it to the library, whether they are senior citizens or just, they could be any age and just cannot, cannot leave their house for a while. And that's all we're able to accommodate now is for families, so we would love to expand that as well. Any questions so far? Yes? Yes?
Just out of curiosity for the genesis of this position, and are there other libraries that have similar coordinators for outreach like this?
There absolutely are. It continues, it continues to grow, except the need for it. We had, we had done a study, I apologize, I don't have it with me, but I could get it to you to show which libraries in, in the, in the state are having it. It becomes, if you look on the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, you will see postings for this position. It's called a lot of different things. It has a lot of different names, but ultimately, this is exactly, exactly what it does. It's, as I said, previews programs, finds grants, plans the programs, and so to answer your question, yes, libraries are absolutely adding this position daily.
Did you say you could potentially obtain grant money for this position?
Not, not, not grant money for the position. The, the, it's Coordinator of Outreach and Adult Programs, part of his or her job would be to seek grant funds to help pay for programming, so they would, they would look for grants to help with programming, not, not to pay for their position.
Okay, then let me rephrase my question. Are there grant opportunities to fund this position?
I would say not. I'm sorry.
Probably not long.
Not long, correct, not, not long-term.
What would this position look like if it was 50% funded instead of 100%? Could you still get use of it? Would you be able to acquire someone?
Are you asking if it would work as a part-time position?
You're asking for $52,000 for this position, right?
Right.
If I have the number correctly, it's 52,630, right?
I think it's, we have 52,000 listed? Was it 52?
I have $52,630.
Okay.
Is that correct?
I'll have to look at that. I'm sorry, I thought we had a straight number.
I could be looking at the wrong number. Maybe Dawn, yeah. Mike, am I looking for the right number?
I can look for you. I can tell you in a second. So, programming, I have it in the budgets, 52,000?
52,000.
Okay. Okay. I would just look at the number in here. It doesn't matter. It's 60, $630.
I can explain that.
Yeah.
It has to do with Dan's interviews. So, in that non-communicative category, it's difficult.
Okay. Thank you. Again, I'm not saying we, we're not going to support it or we are going to support it. I'm just curious, because we're going to go through our FY 2020 Revenue Plan soon, and you're going to see, we are significantly over our funding. We're going to have to make some tough decisions, and I'm just trying to understand if, worst case, we could only fund half of it, or is it all or nothing?
Ideally, it would be a full-time professional position. Right now, the library has been, for the past 30 years, has been staffed with lots and lots of part-time people, hard workers, qualified people, but it's really hard to get things done when people are working, you know, 10 hours a week, 15 hours a week. If you're asking what it, we would be very happy if, if it had to start with that, with the idea that it could be funded full-time going forward after that with, with that condition, that would be very helpful. It is, it is not a luxury position we are asking for. It is, we, like I said, the staff works really hard, but it has become more than, like I said, just add-on responsibilities. We want to be working towards things in the strategic plan, and we are working on programming because the expectation and the demand absolutely is there, and will, will continue to grow.
I know you've been patient, too, because I know this was in there last year, and then we ended up taking out in the last minute, and so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions before I continue?
Mr. Missari.
I want to go back to the facility itself. I know you mentioned that heat is an issue, which I think is understandable based on the age of the building.
Right.
Are there any other structural issues in there that you could flag down as we should be concerned with the looking at? Talk about inside.
Inside.
Yeah.
I, I actually want to turn to Dan for that, but I, I don't, I don't think so. The heat is very, very hard to regulate, as, as we know, whatever we set it at, you just, you just don't know what you're going to get from day to day because it is such an old building, but we've learned to work with that.
We live every day in this room.
Exactly.
And I, I believe you said that the elevator was working a lot better.
The elevator is, is much better. It had problems, consistent problems for a long time. Julie and DPW, whatever they did for upgrades, it has definitely bought more time. We are not, we are not having problems with it, I'm happy to say. So, structurally, I do not think that we have problems inside. Dan, do you want to speak to that?
Not really.
Okay.
Wish lists.
Yeah, wish lists, of course, yes.[1636.62]
Mr. Goldberg.
I'm giving a bit of a preview, and I'm looking at Mr. Keller, who has taken on quite a bit of interest in the project, but there was a DPW capital request to address the condition of the siding of the building.
Siding, yes.
And that's something that's being considered by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and has been given quite serious consideration. There won't be a formal recommendation before this board until April 22nd, but I know that was one that was a priority, given the interest in preserving the historical asset in the Flint Memorial Building.
That's why I focused on the inside.
Any other questions on this slide? Please continue.
Thank you. So, as far as utilizing revolving funds, we, like we said, we are very, very careful with how we spend the money and where the money comes from, and there are many projects that we are working on, like I said, as part of our strategic plan, as part of needs and wants, and we do want to show that we are utilizing revolving funds that we have to cover that. For instance, the space revitalization, the repurposing, for that, we are going to use the Charles A. Anderson gift money to make something that will really be a tribute to him, and part of it is, we have looked at making a study room, a collaboration room, or quiet room with a smart board. We want to buy furniture that is movable, adaptable, so it is, on the first floor, there's more performance space, and these are the way libraries are being used now, they're being utilized in other libraries as well, and we have done a lot of research on this, and we will use the money for that. Like I said, we have the planning, we have been working with Danielle McKnight, she did provide the building plans for us to see what we could actually move and do, and these aren't huge projects we're talking, but they will make a big difference, you know, new furniture. The beautiful building that we are in does not have outlets, so we have extension cords trying to help people, you know, so they can use their laptops, because the building was built so long ago. So, it's things to make the library work the way people are using the library today. We are replacing, we call them the antiquated printing services, because we are going to use state aid, and we are bringing in programs so that people can easily print. There are people that come in every day, running in to print their airline tickets or their child's homework. What you're going to be able to do with our upgraded printing service is that you can be anywhere in the world and download the program or the app, and then be able to send something to the library to print, and pay with your credit card and pick it up. It's secure, if you don't come in 24 hours, it will go away, but it will help people tremendously for printing the PDFs and the tickets and other things that they come to the library to use every day, and we use state aid funding for that. Media system upgrade in the activity room, as I said, we purchased a sound system a couple of years ago, and it was great when we had nothing, so people actually had a projector and they had a cordless wireless microphone, but the library is, like I said, the room is used 630 times last year, it is used every day by town organizations, and the system really truly needs to be upgraded so that every time someone leaves, Dan and I don't have to go in and replug everything back in for how it was used, so that the next person can use it, and we are going to use the activity room usage fees for that, it's what it's meant to be used for, and that's what we're going to do. And then finally, a new website, which we desperately need. Our website right now is not adaptable, it's not mobile adaptable. If you look on something small, if you have large text, unfortunately, it just will not adjust to those screens, so it's not adaptable. So, we truly do need a new website, and we will use state aid for that. So, we do want to show that we have needs, and we have things that we wanted to use to move the library forward, and we do utilize the revolving funds for that. Questions? Thank you. And finally, I just thought I'd promote something and push it. Today, we started, April 1st, our Life is Good kickoff, it's our 2019 North Reading Reads. It's going to run for two months, and the focus of the program is Bert and John Jacobs' vision, that life is not easy, life is not perfect, but life is good. And we're really excited, we got in touch with the Life is Good Company, and they were so thrilled that we were doing this, that they're partnering with us, and they've sent us some information where, with hashtag something good, anytime someone posts something to social media, or they return a postcard, we will have a box at the library, a dollar donation will be made to their children's fund. So, the Life is Good Company is, like I said, really excited to be working with us and to be a part of it, and they're thrilled we're doing it. So, you can come to the library, we have copies of books there and tote bags, and we're hoping that you will read the book, and then pass it on to someone, and really find out that life isn't easy, but life is definitely good. So, I just wanted to promote that, that started today, and we're very excited about it, so. And I think that is it, so, thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions, Finn Call? Board members? Mr. Schultz?
Just a comment, you guys, the programs you do are fabulous.
Thank you.
I always say you guys are more than just a house full of books, you guys are basically a community center.
Thank you.
The topics that you have events on, whether it be sports, to cooking, to history, to you name it, I mean, I think in the last year, you had somebody about the Patriots, you had somebody about a World War II plane that went down, you had others, I mean, you had literally something for everyone. I think it's a great program, and I encourage people to take advantage of it, since, you know, like I said, it's something for everyone.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Mr. Minipelli.
I wanted to say pretty much the same thing. It's a place that everyone in the community, no matter if you're a single person, or a person with a bunch of children, if you're kids, or adults, or seniors, you really have an environment there where everybody is welcome, and you do the social media tremendously well. I love to see Danielle's posts, Mrs. Bailey, Mrs. Masterson's posts, and about all of the things that you're doing, and Mrs. Bailey's efforts too, and trying to get all these different variety of things for everybody. It's just such a well-done job. I hope we can, I would love to see this coordinator position either, just because it adds to the already what you're doing, enriching the community with all that you're doing for us, and I just want to say thank you, because it's well-done.
We're sorry about the fish.
Mr. Misery?
Prince had a good life.
Sharon, I would also like to thank you for your efforts since coming on board. The library activities have expanded, and it seems like we're getting the best use of what is one of the town's older buildings, it actually used to be Town Hall, and, you know, I think, you know, I've been to a number of the programs, and I really appreciate them, and I think that the whole community does, so thank you.
Thank you very much. The staff works really hard, and everyone pulls together and gets this done.
Yes, that thank you is for the staff, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've heard nothing but positive feedback from the community in relation to the activities there, the cross-section of the community that it hits, which is everybody, and the feedback as far as staff helping and being of assistance is terrific, but I'm just flabbergasted by 63.7% hold of the card.
Yes.
That's fantastic, you know, it says an awful lot about, you know, the programming that you offer, what we have for offering as far as services and your staff, so congratulations, and your efforts are greatly appreciated and acknowledged, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for coming in, and I really want to take time to thank your volunteers, because I don't think they get enough. You get paid to do your job, and you do it really well, and you exceed our expectations, but the volunteers never get enough credit.
I agree.
And I know it would not function without them, so I want to thank you, and if anyone can make it up the four sets of stairs to see Danielle's facility up on that fourth floor, it's pretty impressive, it's beautiful, you've done a great job, so, and thank you for coming in, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much for consideration, thank you.
Hillview, next victim.
It's in the operating room, it's in the, it's one of the first ones, page four.
Hi Pete, how are you?
Hi Pete, I'm here for the Hillview meeting.
Grab the mic, Peter.
If you want to sit, or you can bring the mic up to the podium.
George Stack, the chairman, is also here, if there's any additional questions. The...
You got this?
Sure.
Excuse me, Pete, I'm just going to step into my car, I got to get some medicine I forgot to take, but Mrs. Minipelli's going to run meeting while I'm gone. Pete, two minutes.
The Hillview has submitted a budget for 2020 of $1,529, that is about 3.5% below the budget for 2019. The main reason for that is there was a one-time spending in the 2019 budget for the end of the lease on the golf carts, so that happens periodically. Other than that, the budget is fairly similar year-over-year. The good news is the golf course is open, I encourage everybody to get out and play if it ever gets a little warmer, but this is the first time in a while that we're actually going to see some revenue in March, which is really nice. Overall, the golf course is in great condition, we've done a lot of work on it over the winter, the management company has taken down a number of trees, did some work on the fairways, on the golf carts as well, and the golf paths, so we're looking forward to a very good year, provided the weather cooperates.
Questions, anyone? Any members have any questions?
I saw you guys were jammed out on Saturday.
Saturday was a very good day, we were fully booked Saturday.
Ms. Trowley.
Pete, just in relation to revenue stream, I mean, how's it been, again, year-over-year? I know we're subject to weather conditions, but number of rounds, revenue stream?
Yeah, so for the first time so far this year, we're seeing actually a small increase in the number of rounds. Now, that is offset by the fact that those rounds tend to be more towards the nine hole versus the 18. So, what we're seeing is, what the golf industry is seeing across the board, is that people are not interested in necessarily playing 18 holes anymore, because at the time, they're interested in playing nine holes. So, although we're getting the same number of starts, the revenue, or increase in starts, those starts are really trending towards the nine hole as opposed to the 18 holes. So, our revenue is slightly up, not as much as the starts are up, but it's a good sign for the golf industry and for Hillview, in that it seems like it has somewhat bottomed out after a number of down years.
Just in relation to the lease agreement we have with the function hall, revenue's there year-over-year?
Revenue there is up. So, if you look at the revenue that we're getting from the function halls, between the rent and the commissions that are being paid, it is up year-over-year, and we expect that to continue.
Finance committee, members, any questions?
Do you project the revenue against the government?
Thank you.
So, we're looking at about $1,500,000 or so, and that's, the majority of that obviously is from the golf course, so $1,400,000 from the golf course, and then another $30,000 to $40,000 from the function facility.
What is in this year's, next year's budget's capital plan?
So, we left the capital flat at $75,000 for next year's plan. That will be used for capital equipment, primarily some of the aging of the lawn mowers and things that really are up for replacement. Again, we'll take a look at, you know, how the revenue is coming in and make that decision towards the end of the year, whether or not we want to spend the capital. But right now, there is money in both this year and next year's budget for capital spending.
And the new watering system that's been in for a while now?
That is working great. We had a little bit of a hiccup initially on the startup of the new system. It's done electronically, so it took a little while to learn how to use the system, but the system has been great. It's really, we're not, we're using the same amount of water, but we're getting a bigger benefit on that, and you can see it on the course. The course is greener, grass is growing quicker, the course is in much better shape with the irrigation system than it has been. I think some people may know in the room, Middleton has just closed their golf course, the nine-hole golf course, so we've already started, they had some inquiries from some leagues for them interested in coming over to Hillview, so we're hoping that, you know, unfortunately, that golf course closed, but we're hoping that also increases the amount of play at Hillview.
There was some reporting that Middleton was thinking of acquiring the property.
They did.
Have you heard of it?
They did, they did acquire it.
The town acquired. They actually opened the golf course for two weeks, and then just closed it this past weekend.
Oh, that I, yeah.
So, and it will be closed now.
Mr. O'Larry.
Just debt service, how are we looking at as far as?
So, the debt service is a little over $400,000 for fiscal 2020, continues to go down. Unfortunately, we're seeing increases in labor, for instance, from the management company. So, the savings that we're starting, we're seeing from the debt service going down, unfortunately, is being reallocated to labor costs in running the golf course. And when you talk to people, that's really happening across the board, as the minimum wage starts to increase, particularly in the state, a lot of the employees that are, that GFMI employees are at minimum wage, so they're going to see incremental costs associated with that. So, it's not that they're making more profits, it's that their costs are going up as well.
But as far as the enterprise's ability to consider taking on additional debt for additional projects, still down the road?
Still two to three years out before we can do that.
Go ahead, you go first.
In line with that same discussion, I know that we've been in a suspended period relative to the payment in lieu of taxes, any projection or discussion relative to that at this point?
It's probably in the same, you know, there'll have to be a decision made two to three years down the road, when there is some excess cash flow because of the debt service going down, whether the town wants to use it for in lieu of taxes or for incremental spending on other capital investments.
Well, that was going to be my question, and we did a five-year reprieve, so FY 2020 would be the first year we'd return back to a payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah, and we're not in a position right now, it's not included in the budget to start repaying.
Okay. And I think we have that in the revenue plan, right? Mr.?
I can look it up.
Okay. That's the big thing in debt service. Yeah, it's another four or five years, I believe.
Excuse me, Dawn, if you can use the microphone, it would be, hold on, we have to get you a microphone.
The turf field was not the reason for the reprieve in the in lieu of tax payment five years ago, it was due to the new, the million-dollar irrigation system that was installed in the debt service that would come online for that.
Yep. Yeah, no, I just remember it's five years, I think the five years is up, I think we had it in the revenue plan, and I can't remember the exact number, 120 or something, 125?
It's larger than that, but it's not in there, we needed to have this discussion, but it is a large number that will be lost.
So, who decides whether it's in or not? I mean, I didn't know it was an optional thing. I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just...
I think it's been more of a policy on the part of the board for years, that first of all, don't, and Mr. Misery, correct me if I'm wrong, we sat on the commission for a dozen years, and George has been there since inception, you know, the board was always discouraged from including any payment in lieu of taxes as far as the revenue plan had come, as a bonus if it happens to come through based upon the cash flow of the cost. It's always been the policy and understanding that, you know, the well-being of Hillview and the enterprise would be primary, and any additional resources that would assist in the general operating budget, you know, would be secondary, so that for years, we never counted on it, and if it came through because they had a cash flow situation where they could afford it, that was a wonderful thing. But I've always cautioned and been saying for years, oh, since I've been sitting here, don't count on it, because we can't, it's so much in a state of flux, you know, they took on debt for other capital projects, whether it be Gibson Park, the turf field, and other purchases of the Wheeler property, depending upon weather, the number of rounds, we can't count on that revenue. And we didn't want to hurt the enterprise, injure the ability of Hillview to function effectively, and so, I don't think we should ever count on it for a long period to come, but again, depending upon what comes down the road, you know, three to five years from now, if there's more revenue available, they take on other capital projects, you know, payment in lieu was never counted on, or should never have been counted on as a revenue source.
I was here when we, you know, I was one of the ones that advocated not to do it for five years, but if my recollection's correct, we said in five years, it's coming back on, and it was, it wasn't what if, or it was happening.
That wasn't my decision.
So, we can go back and look at the minutes, but it was supposed to be in the revenue plan this year, and I believe we've counted that in, and I know you guys were well aware of it, I'm just a little confused, I'm hearing this for the first time tonight, I got to be honest with you.
I believe five years ago, as I was here as well, we looked for a moratorium for five years, we never said we would start paying again, we looked for a moratorium. If you look back, there were periods of time when the in lieu of taxes were paid, and there were periods of time when it was not paid.
Not all of it was paid too, I think there was a time when...
There were times...
We cut it down.
Everything, before we got to five-year, everything was paid in full. There were years where we would pay half, because the cash flow was not there, and then we would make up for it the following year, when we had the cash flow availability. Right now, with the costs rising as much as they have, there is not the availability of the cash.
Mr. Misery.
I mean, I think if you look at the Hillview operation, after you subtract its operating cost, it was making the payment in lieu of taxes donation, and every other penny that has been spent has been turned into capital to benefit the town, so...
I understand, listen, I'm not in disagreement.
The payment in lieu of taxes is what was generally left over after all the various projects that Hillview ran into, you know.
I don't remember it that way either.
Think about the turf field, $2 million. Think about the Gibson Park, think about some of the property that was acquired for parking there, and things like that, so, I can understand where you're coming from, but I think that, you know, through the reference through the years, they've generated a tremendous amount of capital, no money's been wasted, it's been there and turning assets for the town.
Again, there's no argument here, what I'm saying is, we had an agreement, and I had expected that there would be a payment in lieu of taxes in FY 2020, no, this is the first time I've heard from anyone that it wasn't going to happen, and I thought tonight we were going to hear about it, but maybe I have the wrong expectations, and I believe Ms. Minipelli and Mr. Schultz weren't even on the board when this was decided, so, Ms. Minipelli.
Mr. Hemmy, you just said you were paying it up until five years ago. I wasn't actually, I don't recall any of this, if I was, it's, I don't...
There were periods of time where there was a payment in lieu of taxes, and there were periods of time during the 25 years of the enterprise was around where there was not a payment made, so it comes and goes, as Mr. O'Larry said. Certainly, five years ago, when we asked for a moratorium, there were a period of time where, two to three years where it was made in a row, that there were payments made. three years where it was made in a row, that there were payments made. And that's when it became an ask for the five years.
And the board affirmatively voted to grant you that moratorium.
Could we add a $5 fee for it? That just goes to the payment in lieu of taxes? I mean, are your rates above and beyond everywhere else? I mean, I know you guys.
Our rates are competitive. Uh, will that drive our rates above and, and hurt the revenue? You know, we're very conscious of, you know, we're in a very competitive environment.
A little less now with one place closing, right? So that helps.
It was a nine hole course, right? I mean, we're, we'll pick up some stuff, but, you know, our competition is more the, the Sagamores and the 18 hole course we run. Uh, we have increased prices over the last, we just did another price increase this year. Uh, that's to help offset the incremental costs of running the, the operation. Uh, you know, the costs, we're not seeing our revenues increase as fast as our costs.
Right.
It's just not going to happen.
So then we gotta increase prices and just, cause.
Well, it's a delicate balance, right? We, and we try to increase prices every other year in order to offset some of the costs of running, uh, without the idea of, we increase our prices too much and people are not going to play.
I understand, but I, I, I don't like the whole payment in lieu of taxes either, but it is a commitment that we've all made. And I just don't see how this board, we have fiduciary responsibility to stick to that. Uh, just say, I don't see how we could just say, we're not going to do it. Uh, I think we had an agreement to do it. Uh, we, we should go back and look at the minute, minutes. There was a commitment to go back to it. Mr. Gobardo.
My suggestion would be allow the finance director and I to meet with the commission to discuss a plan relative to pilot based on what we're working today.
I think, I think there needs to be. I think we need to bring it back for a discussion.
Peter, how, how much do we, uh, policy's still the same? Do you keep in reserves?
Yes.
Is what?
One, uh, year's worth of.
Of a year, wasn't it?
Yes, Mrs. Harrow, but if you could speak into the mic, it would be extremely beneficial.
Um, have you found that with the demise of the pub, that you're losing, uh, the participation of some golf groups?
No. Nope. As a matter of fact, we've, uh, seen some increase in the number of outings and all of the, uh, people have, the leagues have come back and are, and taken the play. If anything, they're excited about the idea that we're now making a offer here in line at the Pro Shop, which will be a couple of years from now. It certainly helps.
So Peter, how many golfers do you think you have come through every year roughly?
It's 26,000 perhaps.
So if you added a $5 fee, that would be more than enough. Maybe if we make it afford all of the, or a $3 fee to get it to, you know, roughly that $125,000. I mean, to me, it's a simple solution.
It's around, I.
George, that gentleman, he'll do.
About 150.
Was anybody here in 1988? Because in 1988, when we took the property, the in lieu of tax payment was optional. It's an optional payment. It sat in the desk for the first seven or eight years. It was $42,000 a year and we eventually paid it because we had the money. It's an optional payment. I've stood before voter selections for 31 years. I stood before finance committees. Don't put it in your budget. It's, it might, it's not going to be there sometimes. And we came to a point where the iceberg tipped over and we haven't been able to pay it. If in another two or three years, when everything drops off, we're in a position to pay it again, we will revisit it. But I, I don't understand, it's an optional payment. Has been since the very, very beginning. And I, I don't understand why, as I said one day, a great example I had, the police needed, uh, one of the departments needed two vehicles, off-road vehicles. And I said, perfect money here. We, we gave you the money. Well, we kind of, you know, we, we put it in some other budget. I said, well, think out of the box. And when you get that money, figure out a way you can use it. Because it's not going to be there every year. It's not going to be here this year. It's not going to be here next year. And it probably will not be here the year after.
George, that's not what was discussed when we, we decided five years ago.
We never, never ever, I have never in my life made a commitment in lieu of taxes payment, ever. I made a commitment to $17 million in bonds, but I never, ever made a commitment to in lieu of tax payments. I don't think anybody ever has. We, we cannot
go down that. We'll go back and look at the minutes.
The key is to keep it off the tax rolls. The key is to keep the Hillview forever off the tax rolls. Not one penny of town money, town tax money is spent at the Hillview. For 31 years, it's worked great. You start teetering with it and it'll start crumbling. It's a, it's a very, very slippery slope, even though we survive. We don't make a lot of great money over there.
Again, with George, I'm not trying to tinker with it.
And we have to keep a year of, of bonds in, uh, in, in, in our, our account.
George, if I could just get a, a response in, okay? I'm not trying to tinker with it. I'm just telling you, we need to go back and review the minutes. I was here five years ago and I know what the deal was. I was part of the discussion.
I was here five years ago.
And I'm telling you, you're wrong. Okay? And we'll go back and pull out the minutes and there was going to be a discussion and we're going to return back to the, the payment in lieu of taxes after five years. That was what was agreed on. There was no unilateral decision on behalf of the Hillview Commission or anyone else in this board to decide it wasn't going to be there. I'm just saying, we never had a discussion. That was the last discussion. So.
If you could show me right away the credit dependent in lieu of taxes.
Again, it was supposed to be in this FY 2020 budget.
I thought of the taxes from the very beginning of the project. If I had my way, we never paid in lieu of taxes. This is too many of those things up.
I gave you a solution. Add four bucks, add five bucks to every player that plays and they're, pays for it. I'm just telling you, we, we need to have a discussion. All right?
That's just another, that's just a tax.
You call what you want.
I don't, I'm not going to call it a $5 fee. I'm not going to call it a $5 tax. The people of Wilmington, the people of Reading, the people of, of Tucksbury are going to pay the town and our threading to come use our golf course. And you know what's going to put us? It's going to put us out of business. Out of business. We got enough complaints now from the seniors that we don't do anything for them. And we give them these special prices. It takes nothing for people to leave. You can see what happened because we, we lost the pub. We probably lost 40 groups because they couldn't get a beer. A lousy beer. So they stopped coming to the Hillview.
Okay.
And we're trying to get them back.
And my point is that we've never had a discussion, George. That's all I'm saying. There was been no discussion. It's the first, I'm hearing it right now.
I, I don't recall ever saying that we would ever, uh, back.
What's a five-year, what's a five-year reprieve mean?
Well, that's your reprieve.
Okay. Mr. Schultz.
George, you were here, you guys were here, I don't know, about a month ago or so, when we allowed the, the beer and wine up. I think it's good.
Correct, yeah.
But I'm concerned about the whole issue over T's Tavern. Why, despite the fact that someone is contractually obligated to run that, he's allowed not to run it?
Because I told you before, there was, there's a precedent for it. And the prior, the prior tenant also did the same thing.
Doesn't matter. We have a contract. The four corners of the contract says he's going to run that tavern from point A to point B in the operating year. Why are we just letting him not run it? Cause I think that's hurting your, your golfers.
Uh, not really.
I think it is.
They weren't, they weren't supported yet.
Cause he wasn't open, like he was supposed to be.
Yes, but, but it wasn't being supported by golfers or anybody else.
Okay, but why is he not open?
Because I told you that night, we had to make a business decision. $150,000 of green fees already committed by people to be, to fed at the, the Hillview. Are we getting into a case with a guy that will walk? That's what it is.
He has a contract.
It's an idea out.
It's an idea out.
He would leave.
Okay.
He was the only bidder when we put it out.
But he's not, he didn't even go to you guys and say, hey, guys, I'm having trouble with this. I, I, he did something one day, I'm trying to get down. And you guys just let, let it happen. I even.
No, no, let's just get straight. We're volunteers, okay? We have no control. We have no, we have no clout. We have no.
We're all volunteers right here, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't let someone just walk out of a contract.
What would you do? Tell me.
I would have a discussion with him, first of all, and I would remind him of his obligations on a contract.
We'd have, how can you discuss this? Then he never, then he'd talk to us. He hasn't talked to us.
Okay, did you bring that to our board?
All right.
No.
I don't want to turn this into a, excuse me.
But I'm going to, I think it's hurting your revenue with the golf course, is what I'm saying. Every little bit helps. I agree with Mr. Prisco. There should be a little extra on each screen. If you guys are running the same operation and not making the same profit margin, then you got to increase your revenue.
Let me, let me tell you a fact of life from 1988, okay? This was a quote. General government should stay out of the Hillview. That was the quote. Because once general government gets into it, you start running into problems like trying to tax people to come play golf at the Hillview. Why, why would you?
How was that, how was trying to maintain your profit margin a tax? It's called running a business.
Profit margin?
You have a certain profit margin you're trying to make.
You have $17 million of profit from the Hillview in this, in this town, if you know about it. Someone that's in, you don't even know about it. It was paid for by the Hillview. Not a penny of general government.
George, you're telling me now, I, I, as yourself, one of you guys said earlier, you're not making the same per golfer that you did in years past because your expenses, your expenses are going up. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Well, then you got to increase the top line.
Well, no, but you're saying to increase the top line to give money to general government. That's not, that's not what our mission is.
Excuse me, excuse me. We're going to go through the chair. Mr. Gobardo, Ms. Minipelli, then Mr. O'Larry.
You, you've made, you've made.
George, 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 I recognize Mr. Gobardo. If you want to be recognized, I will get back to you. Mr. Gobardo.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I, I would ask for the opportunity for the finance director and I to meet with the commission and discuss the issue of the payment in lieu of taxes and how, or, or what arrangement, if any, can be reached and where we stand relative to the so-called agreement of five years ago. I, I think that that's really the only way for us to make any progress relative to this issue. We could talk with George and Peter and the commission. Uh, to the issue of the, um, the pub, um, there were a, a series of discussions that took place with the previous operator of the pub over the course of last, uh, golf season involving myself as well as Mr. O'Larry to try to make improvements. And in the end, I, I, I think that the feeling was from all those parties that we were not able to make that business entity work, unfortunately, as frustrating as it was. And with regard to the issue of the pub, we also had a circumstance where, for me, as a procurement officer, who once already terminated, terminated an agreement with an operator, um, saw that the market wasn't able to support the pub there. Going forward another, uh, three years with this current operator, we ran into the same situation, uh, again, without having an operator. And so I, I do want the board to know that there was an effort that was made over the course of last golf season. Perhaps it's my fault for not updating the board to the challenges that we were facing, but, um, we did make an effort to try to resolve things. We just were not able to resolve it. Um, after the last meeting took place here, I did talk with the, uh, golf course manager relative to his thoughts on it. And then he did not, uh, feel that it was a worthy endeavor for us to proceed with regard to the, the pub in the, in the fashion that it was set up under the, the agreement, uh, and that the modification was the right move for us at, at the, at the enterprise, uh, which is what brought it here to you to be reviewed. I think those are my only two thoughts. Thank you.
Ms. Minipelli.
Now, I, I do think Mr. Stack explained the difficulties with what was going on during that last hearing, but I'm curious to know if you gave any more thought. I think what we talked about too was when it was put out to bid for someone to manage it, it was for both of those things, for the one bidder to manage both the function and the pub. That's how it was explained to me and that's how you did explain it to me. And that, that he was the only bidder for the full, the full package, so to speak, and that he then unilaterally changed that, changed that up, um, even though he was contracted to do that. And I'm curious to know, and, and so you fully explained, I understood fully the back and forth that you attempted to try to resolve that. I think the last meeting, he got into pretty considerable detail about that. But what about, and, and he also had exclusive use of the kitchen, which he didn't pay rent on because you said he had made upgrades to the kitchen, but he had made upgrades to the kitchen and gotten no, no rental payment during the, during that time because of the upgrades. What, what if you, have you given any consideration to putting it out to bid now with the shared use of that kitchen? He's not compliant with the full requirements of his contract. And I do understand that you amended it because he unilaterally changed the terms. And certainly you were not going to look at just booting him out and losing all of that revenue and losing all of that opportunity. But what about now putting it out to be, because he made that change, there may be a bidder that comes in and then just wants to run the pub with the liquor license, which was granted, and make a go of, of that by being allowed to use the kitchen or share the kitchen?
We are actually making more money with him, uh, shutting down because he's using the downstairs as a, as a, as a function facility for bereavements, uh, small functions. I think he had a small wedding there and stuff like that. So we're actually doing better that way.
Still paying rent for the entire facility.
Yeah, he pays it all.
So if we did carve that out, as you're suggesting, then we would have to reduce his rent, which we would theoretically pick up from someone else. We've had two seasoned restaurateurs try to make a go at, at the pub and have value. It just does not have, it cannot support itself.
But you're making more because of that change that was made to allow that company to come in and serve alcohol and serve a sandwich or something like that for golfers. That's why you're making, that's, that's the whole purpose of us issuing that liquor license. When you explain the circumstance, that's why you're making more, right?
No, no, no. That's a whole separate issue. I'm talking about the building itself, that the tenant that is there now that shut the pub down is now running it as a function facility downstairs also. And we're making more money between the rent and the commission than we did when he was running this pub.
But isn't he paying less rent than the previous tenant because of the fact he's running both? That's what was, you guys said the last time you were here.
Was that, was that?
Okay.
He's paying much more, much more.
Yeah.
Okay. I remember a discussion last time you were here.
It would be great if the pub could, could be run as a separate entity and support itself. I personally am, based on two people taking shots at doing that, have, have been unable to do that. Two seasoned restaurateurs, right? So, you know, unfortunately, the golfers don't support it, number one. And secondly, the town does not support it. So it's, you know, with all the opportunities to go eat along in '28, people are not going to go to the pub at Hillview or again. We try. You know, two other people try. Just cannot support itself. As a pub, as a function facility, it certainly does.
And I, and one last comment about the additional, uh, fee of, of $4 or $5. Demographics show that only about 11, 10 to 11% of the golfers at the Hillview are from out threading. The rest are from out of town. And out of town, they have many options to golf. And you start putting a fee on people to golf at the Hillview. It happened at Sagamore and Sagamore started the chives and a fee for, initial fee for cars. People left the droves and came to the Hillview. You start taxing people because that's what we, we see as a tax from out of town is to commit here and to pay for what. It's not going to upgrade the golf course.
You're just raising the rates. You're not charging, you're not calling it a fee.
We can certainly, we can certainly try to raise the rates.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about.
We have to work with finance director on how we do that.
If you want to use Sagamore, they're, they're $5 more than you are to play. 18 holes on the weekend, okay? So, Mr. O'Larry.
See, I wouldn't do that. I, I have to set the record straight for me. I, I wouldn't do that. To, to raise the fee knowing full well that that's just going to go into in lieu of taxes? Why, why would I do that? Why, I mean.
Mr. O'Larry.
First of all, townspeople and the, and the out of townspeople, because we're a regional facility. We're not an off-reading facility. We're a regional facility. And everyone from Lawrence to wherever the 40 cities and towns are that we have have to be treated the same way. They can't be treated any differently. They pay the same fee. We don't have a town fee for residents? So why would we, why would we take and add $5 onto people knowing full well that it's not going to benefit the golf course? And it actually is a tax. How do you, well, how do you call that anything else but a tax on out of towns? That's, you know, that's, that's, you have to know, you know. That's, that's the way it's been for 31 years. We've had a great thing going there and to start tweeting with it because we, we are, we, we don't make great money over there. I, I, I don't know where this conception comes from. You know, we're paying a massive amount of money in fees. We're paying bonds. And one of these days, somebody else is going to come to us, as they have. That turf field took seven years. Seven years before we consented to, to give $2 million because we didn't have it in our budget. Okay? We didn't have it. So for seven years, people keep coming back. We've had groups looking for hockey arenas. They kind of fell by the wayside now. We've had all kinds of, people have great ideas. Their zealousness is as great as mine is, I hope. They look for us to fund things.
Mr. O'Larry.
And if we don't have money to fund it, then we've destroyed the mission that we started in 88, in, in 1988.
Mr. O'Larry.
Well, a couple of points. Well, I'll go back to 1988 too, because I was around that. And again, it was always intended. And the way that this enterprise was designed was specifically to prevent general government and the school department budgets to get their fingers into the till. their fingers into the till, to offset and to augment the general operating expenses of the town in North Reading. If you look across the Commonwealth, cities and towns that have municipal golf courses, and we are unique, we're the only one with this setup. All the other ones are town or city employees, run in the coffers, one of two things. Either the city or town takes all the money in and then pays the expenses, or they pay a vendor, excuse me, a vendor pays the town $250,000, $300,000 a year to operate the golf course and to maintain it. Every single one of them has been close to failure and is a loser for every other municipality. It's a cost center. What we have here is a very unique setup and designed specifically to avoid the Hillview Enterprise from failing, and we've had seven member volunteers and changed over the years who have really embraced the mission of it and the design of it to ensure that it continues to thrive and continues to service our community. We have had so many benefits. Ipswich River Park, you know, the purchase, the development of Ipswich River Park, the turf football field, the Wheeler property, and other entities where, you know, Hillview has been able to support it, but the Commission has consciously been good stewards of the purse strings there to ensure that they don't take on too much debt and force the city, the town to pay for anything. Hillview paid for itself. If we start getting into the habit, and Mr. Stack is absolutely right, the payment in lieu of taxes was voluntary if the funds were available, and that's the way it's always been looked at. And again, over the years, we've had this discussion, and, you know, when we came into tough fiscal times, it's tempting to try and say, let's see if we can glean a little bit out of this on a regular basis. But we can't count on it. There are so many factors which come into play with the play at Hillview, particularly the weather. We don't always have that money, and we can't count on it. Some years we could, some years we couldn't. Some years we held it in abeyance. They built a surplus, they had an IOU with the town, the Hillview did, and they paid it back. But it was never mandatory. It was always voluntary based upon the fiscal stability of the Hillview Commission. You know, now in relation to the pub downstairs, you know, Burton Page ran it for 26 years, and he absolutely subsidized it over the years, and we got spoiled by that. But when we got two seasoned restaurateurs in there, it doesn't work. The numbers just don't work. There isn't enough businesses supported. There isn't enough parking, and the biggest complaint from the people who have been renting from us here or leasing it is the parking for the pub. You know, during the golf season, the golfers take up the parking spaces when there's a function there. You know, people think it's, the pub is jammed because the parking lot is full, and it's not. It's empty. The current vendor, who, current operator there, put in tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars into the Hillview facility of his own money, you know, because he had a long-term, five-year contract with a five-year option. You know, he has spent $300,000 plus in that facility in order to upgrade it and make it more desirable so that, you know, he can make a living at it. And again, the contract that we have allows us to get a commission on that. So the better he does, the better we do. And there's no doubt, you know, if you go into that pub today and you look at what it was three years ago, four years ago, it's a totally different facility, but it doesn't support the business. So now he's using it for another venue for functions only, for golf outings, and it's working, and we're getting a piece of the pie. We're getting more revenue out of this vendor than we were the previous one, and it's going to continue to grow. So, you know, trust the Commission to, I mean, I know what they do, and I know what they've been doing for years, and Bob and I sat there, but we did the same thing. You look at it, you weigh it, and they've been extremely fiscally responsible. The town can't count on that money every year, nor should we, nor should we, and it should be treated as found money for one-time expenditures, not put into the operating, general operating budget.
Okay. Mr. Misery next, but I will respond. All I was saying was, there was no discussion. We had an agreement, and five years later, we were supposed to go back to it. That's the way we left it five years ago. I'm just saying, there was a unilateral decision, and this board wasn't included, because this is the first I'm learning of it. And second of all, when I came on board in 2010, Greg Balakon has had it programmed in his revenue plan every year, every year.
And I opposed it every single year.
Mr. O'Leary, you were very clear. You've never changed your opinion on this. But I'm not, but you're wrong by telling the community and the two new board members that are going to be sitting here in a few weeks that this is the way it always was done. That's not truthful. The truth of the matter is, you go back and look at the records, it was always programmed in. And I'm not disagreeing with you, George and Pete, on any of this. I'm just saying that it needs to be discussed because we made an agreement to the community because it was always in the revenue plan, and when we took it away from the community, we said we'd come back in five years and have another discussion, and that's all we should do.
And as far as, as far as, you know, suggesting that we, you know, tag on an additional fee for a payment in lieu of tax structure, you know, that's up to the Commission to determine how to do it and how much we can charge. They study it very hard every single year. They want to be, you know, not at the highest, you know, greens fee, and not at the lowest, or in the middle. Always been in the middle of the road here in order to maintain the number of rounds that we have, and they've done an excellent job at doing that. And one or two or $3 makes a difference.
Yep.
It makes a huge difference. And there have been years when we spiked the fee and you see it drop. So we maintain it for two or three years, you know. They're very cognizant of it, and they do their studies, and they've done an excellent job over the years ensuring that we maintain the number of rounds that we have there every year by being competitive based upon the facility that we have.
But I also hear a lot of this, all right? I've heard a lot of this, that allow the Commissions, allow the Boards, and allow these people to do what they have to do, and I agree with it. But I also remind them that they're appointed on the privilege of the Board. We appointed them. We have goals, we have strategic plans that we have to meet, and they're supposed to help us achieve those. They're not supposed to be unilateral, do whatever they want because they did it back in 1988. That's not what it's about. I think there's a misconception about the responsibility of these Commission. Mr. Stack, I do not recognize you, and if you, and I'm asking to be respectful to my decision. It's my decision to recognize you, and I will, okay? But let me finish, because there's a lot being said here, and we have two new board members that are going to be sitting here soon, and they need to know the truth, because we can't paint the picture. That's not the truth, okay? And Mr. Misery is going next. And all I'm saying is that we, I'm upset because we had an agreement, and then all of a sudden someone else decided we weren't going to honor the agreement, or at least to have a discussion. Because I probably would vote in favor of exactly what you're saying, but my issue is it just seemed to be swept under the rug, and that's not right. That's what it looks like to me. Mr. Misery.
Well, I think that...
Mr. Misery was first, and then you're going to be second.
The tax payment was always, do we have money left that we can apply? And the operating of the Hillview, the repair, the maintenance, the growth, and the cost of all the capital projects that had donated to the community came first. And I think as Steve said, that tax donation was one that if it was available, it was available, went into the town budget, but it was better not to use it in the plan of the budget.
But that's not the way it happened, Bob, when Greg Balakon was here.
Burn it the following year if it's available.
But that wasn't the way it operated.
I understand what you're saying, Michael.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted, someone just to, so the folks that weren't here then, and for the folks that are coming in, to understand that is the way it was. I mean, I didn't have a lobotomy, and forget how this stuff worked.
Michael, I understand that, and I understand your concern, but I think you've got to look at the bigger picture and the history of the Hillview and how it's managed, and the team of appointees run a business. They don't get paid for running the business, and they've done what's best for the community. And by the way...
No one's questioning that, and I don't know how we can spin it to that.
Their facility is donated to a number of schools to use the facility at various times.
Bob, do you think anyone's questioning that? I'm not questioning. If you think I'm questioning that, again, I think we're losing sight of what my issue is. We gave a reprieve for five years, that's all I'm saying. To come in here and not even have a discussion about it, and then to say that, you know, it's always voluntary, or we just decide when the money is there, that's not true when Greg Balakon was here.
They don't have the money to pay the payment in lieu of taxes in order to fiscally, be fiscally sound and run it appropriately. And you want to take it anyway?
I'll come back to Mr. Stack, Mrs. Minipelli, and then Mr. Game.
I had discussions with Greg every year about the in lieu of tax money, and he agreed. He agreed it shouldn't have been budgeted, but he said that's the only way he can use the money. That was when I always talked about taking out of the box. You need two vehicles, and you have the money for the in lieu of taxes, use it to buy the two vehicles, and it doesn't increase budget. He said, no, you can't do that. You have to do it, you have to do what they give you to do with town government. But anyways, we always had the discussion. He was fortunate that we had the money to pay it, because he would have faced the same thing if we didn't have the money. As far as the appointment goes, we were appointed by town meeting through the town manager with approval of Board's...
By the Board. It's an appointment by the Board.
No, you're at the privilege of the Board. You're appointed at the privilege of the Board to help us achieve our goals and our objectives. That's the way it works.
Okay, I'll revisit that.
That was done before, a long time ago.
Been like that for a long time.
But the thing is that we're trying to do the best, and the thing is, I've always said, it's a very fragile project. It really is. We've done nothing here that hasn't taken people coming to us over and over and over because we can't afford it, you know? It's as simple as that.
Mrs. Minipelli.
My understanding of an enterprise fund, generally speaking, is you invest your revenues back into the fund to make, to make the whole program work, which is my understanding of what the Hillview Enterprise Fund is all about. So I, my question would be, and I probably, it's to the town administrator, we had to, as Mr. Hemi said, we had to vote on a five-year moratorium, so there must be something out there that is perhaps requiring this, or something out there that we caused us to have to vote and say, yes, forget it for five years.
It was a comfort level.
And then my, so my question would be, do we have to do that again? Is that coming before us again to do that again for more time? And then my second matter is, I know there's a prom coming up there Friday, but my understanding is they're renting it, and I didn't think it was, since this new contract was in place, my understanding was it's not available for use for school functions or things like that, so they're actually going to other places to hold their functions.
What year is the prom? It was the senior prom, it probably hasn't been there because, I know my daughter didn't want hers there, so the junior prom always goes there. But I don't know. He wouldn't turn that away. Is food involved there? He wouldn't turn that away. That's a penalty.
I was thinking of other things that were, that before this particular contract, and again, this is way off the topic of what we're talking about really, but that's my understanding. I've had people complain to me about there being a lack of availability to host school events there, and there being no real reciprocity in that manner. That is no indictment of the members of the Commission, and I don't think anyone here, I don't agree with any allegation of issues like that or any kind of implication that this, that something's being done wrong. You had some, you had something difficult that you brought to our attention that you had to renegotiate, but my concern is, do we then again have to vote, you know, to be, to do this again as a, because we did have to do it five years ago as a Board, and a couple of us weren't even here, but we did have to do it, so do we have to do that again?
You didn't have to do, the Board didn't do it. It was, it was the Hillview Commission coming to the Board saying, you know, keep your expectations low, and you're not going to see anything from us for at least five years, for the next five years. So don't budget for it, because it isn't coming, you know? And prior to that, again, previous administrations put it in, took it out, the whole thing, and some bought into the program, some didn't buy into the program, but you cannot count on it, the payment in lieu of taxes, nor should you be able to count on it, because the revenue up there, as George has pointed out, is fragile at times.
I think we've talked about this multiple times, and I completely understand, but my question is, it came to us, Mr. Hemi told us that, it came to us...
The Board did not have to take a vote five years ago.
I think the difference is, when we came five years ago, that we informed you that the next five years in our budget, there would not be anything put in for that. And I think Mr. Briscoe was right, during the previous five years, or there was, if you go back to five years before that, before he was on, there wasn't. So it goes down, as Mr. O'Leary said. So there's nothing, at least that I've ever seen written that says the Hillview has to pay in lieu of taxes.
No, but you, but there was said earlier that there was a discussion with the previous town administrator and maybe some members of the Hillview Commission. They had discussion. To me, was there a discussion? Was there...
There's not been a discussion.
There hasn't been anything. That's my point. That's all I'm trying to say here. And then all of a sudden, this thing grew into me questioning the capability of the Commission, or me, you know, it just drew to something crazy here. All I'm saying is, we're not communicating here, and the Hillview Commission does not have the unilateral right to just bypass payment in lieu of taxes. We had an agreement for five years, let's have a discussion. So how we're going, we're done with this conversation, we're moving on, because we've got a tremendous amount of people here.
They submitted a budget without it.
The town administrator and the Finance Director will meet you, and...
Can I, can I be heard in a second?
I'm going to move on, George. I'm going to give you a minute, but I do have Mr. Gamer. I will, after Mr. Gamer. He's been waiting patiently.
My question was just answered, actually.
Okay, go right ahead.
I take exception to the being required to pay in lieu of taxes. If I could, if I could just hear, am I accurate?
No.
What did you say? I'm sorry. So I don't want to miss the curve, but you just said...
I'm just saying, you had mentioned earlier that in previous administrations, you had to talk with the town administrator, and you would put it, you would talk about why it can't be in the budget. What I asked was, was that discussion happened? And the answer was no. And that's all I'm saying, there was just no discussion. And you know, maybe shame on me, maybe I should have went through it a little closer until tonight, I didn't realize it wasn't in there, but I had assumed it would be, but there was still no discussion per the town administrator. So we're just going to leave it as, let the town administrator and the Finance Director circle back with you guys, have a discussion, bring it back here, and let's just figure out what we're going to do. Do you ever see anywhere on the horizon any way of putting it back in? Because you know what? The community, like you said, only about 10% of the community gets the benefit of the golf course, your words, so the community should also reap the benefit of a payment in lieu of taxes because we have in the past. If we can get back there, that'd be great. Or let's pick a capital item that we could fund and work towards that.
The whole community benefit should circle back, kids' spot, the turf field.
Right.
What else do you want?
I agree with you. So let's just have a discussion, what the benefit, if it's not a payment in lieu of taxes, what do we see on the horizon that fits within the objectives of the strategic plan of the Board? That's all I'm saying here. I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to be argumentative here, but you don't have the unilateral right to say we're not going to discuss it. End of story. Let's move on. Yes, Mr. Gobert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we're trying to end the conversation, but I do feel it's important to remind folks that we're following a different budget process issue. We've talked about that all along, where the departments come before you requesting what it is they feel they need in their budget and what they can, what they view their goals are. So there is a difference in that, yes, my predecessor may have come to you and said, I'm recommending this with regard to the budget, but I have not done that at this point in time. So I think the next step, as we discuss, is for us to have a conversation with the Hillview Commission regarding that.
And the point I'll leave with you is this, maybe it isn't a point, payment in lieu of taxes, maybe we never go back there again, but there are some things that are probably needed in the future that are capital-related items. We should have a goal to get there, so when the revenues get to that point, you should have something to work towards. That's all I'm saying. Right now, we have nothing. We have nothing. No payment in lieu of taxes, we have no new capital potential that maybe POC or REX needs, or LUC or anything. We have nothing on the horizon to give you guys something to work towards. That's all I'm asking, is let's have a conversation. So if it's not today, George, you guys must have some projections. That's it. It's as simple as that, okay?
Thank you.
All right, next, Elder Services.
I was ready 45 minutes ago.
Good thing you get paid by the hour.
Hey, I warmed them up.
Hey, I warmed them up.
Oh.
Okay, everybody, good evening. I do not have a PowerPoint, but I hope to make this very brief. I have a few requests, an increase of $200 in both my repair and van supplies line items due to the aging of our van. Of course, you never know what's going to happen. It usually happens at the very end of June when there is no money, so I'm asking for an increase there. I'm asking for a small increase for our COA van drivers and an increase for my outreach assistant. But most importantly, I am asking to make my outreach assistant have more hours to a full-time employee. Right now, she gets paid 14 hours through Formula Grand, four hours presently from the town in North Reading. I'm asking an additional request of 16 hours per week to be paid for by the town of North Reading. Our outreach assistants have made an enormous difference in our department, working with many of our needy clients, promoting well-being programs and getting folks out of their home and into the senior centers. As you know, and this is important, our senior population right now is 25% of the town's population.
Huge.
There's 60 years and older and yes, 60 years and older is the number that we use as an elder in this community. It's projected to grow by maybe 40% in the next 15 years. 25% does not include any residents from Modern's Landing. With already one building finished, 400 more units to go, we have had one Meals on Wheels client, some coming to the programs, numerous requests for transportation and people just calling to know about programming services that we have at the senior center. And like I said, we have 400 more units to go there. The demand in our services for our department is only going to grow and a 19-hour outreach assistant just isn't going to cut it anymore. We need help, I need help, if we're going to continue to serve this population. The increase in needs are documented in our relationship with Mystic Valley Elder Services. And, excuse me, in FY '18, they provided the town with a million and a half dollars' worth of services. That's an increase of over $300,000 compared to last year. This increase included everything from home-delivered meals, private meals, and approximately had 13,336 meals last year. That's a lot of meals going up. Here, management and home care services, our Shine Program plus eight more service programs that Mystic Valley delivers to us. And just so you all know, most of those calls started at the senior center, so that was taken by one of our staff members and we have a limited amount of staff members to take all those phone calls. On a positive note, even though we are a one-room senior center, our programs have increased. We have an exercise program for mornings a week, lunch every day at noon, afternoon programs from watercolor classes to a teen tech tutors program where the high school student council comes in and teaches seniors and sometimes staff how to use iPhones and iPads. And they just won an award about a couple of weeks ago for their program. We're very excited about that. And this year, thanks to the TA and the hospitality of the folks at the town hall, we're able to use this very room during the day to sponsor various eight-week sessions of wellness workshops presented to Mystic Valley Elder Services. And we must be doing something right because we have five people in town that are 100 years and older and two of those people come up every Wednesday to play bingo and eat lunch. So, we're very proud of that and they're great, great ladies. So, just a quick update, a little over a month ago, the COA board was asked to implement the ARP Roadmap to Liveability in making North Reading an age-friendly community. The COA board met a few times during the month and they are recommending the establishment of an age-friendly task force. All involved are very excited about the program being successful, but realized in reality, it's going to take a lot more than one entity to be involved. You're going to need the resources from town in the way of involvement and engagement from other town departments and funding. This adventure, excuse me, this adventure is just getting off the ground, so we'll keep you all updated on our progress and I want to thank my COA board, many members are here today, for working on this and going forward to promote North Reading as an age-friendly community. So, any questions?
Mary, I think you do the Lord's work over there and it's a great service you do for communities. Question on the Ring and Ride program. Have you, I know that you have 300 residents who were transported last year. Do you find that growing or is it plateaued or?
I don't have latest statistics, but I do know it is happening. We get very few phone calls that we can't handle for Ring and Ride. We still have a few phone calls that we use volunteers for and if we do get any calls and if it's some sort of complaint, it's usually smoothed out right away and it's just a matter of communication with the dispatchers. So, we get not even a lot of phone calls because people must already know about Ring and Ride.
And do you find more people are using it? I don't know if you get the numbers from...
I don't have updated numbers, but yes.
I mean, it's growing.
Oh, it's growing.
That's what I was getting at.
It's growing. I mean, our population's growing, their needs are going to grow and of course, these are all medical rides, so it is growing.
That's great.
Mary, just related to the MVR TA. So, I'm going to be going in next month, someone's going to have to replace my position on the board. They've been asking about when North Reading's going to meet with them to remove some of the towns that we don't have any rides to and where we have towns that people have made requests, like Somerville and Medford. So, I've just left it with them that I assume after the election's over, the new individual that will be assigned will work with you, set up a meeting with them. They do have updated data. I don't have it with me tonight, but we certainly can get that sent, but the ridership has increased significantly. The feedback continues to be outstanding and I think it can improve if we can remove some of the towns from the sheet that we sent out in our little flyer that we saw no requests for, take them off and add new ones. I know Somerville is definitely one.
Somerville is huge.
We need to add. And Medford, I believe, was another one, some of your folks.
It's surprising. We just got a call, it was to Amesbury, and she wanted to go to physical therapy and it was, you know, we tried to convince her she could come locally.
Yeah.
But we just couldn't get a volunteer to commit two times a week going to Amesbury.
So, I really do hope that whoever the liaison is to continue to keep that going and continue to update that program, they will print you new flyers for free.
Oh.
Okay? As many as you want. So, update it and get those flyers out and keep pushing that program and it's fantastic. And I'm getting close myself to be able to use it in age, so it'll be good. Yes?
Just a quick question, Mary, on the increase of the hours, it looks like that's just adding 17,000 to the budget.
Is that what it is? I don't, I have to...
I just want to make sure that, just that bump up in hours.
It would be the bump up, yes.
Seventeen to 21 was the number.
To make a full-time position. We are a desperate up there and she does a very good job, but you can see the numbers, they're huge. And Sherry can only, you know, take so many phone calls. We have been very busy. This month alone, we've had 100 more rides in our transportation than we did last month.
Mr. Missary?
Mary, is there any issues inside and the outside of the building? I know it wouldn't necessarily be in your budget, but it'd need to be addressed.
I've been in the building lately.
We don't have much time.
I know, I know.
We ate up a half hour with me screaming.
Now, if you don't speak about issues there, then they're not going to end up in the building.
Of course, we have issues. Julie's been great. Everything's like Band-Aid, little issues that can be fixed, but there's constant issues. You know, we have railings getting loose, they get fixed. I'm not saying that we're not getting them fixed, but things are falling apart. Our going upstairs to the second floor is in tough shape. Not that we use it, but the ceiling is in bad shape, sometimes the plumbing is in bad shape, but we work with what we have and like I said, Julie's doing a great job in keeping us going.
Anyone else? Rich, if you wouldn't mind going, maybe sit at one of the mics?
Yeah.
Should we share with Mary? Just so the folks at home, just...
Yeah, so I'm Vice Chair of the COA and so, you know...
Talk to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Folks at home can hear.
So, Rich Wallner, Vice Chair of the COA. And so, again, the COA members are here, but you know, Mike came, Chair came to visit us like two months ago. We had a chance to go through this, I think you're all very familiar with that. We haven't done an application for this because, and this is to add on to what Mary already said, is that when you really read through this, it's really a three- to five-year project and it really hits very wide scope. This is a community program to make it age-friendly and it can't be underestimated that it's going to take a lot of time and energy to do that. The good news is that the COA, we have five, six very capable people who are very involved. We have the Social Services Action Team, which has really been devoted more to adults and seniors in town and that's a crew of about 10 people that are very well, they're very engaged, have been for years, so we fully believe this to be very doable, but we're also going to need staff, not to interfere with what she's talking about, but at some point, you're going to need some sort of position, very similar to the youth director in town, to help lead and coordinate this effort because it just cannot be done by volunteers practically, in my opinion. So, you know, we're bringing it to your attention now because we've had no time to get it together. This is while we're trying to think of creative things, but, and I don't think it's going to be big money to do it, but you do need some sort of like a youth director type, age-friendly director or an age-friendly person who's going to help lead this charge because it is a whole new assignment and the benefit to the community is, you know, is just overwhelming over the long run. So, just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you for continuing to push that forward because I do believe the next, you know, once it's actually executed and we're up and running in the next three years, the benefit will be priceless, I think.
The roadmap is all here, I mean, it's very well figured out.
Mary, thank you as always and I do apologize for the, oh, I do have one question for you.
I'm a bit confused on the compensation increase and maybe I'm just not reading it right, but the $17,000 increase, is that adding a new person, a new hours?
Those adding more hours.
Because you talk about two-part-time, two-full-time and some people are paid the combination of grants and budget. Can you just describe where, why the $17,000 increase?
Because that would be the 15, let me see, 16 additional hours that I'm asking to make this...
16 additional?
16 additional hours.
For, for the outreach assistant?
Yep, yep.
It's taking it part-time, making it full-time.
Right.
And on the clerical position, there's a 9.6% increase, is that a combination of a couple of years of increases, something like this? Is that what it is? Okay, all right. All right. Thank you.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah, but I think it's important to mention that, you know, we do have a 55 and older community right on here, or not back here, that is going to come to fruition here in the next five years and so I think this is a good time to make this investment, to make this change.
Just trying to understand it.
Yep. No, I just want to make, I don't think we pointed it out enough, though.
Yeah, that's going to be a huge increase and just seeing all those numbers, I was surprised seeing all those numbers already coming in with that first finished building. It's scary.
Yeah. Are you seeing about the senior center?
We're seeing with the senior center, whether we have a meals client here coming for programs, are they making phone calls for services, are they crying about transportation? Yeah, they're going to the senior center.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
That's what we want and we just need to be ahead of it and I think you're doing a great job.
Okay, finally, I have a little something to say. I just want to thank Mike and Bob.
Aw, thank you.
For always hanging out and supporting our programs and the people and this is a little something.
Nice.
When you go traveling, but if I thought...
I thought it was maybe medicinal, yeah. A little brandy.
Maybe you eat something medicinal.
I was kind of hoping it was some Doc Lick was in there.
Get a cane in that bag.
Help my medicines.
See, Saint Bernard with the barrel.
It's strong.
Thank you, honestly, thank you. You guys, we'll be guys still.
Thanks, Mary.
That was nice of you.
And it's under $50.
Take it out of my paycheck.
Mary, that's the way you get your budget.
All right, next, Veterans Services. Mike, are you doing conservation?
I can speak to it, there isn't much of a change.
I know.
But I'm happy to speak to it if there's no one else here.
We weren't expecting someone?
We don't normally have anyone.
No, I didn't think so.
Aw, thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Look at all this paper. Are we going through this entire presentation?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Just the first and last.
I appreciate it.
I'll pardon my short tweet.
Do we have this on our Dropbox by any chance?
No.
No?
The PowerPoint?
It is in there, it's in the FY 2020 budget folder. Okay, oh, good. Excellent.
Might not be in Share File, but it's definitely in Dropbox.
I'll go to US.
That's what I'm...
Is it beta or VHS?
I guess.
And I'll pull it up on my Dropbox. Share File, sorry. Thank you, go on, please. Got it.
Oops, how do we do this thing?
Just arrow, did you hit the arrow? There you go.
Yay, we'll skip right through this. Want me to skip through the mission statement and all that?
Well, you do your presentation. I don't mean to rush you, I was just curious.
Okay.
I'm just trying to keep us in line, we still have a...
All right, Sue Magna, Veterans Director.
Significant agenda tonight.
The mission for our department is to provide financial assistance for the veterans, spouses and their dependents, more importantly, to provide them with outreach services, an array of services for local, state and federal. My goal is typically to provide, by getting the state, or excuse me, the federal services for those that can qualify, they, it helps us to reduce this on the state level, reducing us on the town level. One of the programs that we just started with using under the federal level was for federal claims, has been the Vetrespec, which has been wonderful to use because it actually allows me to import all their records, upload them into the system, send them off to the regional office, but I'm also, more importantly, able to see what's going on as their cases progress, so when they're calling and asking questions about these, about their case and where it stands, I'm able to look in and get some kind of an idea for them. Right now, currently, the licensing fee for that is $449 a year, but it's worth every That particular program features an array of recovery tracking, emailing, generating, I have the ability to, for electronic signatures, form generating, scheduling, communications back and forth between the VA and myself. We cover a array of state assistance to include fuel assistance programs we work with, state food stamp program, also known as SNAP, free cell phones for qualifying seniors, lifelines, which is crucial, especially for those that are living home alone, social security assistance for social security, SSI, SSA and SSDI, mass health buy-in applications are, in particular, are important to the Chapter 115 because if they qualify, they're under 1,700, roughly under 1,700 a month, they've raised it a little bit, but roughly around 1,700 a month or less, they could qualify what they have as the mass health buy-in, so instead of that 135, 50 a month that they keep taking out and we, I reimburse them back, they would be covered under the mass health buy-in, so that's, and we have about, probably about six people in that category right now under the Chapter 115. In addition to that kind of state assistance is the Medigap, applications, they're required to be on health insurance, so we reimburse for health insurance, we reimburse for the Medicare Part B I was talking about, as well as Part D, which is prescriptions. Work with long-term mass health applications for those that are going to be in long-term nursing homes. We work with housing for the homeless veterans, employment and care, career assistance for those that are unemployed, get them back on the work to get them off the Chapter 115. And each year, we reassess them, the Chapter 115 recipients, twice a year, January and June, to ensure that they're, they're still qualified for the, for the program. There's state annuity filing for those that are qualified, those are for veterans that are 100% disabled as well as their widows take over as well and continue on with that program. That's a $2,000 annuity that's deposited in their accounts on February 1st as well as August 1st. Filing of tax exemptions for qualified veterans who are 10% or more disabled, 400 for those that are under 100% and it's $1,000 for those are qualified, for those that are 100% disabled. That changes when the widow, when the widow of, when the veteran passes and the widow is now taking over that tax exemption. If that veteran passed away from a service-connected disability and it is clear, it's on his death certificate, that widow now receives her entire tax, taxes exempted for the property. So, the 100% disability that the veteran receives is a little about, around $3,000 a month, but that goes away once he passes, that goes away with the veteran. So, now the widow only is in receipt of about half of that under the widow's pension. So, the state annuity, this, excuse me, this, the tax exemption for their homes kind of So, the state annuity, this, excuse me, this, the tax exemption for their homes kind of helps cushion it a little bit more for them, if you will, especially when they have high tax property, properties of seven thousand or more, so they get the full, the full tax exemption as the widow. We file and assist with senior, with senior assisted, assisted living, as well as nursing homes and senior housing, assist with the placement of veterans in long-term care with the VA as well. A lot of federal assistance that's provided as well, high VASH vouchers, which is a, like a section eight housing for your, for your veterans that are chronically homeless or homeless, aid and attendance filing, comp filing, pension filing for those, the pension filing would fall under for somebody with a very low income, and then if they qualify, they can get additional assistance through the VA if they qualify. And then there's the DIC, which I just spoke about, which is the death benefit for the , for those widows, and the veterans' marker filings. These are the different forms, I'll go through that for you. There's also filing for adaptive housing and vehicle grants for a hundred percent disabled veterans that qualify, discharge upgrades filing, and also requests for their medals, and requests for any military documents that we assist with filing as well, counseling system with mental health, mental health placement, and assistance with the Montgomery and post-GI nine eleven bills. We are also the keeper of military war records, we're able to, any of those veterans that have, were living in Massachusetts, went into Massachusetts, when, they went into the, entered into the military, the majority of them are all in the system for us to, to be able to get them as they, as needed. There's been a few hoarding issues we've, I've been dealing with this year, two of them that I was able to actually, we've actually come to, one moved out, got her into, with her daughter, they're working on selling, cleaning and selling the house, the other one, we did get it cleaned out, and there's a third one we're working on still. Well checks are extremely important on our end, to make sure that they're in receipt, they're safe, their, their medications are coming to them when they should be, obviously if there's food in the house, heating, heating, and to ensure that they have ACs in the summer months as well, but doing overall well checks. Had one issue where there was some serious issues with the bedding and that, and that had to be replaced, serious bed bug bites and things of that nature, so. You know, you depend on the children to work with their parents, but it doesn't always work out that way, so can't always guarantee on, on that, so. The other thing, the other reason why we have to do the outreach is in the checks, well checks and that, because we do have situat, we've had situations where the, the parents passed away, but the family didn't notify us, so we're sending out checks and they're cashing them out. So, that's an important part of the position. Burials, coordinating with the funeral directors to assist with military honors, as well as being there for the families, to assist the families with any needs for the, for that, as well as further on with any burial reimbursements and markers, and those that may qualify for their, the widows may be qualified for the death benefit as well. Handicap needs and medical needs, we work as, as a team, we all, as VSOs, whenever there's any hospital beds, ramps, walkers, wheelchairs, or anything of that nature that after a veteran passes away, we pass that out to ourselves amongst us to try and alleviate any financial burden on ourselves through chapter one fifteen, and it's actually, works pretty good. I actually had taken, gotten rid of a steer lift at one point, and some wheelchairs and hospital beds, and got those over there to other, other veterans that needed it in other, in other communities, and vice versa. Coordinate with the elder services, Mystic Valley Police and Fire on a regular basis, as well as Lifeline, get a lot of calls from them on my, on my, I don't know, to let me know, the lifelines actually work really good because they do notify me when there's somebody in, going into the, being transported. Transportation, you folks have spoken of ring and ride earlier with Mary, in some cases it's working, it can, it works in some cases, in some cases it doesn't. I had one individual that was pretty upset, apparently they, they couldn't pick him up when it was like a three, four-hour wait they were giving him. So, it works for people that are able-bodied, but for those that require the assist of somebody or more, more, more so that they're fragile, to be waiting that long for appointments, it's, that's where the difficulty comes in.
Yeah, well, we said that from day one.
Yeah.
We're very clear on that.
Right.
It's not that kind of service.
Exactly.
Specialized service they should seek privately.
Right, right. But otherwise, I haven't had, with, with the exception of that one complaint, and I, again, did the same thing, spoke with the, the ring and ride people and, you know, got it, got it squared away, other than that, it's been working pretty good for those that have been needing it. I myself haven't been getting any calls recently on it either, so the information must be out there pretty good for them. We work with appeals, situa, appeals for state, and the state and federal end of it as well, notices of disagreements if they don't, they're not in, in agreement with the disability ratings they received, or if they were denied going back and having to re, refile with a request for reconsideration, presenting more documentation. And then there's the outreach to the families for pre and post-deployments, that's, that really plays a major role as well, it's important for them to know. As a matter of fact, when we did the graduate to defender coins this past, last year, we actually had a situation with, with one of the, one of the coins, the families, their son was, they were supposed to be, he was supposed to be graduating from Paris Island, but because of that, the hurricanes that they had coming in, they were transporting them down to Georgia, so the poor family's stuck in Virginia trying to figure out where am I supposed to go, and eventually we, we were working out, I was able to reach out to the, to down at Paris Island and speak to them and get the information back. They were getting a lot of calls, apparently. Coordinate a lot with the medical facilities, including the nursing homes, VA hospitals, and rehab centers, and, and we've already talked about the grant assistant, oh, excuse me, oh, we already talked about the grant assistance that we can get for the veterans that are, that are need wheelchair, home, home adaption, or wheelchair vans. And health and substance abuse and homelessness, there's still a lot of that on the rise, we're actually going to be, they're providing us with another training for that kind of issue, and as well as a lot with PTSD and MS, military sexual traumas. So, the office functions typically, it's the phones, emails, a lot of scanning going on, scheduling clients and businesses, there's a lot of in-house work that has to be taken care of, legislative, and keeping up with the legislation changes, keeping up with all the bulletin boards, all the, the, the Facebook and the websites, the warrants, state, state, state budgets, redoing, redoing budgets for the vets that are living over in PBD court, they require a changeover, obviously our budgets here, annual budgets, and as well as the reports and everything, but there's a lot involved with, with the, the vismas that I'm working with, which is the, the state system, keeping up with the workload on that end, and the monthly war, monthly warrant, warrants that have to be put out and everything. Bottom line is, the office has been increasing immensely with a lot of, a lot of veteran needs. It's gotten to the point that the office now is averaging four, sometimes five people a day in there, the phone calls, trying to field the phone calls, I'm still fielding phone calls from being out. The assist from the seniors has been great, with the exception of, the problem is, it's a body in there and the phone calls ring, and Sue, you've got a phone call, or they're writing down, writing it down on a piece of paper and I still have to get back to them. But when you're fielding back to thirty, forty phone calls, it's not easy to get to everybody at once, and then people are getting kind of upset that you're not getting to them soon enough. There's also the coordinating of plans for veteran ceremonies, Memorial Day ceremonies, and any other, any other events and functions that we're trying to provide for the, for the veterans of the town, as well as for the community. Training is ongoing three times a year with the DVS and with the MV SOA training conferences, which are February and June, and the DVS training, Department of Veteran Services training is mandated for, for every October, with other shops and seminars in between. Committees that have, Veterans Memorial Committee, Veterans Events Committee, and then it's, we still work with also Salvation Army, which has been great because they help us out when all the, other areas have been exhausted, and to keep monies away from coming out of our, either the gift account or from chapter one fifteen, they're another program that we're able to use. So, on the line item details, the changes that I'm looking at is under the travel line right now, I'm looking to decrease it by six thousand to help assist with a part-time salary for a part-time office assistant, and another decrease of it of a thousand for FY twenty, for FY twenty-two assist with memorabilia for the wall that heals, it's coming in August of two thousand nineteen. That one thousand would be split up between postage of two hundred dollars and other supplies for eight hundred dollars. State and office claims assistance, thirty-nine claims for chapter one fifteen, we've been averaging this year, annuities of nine, tax exemptions twenty-four, welcome home bonuses seven.
Excuse me, Susan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mike, so just a clarification, the reduction that you're talking about in the six thousand dollars, that's actually from the new transportation line item that we put in a couple of years ago.
Yes, the five, seven zero zero, yeah.
Okay, I think it says travel in the presentation, but it's actually a transportation line item.
Transportation.
Oh, what I, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Federal claims, aid and attendance, we've had a lot of aid and attendance, we have a lot of elders out there, a lot of people, a lot of families calling in, obviously we're having a lot of people between Korean War veterans, we still have World War II veterans, and also a lot of Vietnam vets. Disability comp claims today, had been filed, we're fifty-nine, but I'm up to seventy-three right now. Homeless assistance, two VASH vouchers, burial markers, twenty-seven, and burial benefits claims sixteen.
Can you tell me what that means, hoarding? Your, your responsibilities associated with someone with a hoarding case? What is the role, responsibility of the town in a, in a case like that?
In the hoarding cases?
Yeah, do we, do we actually play a role?
Yeah, we do, I have to. I have, I've had situations where, I actually had one where, a situation which I was working on, and she went to, she ended up in the hospital, and the hospital actually called in the state, and the state stepped in on it, on top of it, because.
Right, the state usually does.
She had bites, we were working on it, but they thought, they thought the children were abusing her.
In the state.
So, because she was getting, you know, and her meds too, one of her meds caused her to bruise a lot, but the bruising that were left over from like the looking of scars and stuff, really, and they, they, they thought that's what it was.
Susan, my question isn't about whether it, probably the case is needed, I'm just asking, in what lane does the town sort of vary from its roles and responsibility? It just seems odd to me that, under your job description, that you would be handling hoarders and hoarding cases and addressing those things, it just, to me, seems like that's where the state's role is, and maybe I'm misunderstanding it, Michael, I don't know the physician description and what, it just seems like we're, help me out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you're, these are instances where there, there may not be much by way of family involvement, and, and the veteran's agent is, is otherwise managing a case for this individual because of their eligibility for veterans' benefits or otherwise. I, I think based on the resources that are, that have been available historically, their responsibility has fallen to the veteran's agents to, to address it. I think she and I agree that that's not ideal.
No.
And that having a, a structure where we could resolve that for, for those who have no one else to turn to, to resolve it, you know, differently would be a goal, I think.
Yeah, see, see the other thing I deal with, like, like this, with this one particular case, you know, they're embarrassed because they're embarrassed because of the way the house looks. I was like the only one allowed in there, other than the children. As much as the children tried to work, sometimes that objective person works better with them, and I was working with this individual on a regular basis, so, so with her, like, we started really small, showing her smaller areas to work with in her house, and then eventually, like I said, we, we were, we were moving along with these little things, but then, and this one here, I actually, I had to replace her bed, excuse me, had to replace her bed because of the bed bug bites and everything.
How do we get her, how do we like reach out to Representative Jones? Because to me, this is where the state needs to provide, we don't, I mean, Susan doesn't have this level of support in her organization to do these things, it just seems, I don't know, I.
Well, you have to really handle it with kid gloves, because you can't just go in there and say, and, and call the state, state people in. We've got, I've got one that we're working on right now, you know, with the, we've got actually the PD involved and the Board of Health and that, and, and Laura, is it Laura? I'm sorry.
Yes, Laura.
And the, the individual has the ability, the, the able-bodied ability to do things, and so we're kind of giving them time segments of, you know, to get things done, and you, you don't want to scare them off with, I don't want to have to call the building, I don't want to have to call the Board of Health. You want to give them that opportunity to try and get things done first before you start.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a matter of trust, relationships been built up in a matter of trust, and you have a behavioral health issue, and the one person that is the mainstay in your life would be so, in my opinion, maybe my outreach worker, and then you do get other people involved, but it's time consuming because it's a matter of trust.
Yeah, it's got to be a tremendous amount.
You have to build a lot of trust with them, yeah.
And it gets an overwhelming disease, so we go on from trying to get services in, but if you call and check the services right away and you don't know, so it, I think what she's trying to say is a matter of trust and behavioral health issue, they do know what they're doing, and it's time.
I just don't want to see you.
And then they just don't know, and then it gets so overwhelming to them that they don't know where to start, and they, they, it really gets, I mean, it's like throwing them into this.
Sure.
Oh, get your kids to clean their room, okay? What's the worst thing you're going to do? They're going to get overwhelmed. Me, I used to just take everything, throw it in a bucket, say, clean the bucket, but, you know, you just got to kind of work, work your way into it, and just, and, you know, I've been working with these people over nine years now, so it gets to, you know.
Well, you could do that with the town administrator's desk then, if you don't mind.
Go look at mine.
Please continue.
Okay.
Just kidding, Michael, you know, I know it's annoying.
He was taking notes for his three kids here.
It's organized chaos, that's where I like to go.
So, as we all know, we have a gift account, and, and we use it as, in a need, in a needs base, you know, so there was an issue, we had, that needed, a widow of a veteran needed assistance and removal of waste material potentially hazardous to surrounding homes and the community, so that was, that played into an assist this year. Salvation Army assisted me with a couple of families as well with additional fuel, additional fuel assistance, and we are still working as a commemorative partner for the Department of Defense. And we are still working as a commemorative partner for the Department of Defense under the Vietnam War commemoration to honor our veterans, Vietnam veterans, which we did, we did again this year, Veterans Day and Memorial Day. And I still do the Veterans Day cards for the kids, they love doing that. Memorial Day, we, in coordination with committee, provide the National Guard and Marine Corps for the parade this year. Veterans Day, the events were coordinated and we provided another memorable event for all with syrup. And then we honored, oh, that's a second one, sorry. And then, on the dinner this year, we honored the Korean War veterans. And we designed coffee mugs up again for the, for the Korean War veterans. So, we've already done now the World War II, Korean and Vietnam. Now we're working next to the Gulf War and, and the other wars down.
Susan, is there many more slides left in your presentation?
Nope.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to get to the nitty-gritty.
Thank you.
You're welcome, dear. So, the workload indicators, this is huge for me. Immediate assistance, I'm, I'm finding it difficulty now to continue to provide immediate assistance via telephone or with a walk-in because I may have, I do do a lot of appointments, but you do have a lot of people that walk in. And it can be anywhere from a half hour to forty-five minutes they're waiting because a lot of the, the appointments themselves typically take a good hour or so because I'm working on a lot of disability claim cases. So, that's holding me back from responding back to phone calls in time as well as emails. Home visitations are not where they should be because I'm unable to get to them. Nursing home visitations, I've been consistent lately. The outreach services, there should be more of that, but again, all the other things have taken up, up the time. The federal claims, which really require me, no disruption, to ensure an accurate and professional presentation and timely submission is near to impossible. And obviously importing the data and the, and the general office duties. So, what's happening right now, what I'm finding myself is coming in, working on Fridays late, in, working late at nights and even coming in on my weekend, on weekends at times to get things done and bring stuff home. And that in itself, because of the demands of the office, I can't find myself keeping the office closed for a week even to take a vacation or for my conferences because it really requires a person in the office during regular hours. So, with that, I'm really in dire straits, in need of somebody in that office that can pick up the pieces and has the ability to do it. And that is it. Any questions, folks?
Fincom? Board members? Thank you. Thank you for your detailed presentation. It's very helpful. Much appreciate you coming in late this evening. Do you have a question?
Just a quick question. How is your, how are your fundraising attempts going with the Walder? How are you?
Money is coming in, already trickling in. I actually put in a request for the end of April thirtieth and the other bunch went out. We did just shy of five hundred on the mailing. So, I'm already got, right now, twelve hundred dollars that just came in, which is a month earlier than I anticipated. So, that's a good thing. I have a great team put together of about fifteen people and we have already set up, already, already have a contracted, a professional singer for the official night as well as a lot of people that are doing outreach, saving, we, you know. We broke it up into segments and everybody's doing that thing in the committee, so it's not all on one meet.
So, I thought you were, were you collecting ten thousand dollars for this event? Was that, is that number?
That would be a nice goal to, to collect at least.
What was your goal? And you've raised twelve hundred towards that goal so far? That's was really the, my, my question was.
Right, right. But I'd like, my goal would be like to raise probably close to twenty because of the memorabilia, you know, things like that. Just to refurbish back what was taken out. And, but like I said, they're already starting to come in. I ran into somebody the other day and they're telling me, they gave me the name of their company and so people are like saying, no, send me an email, make sure you send me the stuff, they want to be part of it, so. And the signups are great. I did a signup genius on the website. So, when you go on the website and just below the poster, it'll say, click here and just send, and you click on there and it gives you all the information of when it's coming at the event, but it also gives you the opportunity, if you want to volunteer, it's all in four-hour segments and people are signing up left and right already on it. So, I'm really happy about that.
So, no, we get reimbursement from the state and that's been routinely on, for seventy-five percent of your budget.
Correct.
We just have two, two people here, they're going to be on the board soon, so they should just, I just want to make sure they understand. The way this particular budget works is we submit it in full and we submit to the state for seventy-five percent reimbursement, which takes about two years to get back roughly.
Is it two years? Yes. When it finally comes around.
It's about a two-year reimbursement later on. So, just so that, you may have known that, but I just wanted to make sure.
It's just the benefits that you pay out that get reimbursed, your salary and other things, though.
No, just the, just the Chapter 115 benefits.
So, it's seventy-five percent of those?
Of that.
Not the entire budget?
Correct.
It's both, thank you.
Yeah, so the, the line item, we're just, I think it's five, seven, seven.
Thank you.
Is it right now, five, seven, seven? Is the line item for the veterans benefits.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We have Conservation Administration, Andy asked for a quick break. We keep going? All right. Anyone need a break? I, I don't want to be a slave driver here. But take one if you need one, because Michael's going to be talking about conservation.
Yep, correct. So regarding the Conservation Commission's budget request, they had two changes compared to last year. One was an increase in clothing associated with a contractual increase in clothing allowance. That's in line five, five, eight, zero, zero. And then there was an eleven dollar increase in dues and memberships, line five, seven, three, zero, zero, which I believe is attributed to an increase in membership by the commission.
Okay.
I'll move on to the administration budgets. Bear with me one moment while I scroll through. The administration budgets consist of three budgets. I'll take them in order as they appear in the book. I'm on page twenty-five, Town Council. Right now, we're still projecting that budget to be a level request compared to last year. We do have some contracts that have settled, but we do have other things that are outstanding that will require the attention of the Town Council or Labor Council. So, the recommendation, the request is for a hundred thirty thousand, five hundred dollars, which is level with last year's budget. You can see we spent in fiscal year twenty eighteen, a hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Moving forward to the Select Board, couple of things that I'll note relative to changes in that budget. I put in some funding to reflect the anticipated membership of two new members who may wish to attend the MMA or other seminars or training. That's an increase of four hundred and seventy-five dollars in the Training and Education line item. Five hundred dollar increase cover incidental costs associated with the board's business in line fifty-four, zero, zero, zero. And I'm carrying an allowance of two hundred and fifty dollars for an increase in the town's annual membership in the Massachusetts Municipal Association for our annual dues. I have not seen a formal notification of what that number will be yet, but we'll reconcile that once we have it. And then finally, moving forward to the Select, excuse me, to the Town Administrator's departmental budget, the things that I will note there are as follows. First, the addition of a position entitled Project Manager or Grants Coordinator. That is a position that's in response to the board's discussion relative to a goal of having someone to come onboard and focus on grants. I believe that that could be combined with focusing on specific project management and I would see it being a professional level position in the Town Administrator's office with a salary projected at seventy-five thousand dollars per year. That's a non-union position that's in line five, one, 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 zero. And then Training and Education, this two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar increase would be to cover my attendance at the International City County Management Association Annual Conference this fall, fall of two thousand and nineteen. That would fall within fiscal year twenty twenty. Two hundred and fifty dollar increase to cover anticipated increases in registration fees for professional organizations. And I'm carrying a thousand dollar request relative to potential maintenance costs associated with one oh two Lowell Road. We do have a balance in the original appropriation for the one oh two, one oh four Lowell Road property of approximately five thousand dollars. And that is basically the refund of a deposit that we paid the owner of Edgewood in consideration of their projected efforts relative to the water easement through the property. In the end, they did not provide that easement to us. We proceeded with the taking, but they actually refunded us the money instead of the check back. So, that, that balance actually reflects that amount. The Finance Committee had covered us to, through the end of the fiscal year in which we closed on the sale of one oh four Lowell Road, we didn't receive this five thousand dollars back until, I believe, the following fiscal year. This current fiscal year, I think over the summer we received it. And so that, that's what that's in. We may, we'll look through as we go through the reconciliation, we may not actually have that funding based on the availability of the five thousand dollars. And that really is the kind of high points of those budgets.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just, are we going to, maybe I'm not seeing an increase in, for costs associated, say, with ongoing litigation where town officials are being deposed and we're going to cover the cost for parking, transportation to, from law offices and?
So, we have an increase of five hundred dollars in there for other supplies. It was an estimate. I, I don't, we haven't received any requests, but we haven't made any direct offers.
No, we make offers. Steve, that's FY twenty twenty-one request. Just kidding. No, just kidding.
No, I mean, you've got a significant number of people who are.
Right, no, it's a good question. This is going to be quite.
Who are going to be incurring costs on their own that they shouldn't be because they're basically a, they're at the behest of their official position as a town official and members of boards, committees, commissions and all the rest. We should at least be able to provide them with reimbursement for parking or some other expenses to get in and out of Boston.
Do you have a, an idea, my?
No, I mean, we talked about it.
I think we talked about it in last year's budget, honestly, if I, now that I think of it. We can look at, at what the projected impact would be and how much we'd actually need doing.
We were also talking about having some other money available to the administration for other ancillary costs that come up during the course of the year. I know you have some things for like employee recognition or some sort of, you know, if you want to order a plaque or you want to
Right.
do things of that nature, something a little bit more than a black frame from Walmart. You know, I, I think that should be covered.
Agreed.
I don't know where you want to put it.
So, we'll do an analysis of, we've been generally absorbing those things within either the Town Administrator's budget or the Select Board's budget. I'll, I'll do an analysis to determine whether we project, based on the performance this year, that we can continue to absorb it or not. I, I would note with regard to the issue of the reimbursement, we may need to make an adjustment in this year's budget to account for expenses that were, or liabilities that may have been incurred earlier this fiscal year while there was some ongoing activity involved. So, we'll have to look at that.
Any other questions? Fincom? You all set, Mike?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay. So, that brings us to conclusion on the budget hearings. Next, we have the review of the FY twenty twenty revenue and expense plan. Liz and Michael and myself will, will go through this with you.
Is it in the Dropbox, which one?
It's under FY twenty budget, right?
Liz, did we get it under Dropbox? Did we get it in Sheafah? So, what you're going to see is we, so on, and this year's financial planning team, we went into the budget, we went into the expense planning. We, we went at it a little differently and we talked about this in past meetings, we presented it in past meetings. So, what we're going to do tonight is we're going to present it to you in the old format and how things would have flushed out for schools and municipal government under the old format. And then we're going to talk about it and show it under the new format. And then we're going to present some, some challenges that we're facing and to try to get some feedback and have a discussion about how we want to go forward. That's sort of how we're going to present it tonight.
Sit up at the table. Members of school, please be more comfortable at the table. Ken, you don't have to comment.
So, what you're going to see first is under the old format. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Governo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, for the board members, we just put these documents that are going to be gone through in the folder for tonight's meeting, four, one, twenty nineteen. There are three of them. The one we're starting with is entitled FY twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two, Old Format FY twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two, Old Format Revenue. And I, as the chair indicated, you know, we've gone through some modifications to the Revenue and Expense Plan and Procedure. And when we went through them, we were still going through the renewal process for health insurance. We got some good information, some good news relative to health insurance, which we've talked about here and talked about at Financial Planning Team. But it also caused us to have to go through, account for that and also make an adjustment to where we were carrying costs associated with the PFA and the contingency that we carry for change-of-life events or open enrollment impacts in the, in the health insurance. When we went through to do that, we had some, there was some impacts that I think required us to look further at it. And we spent much of today doing that in, over the course of two financial planning team meetings and a time in between. And what you'll see here kind of is intended to promote that discussion.
We spent about eight hours on it today.
Absolutely. And, and one thing that I, I think probably we should note too is in the discussions, and I think, I think we should maybe discuss this before we go through, we talked a lot about the concerns over the health insurance and the, and the feedback from the board relative to how to manage the, the good news that we received relative to the health insurance. And the Finance Director, myself, the Human Resource Director and the Benefits Coordinator did quite a bit of work as we were going through the reconciliation, what the, what that actually meant, what that news would, would mean. Where we ended up, and you're going to see it reflected in the documents here, is we had a seven and a half percent increase that we were carrying in the budget. The, the information we received from the renewal was a two point six percent increase from our, for PFA and our active employees. What's in here is a recommended four and a half percent increase in that budget. And I ask the board members to keep in mind, we tried to respond to the concern that came up, carry the appropriate number in the, in the health insurance there to account for any variance, but also knowing that we carry a contingency annually anyway in there, we were comfortable with that number and that's what shows up in the plan here for, for this year. I think that's kind of the introduction I wanted to offer and I'll ask the Finance Director to go through the spreadsheet.
Good evening. So, as Chairman Frisco and the Town Administrator mentioned, we did spend the majority of today going through multiple iterations of the revenue plan. And this is just bringing us back to the old revenue plan, old, old format, which is what we're used to seeing in previous fiscal years. And then we will roll forward to the new format of the revenue plan, which you last saw on three, one. I will just note that one of the differences between the three, one revenue plan and this revenue plan that you're seeing this evening is new growth was updated to reflect the tax recap certified number of new growth, which then carries forward into the adjusted levy limit for FY twenty. And our number for new growth for FY twenty is eight hundred and And our number for new growth for FY 20 is 875,000, and Mr. Messeri asked at 3-1 what the breakout was for the Polte property, and 685,000 of that 875 is attributed to the Polte property. Moving down, there's been no changes under state aid at this point. You'll note that the trash fee for FY 20 is listed at 960,000. You'll remember that last year, 960,000 was put into the revenue plan split between the school and municipal side, and the difference between the 1.1 million and the 960,000 was a direct offset to the sanitation operating budget, which is approximately $173,000. Moving down to the next change, the next change is to the debt service stabilization. We had been carrying for the longest time a $300,000 transfer, now we have increased that to 1.2 million. Moving down to the expenditure page and fixed costs, the only change to the expenditures and fixed costs would be for health insurance, and that is, we had been carrying all along 7.5% increase, as the town administrator mentioned. We have now reduced the seven and a half percent increase for the health insurance budget over FY 19 to 4.5%. This represents the 2.6% increase to the PFA and active employee plans, not to the retiree plans, as the retirees renew on January 1st, and we don't have that number yet, so we have to carry a blended rate for, for that figure. So, under the old format, the health insurance budget figure, as well as other expenditure costs, whether it's life insurance or Medicare, workers' comp, those are not broken out between the municipal side and the school side, and on the new revenue format, they are, but for this purpose, they're all lumped together at a four and a half percent increase. Coming down to the budget distribution, the split that we're all familiar with for the municipal side is 34%, and for the school side is 66%. And you can see those figures here. You'll see them again on the next revenue plan format.
So, this is the old format, and this is how it would have flushed out if we stuck with the old format. But I also wanna remind everyone that under the old format, there was a disproportionate amount of health insurance that was, that ended up on the municipal side of the ledger, which skewed the numbers, and that's one of the other reasons why, in addition to taking out the trash fee and a few other things, why we created a new, a new format, and that's what we're gonna go through next. But we wanted you to see that number, 16.3 for the town, or 16.4 for the town, and 31.8 for the schools, so when we go over to the new format, you could see, 'cause again, our goal going into this was, try not to hold anyone harmed in the process. That's the ultimate goal here, and that's what we really just do wanna try to achieve. Now, I don't think that's the right one.
Which one would you like to look at?
Well, I thought we were gonna go through it with the 66 and the 34, under the new format. So, we're gonna show them three versions. Show them the old version, and show them the new one with the same percentage split of 66 and 34. And I think it's important for you to see that comparison.
Okay. So, no changes to the tax portion of this new revenue plan format, no changes to state aid. Moving down to local receipts, you'll note that the trash fee has been removed from the local receipts figure. Moving down to other financing sources, you'll note that the debt service stabilization is at 1.2 million, and you'll note that several of these transfers are listed below as they've been taken out. Moving to the fixed cost portion of the revenue plan, you will see that we now have no roll-up for employee benefits under the fixed cost section, which is on the old revenue plan format, and it's broken out below in, in detail allocating to the school and municipal sides. One addition to this revenue plan that is different from what you reviewed on March 1st is, as we mentioned, we had to break out the PFA and health insurance contingency that was part of the municipal's allocation for health insurance, and now we have broken out that to be shared by both the municipal side and the school side, and that's why it's above the line in fixed costs. Down here, these numbers will be explained below for the school health insurance and municipal health insurance figure, but as the previous plan in the old format, we are carrying the health insurance budget figures for both the school and municipal, as well as the PFA and health insurance contingency at 4.5% over the seven and a half percent that we had been carrying.
So, before you scroll up, I think this would be a good time to, you know, Mr. O'Leary was one of the individuals that brought up, his desire would be to see us maintain the seven and a half percent. We said we'd go back to the financial planning team meeting, we did have that discussion, and I think everyone walked out of there feeling comfortable that 4.5 was the correct. And Mike, I don't know if you wanna add some more to that, talk about, we talked about the employee side of the equation and so on, and I'd love to give Mr. O'Leary the opportunity to share what he thinks of it before we go on, because if the majority of the board feels differently, then we need to make that, we need to know now before we even scroll down any further, 'cause that makes a big change.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I think, you know, we took to heart the board's concern, you know, that we don't wanna take the entirety of the five, basically 4.9% savings and plow it into the operating budget, we wanna try to account for it. We talked a lot about the idea of creating a fund into which we could put the town's savings or the leftover money appropriated but not spent, associated with the performance of the PFA, and I think that the challenge that we saw was that we set up the PFA jointly with our employees, and to separate the town's strategy from the town's, from the employee's strategy could be, certainly could be problematic, and it isn't necessarily in the spirit of setting up the PFA and, and the way we're trying to operate it. When we looked at our options, really, if we wanted to try to materialize additional savings or reserve the funding for future use, an option for us to do that would be to jointly inflate the rates in health insurance so that the town and the employee are contributing at the same percentage, 70-30 for the most part, towards creating a surplus, which we are already creating a surplus, but we would be creating a further surplus under the structure of the PFA. And I think, based on where we were at in the renewal process, I think, I know I was hesitant to go back and, and suggest that type of a change, given the increases we've seen over the past couple of years. However, I, I am comfortable with us reserving that money at the four and a half percent level so that we have it there to manage going into fiscal year 2021, and that might be an opportunity for us to look and also say, well, do we wanna jointly increase the rates together at a rate that's higher than what we might be getting for the renewal? So, I think it's a vehicle for us to achieve this, but I think it also allows us to do it in concert with our employees under the PFA. Did that explanation come up?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that's what we discussed in the financial planning team. We, we have two members of the school committee here that participated in the discussions, I think, so how we felt coming out of it.
Mr. Larry, how you feel? If you're admittedly against this strategy, but you did ask for an opinion of financial planning team, and that is it.
So, you budgeted 4.5 when it's 2.6, and at the end of the fiscal year, any residual savings in the proposed budget? Would go what? General, general fund?
So, it would become surplus, but as we've done...
The active plan is 2.6. Only the active plan is 2.6. This health insurance budget figure is for actives and retirees.
So, if the retiree plan came in in October or September, we normally get the renewal, and it was at, also at 2.6%, then it would, they would be the same rate, obviously, and we would have 1, 1.9% surplus for the town on the, on the overall budget, plus a contingency that we carry for any events that come up. And what I was going to say to answer your question is, so we don't, if we just let that money close out into the budget, it would become free cash, basically, for us to move around in October at town meeting. But a strategy that we have employed with the health insurance budget in previous years is to transfer that money to, to the benefit of the operating budget, for example, the prepay OPEB, I believe we did a couple of years ago, Liz. So, we have an opportunity at June town meeting, as the year's coming to a close, to catch that savings before we get to the rollover into the next fiscal year and having it end up being free cash. So, the Finance Director, myself, the Financial Planning Team, the Select Board, we identify that we have that, and we wanna use it as a strategy to buffer that health insurance cost. We have that opportunity at June town meeting to take that active, that action, I'll call it preemptively. The bit of complicating factor with that is there is a lag on the PFA, it's about three months, I think, we get into October, and we actually close it out, so there is a little bit of risk with that, but I think that RSI has proved itself capable of projecting the rates pretty accurately, and their, their projections generally have come, come true during the course of the year. Mr. Minnie Belli?
So, I thought when we talked about this, when, when Mr. O'Leary mentioned the, I guess what we would call the buffer, when we talked about adding an additional amount for a rate, that that, we were talking about putting that into maybe some sort of a stabilization fund to buffer increases that were unpredictable or, you know, to buffer the insurance costs down the line. So, how can we accomplish that? Because I, I don't know that we were talking about putting it into general fund just for, that doesn't make sense to me, given that we were doing a 70-30 and it was for a very specific purpose. So, if you have a surplus based on a rate not increasing the way that it was expected to increase, how are we gonna take that and then, just like the trash fee is for one purpose and should never have been rolled out and divvied up, it should have always been in its own spot, how are we gonna take that and capture it into a fund that's just to offset, you know, a wildly varying rate? 'Cause I, I think we've only had this for one, two years now, so that was the concern Mr. O'Leary had mentioned that we've all voiced.
Do you want me to answer you? Please. So, I'll, I'll share my response. So, we, we have a draft of the warrant, where we've actually put that stabilization fund in the draft warrant for the board to consider, but I don't, I'm not recommending it, and the reason I'm not recommending it is because we have the ability to manage the rates jointly with the employees through the PFA to address that moving forward. What I just described was a vehicle for us to handle this particular upcoming year in light of where the rates are at right now and our desire not to go back to the employees and say, we wanna increase the rate. So, what I just described was a transition. When we go through, so in this scenario, if we were to do that, when we were looking at the fiscal year 2021 projections and say it came back at, you know, 2.6% again, and we had it in the budget at seven and a half percent again, we would have an opportunity to, to talk collectively, approach the IAC and say, we wanna set the rates at 4.6% instead of the town just appropriating it at 4.6%, so that we are jointly accruing additional shared surplus, 70-30, within the, the PFA itself that we've established. So, I, I think, I think I'm in agreement with the principle. I, I think the vehicle for it is in the health insurance rates rather than setting the separate fund. But I'm trying to give us a vehicle to do it without having to set the fund for the first year. Is that, is that clear? Whether it's agreed to or not is a different story, but is it clear?
It's clear.
Okay.
Not necessarily agreed to.
Okay. Ken, you can follow up with Andy.
No, that, when you said agreed to, agreed to by us or agreed to by IAC?
No, we agree that we understand it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm only asking, does that, did the explanation make sense?
I understand the, the thought process.
Andy.
Michael.
Sorry. Andy, Bob, and then Steve.
Ms. Work, there's about roughly $5.5 million budgeted for health insurance for the next fiscal year. Does that include retirees as well?
The total for health insurance is $6,379. You need to take this three mil, this 3,928 and this 1.5 million and the 948 above, so all three, all three of those.
So, what percentage of the, of that would be retirees, which is, if you had to guess?
I, I don't know off of...
'Cause I'm worried we don't have their rate increase, we won't have that till like October, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Like, do you know, do we know roughly what percentage of our health insurance budget is retirees versus actives?
Not, not offhand.
Okay.
No, but I, you know...
Fifty-fifty split. That's right, in a premium, they, they pay a 50% share, we pay a 50% share.
Okay. So, I'm concerned if we get whacked in the fall, we could be a little light here.
They, they, they do pay the greater, a greater share than most of our active employees. A small component of our, of our active employees, I think it's five at this point, five subscribers, are on a, a more expensive plan that has a 50-50 split as well.
Okay.
A PPL plan, but the rest are on HMO.
We can't lose sight that the PFA is working exactly the way we hoped it would. It's giving us that buffer, and I know the goal was that Mr. O'Leary brought up, and I, I'm not saying it doesn't warrant a discussion, but I think, at least the way the town administrator has explained it, the way we discussed it in Financial Planning Team, I think the process we're using here, I think it gets us there, maybe not at the same pace you were hoping to get there, but I think we have a really good backup plan for when the bad rates show up. We're projected to have well over a million dollars when this is all flushed out at the end of this process in PFA. Yes?
So, just, so I agree totally with, with what's being suggested, I'm just, I'm struggling with the implementation and, and how we, how we do it without contradicting the spirit of, of the PFA.
Yeah, I, I don't see any contradiction at all. In other words, you know, we're one part of the equation, we're one side of the table, we have 70% share, and if we decide to allocate more funds for today and tomorrow to cover the costs of our 70%, whatever the rate increase comes at, you know, that's our side of the table. You know, the, the employees don't have necessarily the same vehicle to reserve additional funds unless you increase, you know, the rates artificially to, to cover that. I'm not overly concerned about the, the employees from that standpoint, you know, if they wanna join in, that's fine, but I think we have a responsibility to, first of all, you know, applaud the effort that's been put forth here, and the PFA is working, no doubt about it, it's terrific, you know, but it's still in its infancy stages, it's in its second year, and to me, you know, one bad year wipes it out pretty, pretty darn quickly, a good bulk of whatever reserves we have in place. So, until it, it seasons a little bit more, I'm not comfortable when we have an opportunity based upon what we've already budgeted to, to buffer that and have some additional monies and reserves, and again, going forward, two years down the road, we may be more comfortable in budgeting 5.5% on an average as opposed to 7.5%, you know, then when you get an 11% increase, you can absorb it without worrying about where's it coming from and what do you have to cut. And, you know, if you have some sort of a, a separate account for rate stabilization in addition, in addition to what's in the PFA, you know, that's fine, but until it's more seasoned, you know, we have an opportunity here, you know, just because we had a good year... because we had a good year and it's performed well, to cushion a blow that will come. As our advisors advise us, you know, you'll have those years. And what's going to happen is, you know, we're going to be faced with trying to balance the budget. My concern is putting these one-time monies and savings, plowing it into the operating budget, not be able to sustain the level of services and level of employees that we currently enjoy. And, you know, we're talking about some new positions here, we're talking about, you know, sharing the wealth a little bit, but by the same token, we could get caught short pretty quickly. And what do you do? You know, so, you know, to me, great opportunity to set something up to stabilize the rates from the town's expenditure side until it proves itself a little bit more through season. So I understand what you, I did understand it.
Mr. Missary?
Bob?
The, it would seem to me that the, if the employees agreed with whatever we did and the money was pooled and then applied to a rate increase or balancing the number, they get that benefit.
Well, no, that would change the ratio then. I think that's what the town administrator was concerned about.
No, it wouldn't change the ratio.
If you're going to take the savings and plow it into it.
Yes, but then it's, what the town gets, puts up is still seventy percent and what the employees put up is still thirty percent of the balance.
Right.
And they're all, and the money that's been saved is the same ratio. Whether or not they agree to it is another question.
Right.
You know, or you, you run it town separate, employees separate and.
And we save on our side, you know.
We save and but the.
Save money on our side for rate day.
But the rate, if the rate is seven percent, then the town employees are going to pay the seven percent even though the town, after they put the money in, may only have to budget two percent. But I had one other, we've been talking about these two budgets, which have been recently, revenue plans have recently been updated, Michael. Are they in the, anywhere? I can't find them.
So, so these two versions were created today.
Yeah.
And this evening were put into the meeting folder for tonight's meeting for discussion. And wherever we land at the end of the discussion, we'll put that in the fiscal year 2020 budget.
Okay, so they're in the meeting schedule.
They're in the meeting.
So they must have got put in late in the afternoon.
Very late, like a half hour ago.
Yeah, twenty minutes ago.
We started, we started working at eight, eight fifty this morning and we finished a few minutes to get home so I could change.
No, it's okay. I'm just wondering where they were, that's all.
You know, it's a very fluid situation. Yes?
I will apologize for asking probably a stupid question.
Never.
You guys have been, been struggling with this for a long time and this is the first I'm really hearing of it, but wouldn't approach, we're, we're trying to, two things. With the, the amount we're budgeting for insurance, we're trying to determine what the cost to the, forgetting about whether we're over budgeting or not, we're trying to determine what the cost is to the town and what the cost is to the employees so we can set a sharing rate for the employees, so they're paying a percentage of the quote If you set the budget at your expected rate, if that's two point nine percent or whatever it is, if that's the expected, if you set the budget at that amount, and so the amount the employees are paying for their coverage of insurance is, is reflective of what we expect the insurance carrier is going to charge us. And then separately, we budget an amount up to four and a half or seven and a half or whatever you guys agree to, difference between that two point whatever and, and that other number, and put that into our bucket in the PFA or stabilization or whatever the vehicle would be, wouldn't that accomplish what you're trying to do? I, I'm sure I'm oversimplifying it and I apologize for that.
No, no, I don't. Through you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't believe that you are. I, I think, you know, you, you hit it right on the head. And I think one of the things that those of us who were involved in the implementation of the IAC, of the PFA with the insurance advisory committee, which represents our employees, we really talked about a, a program of, you know, working together jointly with our employees to address that. And I, and I think, I think doing that, the, 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 the most effective way, and I think really the intent of the PFA is for that increase to be uniformly applied to the employee and to the town. Now, I'd just excuse myself for a moment to speak with the finance director, but I, I do think, I don't recommend doing that at this point for fiscal year 2020, but what we could do is take whatever the, the, the difference is that we're talking about here and rather than establish a separate fund, put it into the existing PFA fund that we have. So it gives us a, a, a place to put our additional accrued money purposely to be set aside for a purpose totally relevant, which is the PFA. It's going to increase our available amount to be higher than what the employees are when you do the rate comparison, but it's putting the money aside for the purpose that we're assigning it for. And in a future year, I would just increase the rates uniformly so that the employees are also putting that money aside in a withholding account that's managed out of the treasurer's office, year in, year out.
So I'd like to suggest we do this. Now we had the discussion, I think we have an idea of how everyone feels, is allow Liz to continue on this spreadsheet and let's finish it up so you can see when we get to the end, when we want to, what the school's request is, what the town, because we haven't, obviously, we just finished our budget hearings tonight and we're far away from finishing, you know, Michael's recommendations, or not far, but hopefully quickly after tonight. But I want you to see how this all flushes out, so you can see what the impact would be if we go ahead and take out of this revenue plan the additional three percent, what we're talking about in impacts, because the schools have already submitted their leveled services budget, their modified level services budget and their NRPS 2021 budget. What, what is the dollar amount we're talking about? Is it a hundred and seventy thousand bucks, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Hundred and seventy-three, I believe.
Between the two point six and the seven point five. What is the, what's the dollar amount?
I can, I can tell you that, that's not something that we, you know, have, but it's about fifty, you know, yeah, fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand per what?
Per point.
Per one percent. But I remind everybody, we can't just budget two point six percent.
Right, because you have the retirees.
Unless we want to be back, back here.
That's an aside from, I mean, we, we get two separate issues here. You know, you get two separate types of policies, coverages, and yeah, it all goes into one bucket. So, but to me, I don't, you know, they're only conjoined when you put it in the insurance budget, not as you're building it, you know.
That's not how we've ever done the health insurance.
No, but you, you've got one, the bigger side just came in at two point six percent and we budgeted seven point five, you know, and the retirees is whatever it was budgeted.
Typically, it's a much larger number and it's a blended formula that, that we use annually.
But so you, you're talking, you know, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Sure. But let's flush it out, let's run through this so we can see it all come together and then we can come back. I think you need to see the impacts, though. You can see that, I want you to, what I wanted to do tonight was show you the challenges we're having.
No, I, I understand, okay, I, I understand this challenge isn't, there will be challenges and there's.
I know.
Challenges every year.
It's no different.
But we're talking about, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we weren't going to allocate necessarily. We allocated it for, you know, insurance coverages and we got a break because of the new program we're into, which is again, it's still in its infancy stages and, you know, my concern is just plowing it back into the operating budget, knowing full well that both sides are short.
Okay. Do you want to say something? If you are, you need to go to a mic. If you want to.
Do you want to?
No, no, you need, you need to go to a mic, I'm sorry. The folks at home, if you maybe come sit over here or take that podium would be probably best. Just state your name, Scott, so the folks at home can hear. Sorry.
I got a rise out of them.
Oh, yes. Scott Buckley, Five Alden Street. So just addressing first on the four point five versus seven point five percent, there were a number of issues discussed at the finance planning team and just to put them all out there so, so everyone's on the same page. So a couple of other comments, I mean, the, the PFA seems to be working. The reality is last year, the employees were asked to pay a higher percentage and in truth, there was a savings from that. And theoretically, if the, if the increase had been higher than expected this year, that money could have been used to pay it down and it's not being. So we're telling the people that paid last year, you're not going to get anything back from that, but hopefully it can not be as big of an increase.
How would they, I don't, I don't understand how they, I don't understand how they're paying more than they should be, their fair share. It's, it's equal, equally shared. It wasn't an inflated price.
Correct, but the, the actual cost of the insurance, at the end of the day, when you look back, my understanding of the PFA is there's money left over because they set a rate and then, and it was less, correct?
No.
Where, where did the savings come from? There's, how much in the savings from the PFA right now?
So the, the town's share was about four hundred and three thousand, four hundred and three thousand dollars out of about six hundred thousand dollars. And that was money that was raised through our health insurance rates. Total was six hundred thousand between the town and the employees. The claim, that was basically what was left over from an accrual of, I want to say one point two million dollars. I'm, I'm using a round number, that's, but that's what we used in the first year. Our claims didn't gobble up that whole one point two million dollars, they were less than that, so that's what was left.
Correct. And, and so, so the employees paid health insurance rates, correct? That was a piece of that?
Yeah, that was.
It's all one.
The six hundred is all one, right.
Correct. That, that was a piece of.
Health insurance premium that employees pay, whether it's this year or last year or next year, includes the discount, you buy a cheaper plan in order to participate in the PFA. So they're not paying.
Sorry.
The employees, as well as the town, pay a health insurance premium to a health insurance carrier. We are buying a higher deductible health insurance plan at a cheaper rate in order to participate in the PFA. So the employees and the, the town are not paying more for something to get savings from, from the PFA. They, it's a combined rate that is paid with, within the premium. So we're not paying more money for a premium just to achieve savings.
Correct. There, there are real dollars that are left over that theoretically could have been used and what we were.
No, no, they couldn't be used. That's not the way the PFA.
Going forward, they could be used for premium offsets this year.
Yes, go forward.
That's what I'm saying. For premium offsets this year, they could have been used.
No, it's for, it's for coverages, it's for coverage to continue to participate with a higher deductible plan and cover the costs. The town is covering a greater portion of the costs upfront.
Seventy percent.
Correct, seventy percent.
No, 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 but I'm talking about the claims.
Correct.
They're paying for the claims out of those, those funds. So again, we've put money upfront to buy the plan with a higher deductible in order to lower our premium costs and the employees' premium costs. And it's those savings that we're using to pay for the occurrences under the plan and under the deductibles and covering the, the employees' deductibles we're paying for with those savings. So there's no money left on the table to share with the employees back at this point. Now, there's savings there to move forward with so that if the occurrences and the incidents are greater this coming year, we've got a buffer because we've been able to have a surplus here.
Correct, because there was a surplus from, from the last year. Now you're suggesting increasing it to try to get an even larger surplus, but if it ran the same way, there could be money.
This has nothing to do with the, with the employees' portion of the premium.
Right.
This has nothing to do.
What, what Mr. O'Leary is proposing is that.
It has nothing to do with the, with the employees' portion of the premiums. So it's not as though they're overpaying anything.
No, I, I.
We're looking to make more of a commitment on the town side to buffer our, our exposure.
And all, all I was saying is that in the PFA, it was working, there's money that was real savings from the way it worked last year. It was, it was budgeted correctly, there was a surplus, it worked, correct? And, and there was money that could be used if we needed to, you know, for going forward. And so I don't know why, when there are real needs, when we look at the budget here, there are real needs today to then say, let's just arbitrarily put another three percent away. If the PFA is working and the claims, you know, i- if the overall cost was less than expected beforehand, I don't know why would we increase, you know, another three percent more than we think we need.
Three to five years from now, we probably won't be, wouldn't be having this discussion because we'd have an experience rate which would tell us what we're looking at. We're in our second year of this.
I, I understand.
You know, and our own advisors have said, yeah, you're going to have a bad year. You're going to be looking at, you know, eleven, fifteen percent, who knows, depending upon what the marketplace is and what your experience levels are. So.
It would be completely irresponsible for us to take those funds that you're calling a surplus that we need for the future. This is consistently going up. Rate increases are happening whether we like it or not. It's never going to be zero percent increase. Two point five is an anomaly. However, it's, it's always going to go up, so it would be irresponsible for us to take that surplus for that dedicated purpose and throw it into something else in the budget that it isn't, wasn't intended to be utilized for. And we're not, the, it's not, it's not a surplus in the, the way that you're suggesting it is. The town's portion.
It's a recurring, it's a recurring surplus.
Right. It's, it's not and, and we know that this is only going to, the rate's only going up. It's not going, going to go down, so we need to anticipate that and forecast that and be ready for that.
For the seventy seven, they're talking about the seventy percent piece.
Correct, but.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, just an example, my personal business, just got a thirteen and a half percent rate increase. So what if the town gets that next year?
Ten percent, twelve percent.
I look at this, I look at this money as more like a stabilization fund in, in essence to cover a rainy day. I think it'd be responsible for us to be using it towards a general budget.
Oh, I, I agree with that on the PFA, but I don't know about the additional increase because part of it also is, one of the main things that the PFA did was it changed the way claims are paid. And so it wasn't only that we, it was a good year for the economy, it was that some of the big claims didn't hit the health insurance, so the health insurance did not go up.
No, no, we're only self-insuring a certain layer of, of experience. We're not insuring the big catastrophic claims, we still have insurance for that.
Correct.
We're basically insuring that little, between the two poles, between what the employees are paying for versus what we're buying, we're insuring that level. So we're only insuring this.
But some of the claims, a lot of the claims that used to hit the health insurance plan haven't taken out and aren't hitting the health insurance plan anymore. So hopefully that will stabilize the health insurance rates in the future.
No.
No.
It, it just doesn't work that way.
No, it doesn't work that way.
No.
Yes?
The, what the difference is, is the employees only see a three hundred, nine hundred dollar deductible plan. The town purchased a, a two thousand dollar deductible plan. So we're paying the difference between those. We're, we're still paying, the health insurance still pays for, for claims. The only difference is between the three hundred, nine hundred dollar deductible to the two thousand dollar deductible.
Okay. So if we could flush through this, I want to, we can come back and visit, we don't, I just want to run through the whole thing to get the whole big picture. So this is using the sixty-six and thirty-four percent like we did under the old format, just to show you how the numbers would flush out and where the variances would be in the budget requests, yes.
Just a quick question, I have a question about the revenue side, is that, should I say that for later or?
You can ask the question.
Just a quick question, on the, the interest income, that, investment income, I'm assuming that's mainly from the Pulte proceeds?
Yes.
My concern is, I just don't think that should be used for recurring costs because at some point when we invest that money, that's going to be gone, we're going to create a budget shortfall and I would, we have a real road problem in this town. I would propose that the interest income from that Pulte money be allocated for projects that otherwise we could use the Pulte principle for, such as the roads. I think we're creating a, we're just kicking the can down the road accounting this way because, let's say we invested that money tomorrow on sewage, we're not going to have that revenue, but yet we're still going to have the recurring costs, so we're kind of basing our recurring costs on part of a revenue projection that's at some point going to be gone. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but I think we have a real road problem in this town. But yet, we're still gonna have the recurring costs, so we're kinda basing our recurring costs on part of a revenue projection that's, at some point, gonna be gone. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but I think we have a real road problem in this town.
It's a very similar argument that we're talking about on the other issue.
Right.
Where, you know, not using recurring funding, you know, for general operating expenses. Right.
Mrs. Mina Pelly.
I know. I, I had a similar question for you, back to that eight seventy-five, the eight seventy-five thousand. When you said six hundred and eighty-two thousand was based on Pulte?
Six eighty-five is-
It is six eighty-five. And doesn't that, um, I mean, our new growth is pretty consistently in that range, but do you have a concern where so much of it was based upon just that one project? Because that's a pretty, pretty significant figure.
We, there's a, there's a several-year build-out plan for, um, Pulte, so we're only in year two. FY twenty would be year two for it. So we still, and then once that new growth, um, is no longer new growth, it would be part of our, our tax levy.
Regular levy, okay.
Okay.
Backing up to the investment income, um, currently, we have fifteen million invested, um, in a twenty-four month CD. Um, and that's what this figure represents, that the, those funds were, um, put in the CD last May. Um, and so we still have another year of-
And I know why you have it in the budget where you do. I just think as a board, we should have a discussion on whether we should be using things like that that are gonna be gone at some point to pay for recurring costs. I, I think that's setting ourselves up for a shortfall down the road, but I could be in the minority here. I'd be curious what my board members feel on that issue. Mr. Masari.
I was, when I asked to take the Pulte money out, which is not out here, the line item is in here,
I, I-
was to just show that Pulte had some value, both in new growth and taxes.
Yes.
And that we could look at it from the point of view of covering the costs associated with it and finding out what benefit it had. And, uh-
That, that is why I pointed out the six hundred and eighty-five of the eight seventy-five is, of new growth is-
Okay, but you never, what I would have done is put the six seventy-five on that line item and-
I understand that, but-
Subtracted it from the other. So new growth is new growth except for Pulte.
The financial planning team has not seen, seen that.
What?
The financial planning team has not seen that iteration of the revenue plan yet.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
I'm not trying to take any money away, I'm just trying to get a sense of what that development is doing.
That, that's why I verbally spoke to it this evening.
So when we-
All right, thank you.
Just, just to refresh memory, every building would, would generate, based on the budgets that we discussed prior to the building, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year annually in revenue, each building. That's sort of what we ballparked. Now, will it come to fruition or not? I, we're gonna see. I mean, I think we're seeing that, but- That's all. Just to give you a little reference. Please continue.
Any further questions on revenue?
Question or comment? I mean, you know, I've, I've been full agreement with Andy over here as far as, you know, one-time revenue source. And again, even if it's gonna be recurring for three to five years, three to five years, you've gotta be cognizant of that, that we don't plow it into the general operating budget. You use it for one-time things or specific, you know, whether it be infrastructure or something like that, that you could-
Yeah.
You know, so that we're not covering salaries, benefits, and everything else with money that isn't going to be there three to five years from now.
I think the capital money, I'm in agreement too. I think the capital money, if you have an interest opportunity there, we can help support this. If we have a real serious problem with the roads-
We do.
I think it's worthy of a discussion. But let's flush through this, and then we can make those decisions, okay? So continue, please.
Moving down to-
So again, this is at sixty-six and thirty-four, under the new format.
Moving down to the allocations, as Chairman Prisco just mentioned, thirty-four percent of the amount available above, which is this fifty-six million seven, is broken out here. And then there's municipal expenditure allocations allocated here. And direct offsets.
Michael? I'm sorry, but I think that the version you may have emailed me doesn't-
Different.
It, it's different than this one, so I'm gonna ask the members if they could-
Okay.
Turn their attention to the screen.
Don't, don't look at what's in front of us.
Yeah, 'cause it's not, it's not the same.
I'll look at it.
I tried to find it anyway, so I'm watching the screen.
It's in the packet instead of in the budget. It's in the packet, tonight's packet.
Oh.
But it's not what being presented tonight.
We've had several, it, um, probably about fifteen iterations today, so-
Even we got, even we got lost.
I'm, I'm gonna bring this up again. When a board is discussing things, we're facing the audience. And we get these screens behind us and at angles, and the two-angle ones you can barely read. And I can't see why a couple of minutes can't be taken to put the, the stuff we're gonna talk about in the file.
Well, we did, Bob, but we mistake, we made a mistake and put the wrong one in. And that happens occasionally. So if you want-
But I'm seeing a presentation tonight.
Bob, Bob.
I'm seeing a presentation tonight that's not in the folder.
And my answer to you is, it was in the folder, but we put the wrong one in. We made a mistake. We put the wrong file name in the folder. We did what you asked us to do, but we put the wrong one in. So we'll take five-minute break. We'll allow the town administrator to put this one up that you see on the screen, and we'll come back in five minutes. Free committee, please?
Did you make a change to the-
I did.
All right.
Yes.
Is it, the file's been uploaded into tonight's meeting packet, I assume?
It has been.
And can you read what the file name is, so everyone's clear on what it is?
If you're in, if you look in the meeting folder, four-one-twenty-nineteen for tonight's meeting, there's a document entitled New Revenue Plan Four-One-Nineteen Final with sixty-six percent. And that's a document that the finance director is going through.
Okay. So now we're down to, when you allocate, when we, we took the trash out, we've now reallocated the health insurances where they belong by municipality and schools. We made some of the other adjustments, especially with the PFA, moved it above the line. This is how it all flushes out, using the same percentages as we have the past years. So now, continue, please.
Thank you. Um, thanks, thanks. So, a- as Chairman Prisco just mentioned, we have-
Yes.
I just wanna make sure, does everybody have the document in front of them?
It's called the Revenue Plan Four-One-
New Revenue Plan Four-One-Nineteen Final with sixty-six percent. Everybody has it?
I think so.
Mr. Masari, do you have it?
Did you just put it in Dropbox?
I put it in a few minutes ago, yes. Share file, it's in share file. Or share file, either of the two.
Okay, all right.
So everyone's looking, under the old format, the allocation would have been, um, just the number, Liz, was eighteen?
We, we'll see that in a moment.
We'll see that in a moment.
We'll refresh that somewhere.
All right.
Yeah. That's what I'd have to do. Yeah.
It does. So that's the regular second.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So as Chairman Prisco was mentioning, um, we, under this new format, have broken out municipal, um, expenses that can be attributed directly to, um, the municipal side, and you can see those broken out below here. We then have some direct, uh, revenue offsets which are broken out here in this section.
That's line four, one forty-four, if you're looking at your spreadsheet on your iPad.
Totalling, totaling two million dollars. Giving us a total available to the municipal side at thirty-four percent of the above revenue that is available of seventeen million eighty-five thousand. The municipal's modified level services budget request dollar amount is seventeen million four fifty, leaving a variance of three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Moving down to the school's allocation at sixty-six percent of the above available revenue. Breaking out the schools' allocated expenses that can be attributed to the school, leaving a total available to the school of thirty-one million one twenty-nine. The school's modified level services budget request is thirty-two million eighty-three thousand, leaving a variance of nine hundred and fifty-three thousand. Round numbers.
So again, that's just using the same percentage from the old format to the new format. And you remember, under the old format, if we could remind them, the allocation would have been for the town, do you remember that that number was? Can we flashback to that?
It's right here.
Oh, it's right here. There it is. Sixteen, if you look at line item two oh three in your spreadsheet, Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. My question, I was just wondering what the, uh, school modified level services means.
It's the level service with, um- It's the leveled service, um, but I believe there's two positions, um, that are in there that are above and beyond the level services. Um, the level services would include a new kindergarten teacher and a care professional for the kindergarten, and then- And we're looking for a reading specialist and an elementary teaching learning coordinator, if I'm looking at the correct one.
I'm okay with whatever, whatever the modified-
I'm just curious as to what it was.
Yeah, just whatever the modified level services are.
It's basically level, level services.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we do have to add in a kindergarten teacher due to an influx of students.
Okay, and that's what I was looking for an answer to. Thank you.
So, from the school side, school's level services is thirty-one eight eighty-nine, three forty-nine, and their modified level services is thirty-two zero eight three one thirty, twenty. So what's being presented up here is the level services number, not the modified level services number. Correct, Liz?
Yeah. The preliminary modified- The school department's preliminary modified level services budget figure for FY twenty is thirty-two million eighty-three, which is listed right here.
There you go, that's the number, sorry. Got it. Right. I couldn't see it.
I didn't watch it.
Thank you. You got it. I saw the wrong number.
These two numbers listed here, the sixteen million four and the thirty-one million eight, are the revenue amounts that were available under the old revenue plan at thirty-four sixty-six percent split between municipal and school. They're only listed here for reference purposes so that you don't have to toggle back and forth between the old revenue plan format that was presented earlier to the new revenue plan format.
The bo, the bottom line is the, uh, there are budget shotfalls of, on the town side of three sixty-four, three hundred and sixty-four thousand plus, and on the school side of nine hundred and fifty-three thousand plus, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So where this leaves us, now how we've restructured the revenue plan, where we put the right expenses into the right budget, we moved the trash out, and we put that in the right area, this is how it, it flowed out, which we, we know isn't, we can't leave the schools with almost a million-dollar impact. So that's why the discussion about the health insurance is very important, because we need to know, we're starting with the right number with the health insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Using four point five percent is what we put into this formula. So before, during financial planning team, we never got to the point of, what, what do we do next? What's the, what's the next thing we can do to help, you know, reduce this level of pain? So obviously, we have to change the percentage. Yes?
So, the health insurance number for the schools is 3.9 mil.
Right.
Based on what percentage increase?
4.5.
4.5, okay, thank you.
Before we discuss the percentages, oh, I'm sorry, should we discuss my proposal previously about backing out the investment in income? That's going to affect...
Well, I think we've run through the exercise. You can see the magnitude of what we're dealing with here. Because anything else we remove from the revenue plan magnifies the issue.
Right.
Okay? So what we did is we built another spreadsheet that we're going to present that will present some ideas, okay? And this has not been discussed at Financial Planning Team. And do they have this, Michael, in there?
That one will be arriving by carrier pigeon tomorrow morning. Just kidding. That one is in the packet.
And the file name?
The file name, if you're in the 4-1-2019 folder. It's a PDF and it's entitled "Revenue allocations 04-01-2019."
So, Liz, if I could ask a request of you, Liz. As you're going through this, if you can let the board members know, you're talking about line item 13, because when they're looking at it and you keep saying, you know, you talk to the screen, they don't see you. So, if you could just say, if you look at line item 13, row B, you know, they could go right to it.
It's not in Excel.
I only see it in a PDF format.
Really?
Yeah.
Now, that's no good then.
Does your, does it show up as an Excel on your display?
He's not looking at it, he knows it already.
No, but it's small enough, we can...
I look at the screen.
Oh, okay.
This is an Excel.
Yeah, but... This is published. But what's in the folder is not. It's a PDF.
Never mind.
Oh, I'm looking at this.
Keep going.
Fortunately, there aren't that many lines on this.
So, what you have here is, if we, go ahead, Liz, I'll let you, I don't want to take your thunder.
By all means. Basically, what we have here is just a breakdown of different iterations of percentage allocations. So, at the top of this, everybody can see the school department's modified level services budget figure of $32 million, which we just reviewed on the previous revenue plan. We have the allocations over to the left-hand side of 66% is the starting point, which we just reviewed, leaving a modified level services budget gap of $953,000. Going down to 66.75%, if we were to allocate the available revenue by 66.75% to the school department, that would then leave them with a modified level services budget gap of $527,000. If we were to increase the allocation to 67%, that would leave the school department with a $385... Sorry, it got smaller. $385,000 budget gap.
Just slide it.
And if we were to increase the allocation to 67.22%, that would leave a school modified level services budget gap of $260,000.
Mrs. Minnie Valley?
Can I ask you, in terms of when we saw that $953,000 deficit for modified level services and the chair explained it was to add, Chair of School Committees explained it was based upon, I think, two or three new positions, did you also factor that into their benefits costs? Because that's not a true, it'll increase those line items too.
Both the municipal side and the school side are responsible for any increases in FTEs, and they would need to adjust their health insurance expense allocation accordingly.
That's what we're changing in this plan.
But it's not factored in though, in what you showed us, so the $953 would be a lot more.
But they're using a cushion of 4.5% to help absorb those costs.
No, no, let me try to answer this. If you, when you roll back and you look at the spreadsheet, if you roll up above, you'll see that they have an allocation of $3.9 million. They can make all the decisions they want, they have to live within the $3.9 million they have allocated for their insurance. And the same goes for the town. We have a $1.6 million...
1.5.
$5 million health insurance line item. So, if we add positions, we've got to live within that 1.5.
Or, or we adjust a budget, you know, a budget to accommodate that, and we've discussed that at financial planning, that any new positions that would be added to their...
Mr. Misery, you have something?
Yes.
I was...
I mean, we can play around the percentage if we guess what. The bottom line is, there's a budget gap of a million and a half or more.
Well, again, that's why we present, I, what I didn't want to do is go to, Ms. Minnie, I'll get back to you.
I just want to hear what the Finance Director had to say. She was midstream answering a question.
I apologize, I thought it was done.
Let's let her finish what she's giving us, her information. Do you remember what you were telling us?
In regards to health insurance. So, the health insurance figures that are listed there for the municipal side as well as the school side, the 1.5 for the municipal side and the 3.9 million for the school side, that is based upon a year's average of health insurance costs for each side and then taken out 4.5%. That's all it is, there's no new FTEs in that. And so, as, as we've talked about it, as the budgets have, you know, formed and new positions have been added, that in order to accommodate those new positions, if we take, for example, the school side, if we take the three positions or the two positions, they would need to increase that 3.9 million for their health insurance figure, and they would then have to reduce something in their operating budget to offset those, those costs.
But they're allowed to do that, but we're not. So, for example, the Mrs. Preney's person that she wants to bring on full-time or the veterans, we don't, we're not adding, factoring that into ours. We wouldn't just be able to shift from one item to another for that.
That's correct.
We would have to have a specific appropriation for it.
For the reason that we do not have a balanced or recommended budget by the town administrator at this, this point in time, we have not made those adjustments as of yet. But we would have to find it as well within our available overall revenue number and then, you know, reallocate our health insurance expenditure costs.
Okay, you ask a great question because under the old way we used to do the revenue expense plan, that was a, that was an issue. And now it's, now it's being accounted for in the right buckets. We're going to be held responsible for what we do, they're going to be held responsible for what they do. It's just, it's the only way we can do it to manage the expense appropriately. Yes?
I'm just concerned looking at the math here is, we have, we're running about between the town side and the school side about a $1.3 million deficit.
Yep.
That's using $260,000 or $50,000 of nonrecurring interest income to fund this. So, we're really running about a $1.5 million budget deficit.
As well as another $100,000 from the 2.6 to 4.5 on the insurance.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think at some point, as a town, we need to look at sharpening our pencil on these budgets because this is not sustainable. We only had a small increase in health insurance, yet we have this huge budget gap, and that's even using a quarter million dollars of interest income that I don't think we should be using for this general budget anyways on top of it. I mean...
So, just so you, the town side, obviously, you look at that municipal modified level services budget. The town administrator, if we can get to it, the next subject, is going to talk about some of his recommendations. He hasn't made that yet. So, that number is going to go down. All these things that have been proposed, we've encouraged, but now we have to make some tough decisions. So certainly, he's going to have to make decisions on what not to fund. What we needed to have a discussion as a board is, first of all, I didn't want to go to Financial Planning Team meeting and say, you know what? I'm going to agree to a 67.22% split and the town gets 34%, okay? I didn't want to go and make those decisions without having a discussion with the board because I think that shouldn't be done unilaterally. I think we need to make sure we're all understanding why the percentage, the percentage has to change. That's why I wanted to put, present it tonight. We all have to understand this together. Okay? And if we don't believe in that philosophy, we want to stick to the 66-34 like we have traditionally, then you could see the impact and what that means.
Do we know what the difference with, what the deficit would be at each side under the old plan?
Yes. That's the number right up there. If you look behind you.
Yep.
Liz will point it out with the little pointer.
Under the old plan, if we go back to this, the revenue available under the old plan to the town is $16,004 and to the school is $31,008. And if we go back to the old format...
He wanted to know what the variance would be, what's the delta?
Because the insurance would be off the top on the first...
Sure. Round numbers, if you look at this figure, this is...
That's it.
This is close to the $16,004, I think it's off by maybe $400 or something. So, the town's would be a million, and this is the number that's very close to what's available to the school, so theirs would be 260.
And that's what, if the old format, with the insurance being paid off the top, fixed cost.
If you look at that 66% up above, Yep. that's would be the delta for the schools. You look at the 34% down below for us, that would be our variance down below.
Okay.
Okay?
That's not accurate. So, the amount available under the old revenue format to the town is $16,004. The town's budget is $17,450. The amount available to the school under the old revenue format at 66-34 is $31,008. So, if I go back to the revenue allocations and I point out those, this is very close to the 66% for the school figure, and that leaves them with a budget gap of 260.
And that takes into account, the expenses will be different under the two different...
That's under the old revenue format where the health insurance is...
The fixed cost.
All above the line. And this is the figure that is close to the town at 34% under the old revenue format, and so, it's a million.
Mr. O'Larry, I'm sorry.
I just think one of the fundamental, basic things that we need to agree upon, first of all, is the revenue. You know, the revenue stream that we're talking about working with. And when it comes to the interest income from the PULTI money, you know, we know that there's going to be increased tax revenues coming through from the PULTI property at some point. I mean, one building's almost completed, but I mean, that will take a year and a half before it even hits the books here because it's assessment valuation based upon what it was on January 1st of the previous year. Right, so, that $300,000 isn't going to be realized in the revenue stream for another year and a half or so, right? Year and a half, two years, year and a half?
I'd say a year, probably from now.
Approximately a year and a half.
Well, it's, what was it, January 1st of this year? It wasn't completed.
It was.
So...
It was, but they had sold all of them.
No, no, so it's going to, so it's going to take a whole other year, so it's the following fiscal year and a half before that revenue really starts to come in. But at least you know that's going to be coming in.
Yeah.
You know, so you know that, so if this is the finger in the dike for anticipated revenue that's guaranteed, we could, we could look at that, you know? I think we could look at that. Just so long as, you know, next year's interest income, everybody understands what's available is going to be diminished for the operating budget as the other revenue increases. And I think this is where collectively, we need to come to some sort of agreement as to what the revenue stream's going to be and what are we going to use the revenue streams for? You know, right now, we have a need, we also have a short revenue stream from PULTI going to be coming in, but it's 18 months out before we get it. So, we have interest income from the money. If you want to use it now, it's a plug in the hole, okay? But the use of that's going to be diminished going forward.
And that should be less this year than last year because...
But I'm just saying, you know, but I think this is where the, you know, because we really don't know what the gap is going to be until we agree with the revenue figures are going to be. And so, I think that's the first step. What are we going to be using and what are we not going to be using?
Well, we present to you what our, what we, you know what our assumptions are in the revenue plan. If we want to make an adjustment to that, we need to know, we need that guidance now. Because again, this does...
But if we, if you go back to, you know, Andy's concern and I concern too about using one-time resources for operating budgets, that's a bad idea. So, that's $260,000. There's $100,000 already in here or thereabouts at 4.5 instead of 2.6, you know? So now you're at $350,000 that's a plug in the hole that some of us are concerned, are buying into necessarily. But at some point, we have to come to some agreement as to what we're going to be using. And again, I still, I'm hung up on the insurance portion of things and the difference between the 4.5 and the 7.5. That's about... You know, so if that's, if that's $50,000, $55,000 for every, every basis point, you know, that's another three basis points, another $150,000, $175,000 that's somewhere in here. You know, so you've got $175 there, you've got $300 over here, and all of a sudden, you know, your 1.3, you know, grows to 1.7, 1.8. If it's determined that we're going to pull those one-time monies out and not use them for general operating expenses.
I mean, I would like to request that we don't do that this year because next year you will see an increase in new growth with the new tax revenue. And I think next year is the time you reallocate the percentages like you're talking about.
If I could speak to that, though, we are seeing more growth this year than we did last year. So, I think at a minimum, that interest income has to come down proportionally versus how much... I think we're just, it's, to me, it comes back to the condition of the roads in this town. We've been struggling without CIBC. The roads need a shot in the arm. You know, anyone travels down Mount Vernon can see it, and there's, I could name a ton of roads that need help.
That's on the list, though.
Yeah.
Robert is on the list.
But I mean, I just think, the PULTI money we got in was great, but it was for a particular purpose. You know, you can only do certain things with it by virtue of how it came in. I think the interest on that really should be used for things that we could use the principal for. But again, I'm just one of five, I don't...
Okay, but I have to remind you, under the old way we used to do things, the trash fee revenues were shared with the schools. We've had to remove all that.
That's okay. Again, I'm fine with the allocation and how it's working out, that's okay. I'm not hung up on that at all.
Again, it flushes out where it's a significant impact on the schools. And that's why we need to have this discussion. But now we're going to be tiggering with the revenue plan. The main, this is magnifying...
I don't call it tiggering.
Mrs. Minnie Valley?
I know.
It's a lack of a better term, Stephen. Mrs. Minnie Valley?
No, because if we don't, if we don't sort this out now, this sort of allocation or split is a moving target because it's, it's never going to be fixed at 66, whatever it is, 34.
The allocation split can remain whatever it is, it's just the revenue available is going to shrink. So, the gap widens.
We're never going to, there was already, there was a gap last year. We're never going to catch up to this gap. Even giving 67.22, there's still a $260,000 gap that's, that has to be met. So, it's always going to continue to rise, and then we're just going to keep adjusting when there's things that we've put off doing. So, the biggest driver from what we just saw is the health insurance. You know, ours being 1.5 million and the school's being almost 4 million, or I think that's what the figure was that we looked at. So, it's a pretty significant thing, and if we don't know how many full-time or part-time are being added in and driving those numbers up and we don't split it up like this, I think the numbers aren't real for us and we'll never know that. And this percentage split is always going to be a shifting thing.
No, but if you take 2%, in other words, you've got 4.5 in there?
Yes, sir.
And the insurance is coming in at 2.5.
2.6.
You took all of that out, on the school side, it's about $78,000, and on the town side, I think it's $30,000. So, a total of $110,000.
No. I think the number's larger than that.
Well, then I, then I did my math too quick, Michael.
I could be wrong, the Finance Director stepped out of the room for a second.
Well, he just took 2% of the...
She's ducking. She just went under the table.
Does that math right?
When we factored it, 4.5, you know, it's in there, 4.5.
But truly, Mr. Chairman, I think we need to determine what the revenue figures truly are and what we're comfortable sending back to the Finance Planning Team to work with. The gap's just going to get wider, no doubt. Gap's going to get wider.
I'm looking for feedback, that's why I brought it, that's why I presented this tonight, the way I am. I'm looking for feedback. That's why I brought it, that's why I presented this tonight, the way I am.
Well, Michael, I see two problems, okay? One is the gap, and two is how the gap is allocated, right? Which is the percentage ratio that would be used for years that I agree needs to be modified based on the new plan, right? And I think you gotta go back and look at some of the growth figures based on what the past few years would be with the new plan to see, in fact, if that percentage number could be sustained. It may not be.
Well, that's, that's one of the challenges that we had trying to determine what that percentage is because, you know, I could advocate for the sixty-seven point two percent for the schools, but I'm not so sure we should start there next year. You know, it should, like you said, reset, let it flow out and see. I think you should always go back to the sixty-four thirty-four every year and reset there, and then let the revenue plan.
No, I think you're, I'm saying, if you look at the budget based on the new plan in the past two or three years, you would see the percentage.
Of new growth.
Of what it would be with the budget. Given the two budgets, you see what the percentage differentials are.
Yeah.
And you see if those percentages change drastically. That's just a check.
Yeah. I understand, but what we're talking about here now is changing the new growth numbers that we have allocated in this revenue plan.
Well, that's why I asked for the Pulte number to be pulled out separately because that is, it's new growth, but there is a cost of that new growth because you got police and fire and, you know, and maybe an impact on the schools, you know.
Of course.
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, that's why our modified, our municipal modified level services number is so large because we do have some things that are being proposed that are in that number. We know we're not gonna increase, you know, seventeen point four million. We know that's not gonna be the exact number. But we have to make some staffing changes knowing we have this increase in services that require, that's gonna come from the Pulte. Also with the Twenty Elm, which is down the road. The schools are gonna certainly have that impact. I think these numbers reflect a lot of that thinking. So, I'm not so sure what you're looking, what the board is asking us to do next.
I'm personally asking for the investment income to be backed out in here, Mark Torres, infrastructure. That's what I'm personally asking for. You're asking for, yeah.
So you're asking us to change the number right now and show you what this delta would look like?
Yeah.
So Liz, Michael.
The income from.
What's the percentage of income from? The investment income that we have allocated in the revenue plan?
Two hundred and thirty thousand.
So we, we just, I guess we're gonna be doing this.
Take the percentage of it, yeah. It's two-third, one-third, or whatever, sixty-six, twenty-four, thirty-four.
What do you mean two? You don't, you have to do that at the top of the line. You have to take the whole number out, and then it, you know, what you're doing is you're.
It's gonna net the bottom the same way, though.
The municipal government side has to take responsibility for the municipal government stuff. I'm, I'm agreeing with you, Andy, in regards to the roads, okay? Because we're using capital money, and we're gonna take that capital money, reallocate it to capital.
Right.
I agree with that. The way we've done it here, it will have a larger impact on the schools. So where do we get the schools this extra two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that flow in for us? We'll say thirty-four percent, for them, sixty-six percent. Where does it, where do we make up it? Where do we make it up? You see the, you see the deltas we're dealing with?
I think the budgets need to be sharpened. I mean, I think there's obviously some.
So when you're saying, you're talking layoffs or talking overrides?
I'm saying these, no, I'm talking overrides. I'll never talk overrides.
Okay, well then, you're talking layoffs.
Potentially.
Okay.
If that's the case. I don't know. I don't know what, I, I get a budget.
I just presented to you.
No, no, what I don't know is I get a number here saying, the school's budget is this. I don't know what that consists of. That's what I'm saying. I mean, I, you know.
Ginny, Ginny just read it.
No, I know what the bottom line number is.
And you have it in your budget. You have it in there.
All right, but what I'm saying is I don't, you know, I, that, they haven't even gotten to their, you guys haven't even done your final budget hearing yet, right? Yeah, so I mean, that number's gonna fluctuate. It always does. It always comes down when it gets closer to the, you know, cutting time and. I don't, I just, I, we have roads that are falling apart, and the longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost. Once those roads reach, reach reclamation stage, we're gonna spend a ton lot more on roads, so I mean.
And if the majority of the board is saying, you're gonna give us direction to remove the two hundred and forty thousand dollars out of this revenue plan so you can reallocate it outside of this budget, it'll be completely outside of this, right? It won't even be, won't even show up on this spreadsheet, based on the way I'm understanding it.
The finance director stepped out, but I, from what I understand, I don't think that it would, no.
It would, it would not show up.
It would not show up there. I mean, if you're taking it out.
It would be your mark towards.
If you're taking it out of the operating budget, it would not show up there.
Excuse me, I just want to open up an old room, not that old, though.
I'm sorry.
I want to open up an old room, but not that old. Just earlier in the evening, Hillview Payment and Lewy Taxes should not be included in there if it's included in there.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
The finance director returned, but we do not have the Hillview Payment and Lewy Taxes in the revenue plan correct.
No, it wasn't in.
It's not, it's not in. Wasn't in there, budget, or it's not in there?
That was made very, very clear earlier. About three hours ago, that was made very clear.
No, no, what was made clear was it was available, but now we're just being told it's not included in the revenue plan.
Can, can, what, it says payment and blue taxes, right at the top line?
Oh, there's others. Okay. Michael.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, the hour's late, and I think it would be helpful for the finance director and I, and I don't want to speak for yourself, but probably for you, to get some general feedback. And I think we've heard some of it. I don't think we want to get into tinkering with the numbers here. I think, give the finance director, myself, and you the opportunity to adjust this, to reflect that feedback.
Mrs. Minipelli.
Would you be able to find out, because again, we are fixed. We know how many employees we appropriated for that town meeting says yes to that. We know what that is. Would you be able to find out for us how many new employees or hires occurred in the school department in the, in this year?
In the current operating year?
Yes, yeah.
I'm sure we could identify the information, yeah. We don't have it readily available, but.
And how much that, I think, how much that budget fluctuated based on that.
I'm not speaking to a judge.
Additional.
I'll recognize.
You know, additional employees.
This is Embriano.
Hi, Janine Embriano, eleven business way. I just want to remind the board that they may or may not know, when this whole revenue thing of the, the changing and putting the insurance above, the school was told that we would be held harmless. At this point in time, we're not being held harmless.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this one more time. We never said you would be held harmless. We said our goal is to not, we're trying not to hold you harmed, right? We're trying to not cause you harm. That was the goal here.
Right.
Which we didn't, because when you go and you look at these numbers under the old revenue plan, that is still a significant amount of money.
The difference between the old and the new at this point is a delta of what, six fifty?
Can I say something here? This is not an us against them scenario.
No, I'm not saying it is.
We have a fixed amount of money as we, we're trying to work with here.
Right.
So, we're not, we don't want to be harmed either. It's not about harming one another. It's about trying to figure this out.
My point is, if this way of doing things had not been done, the very first thing that we saw, the school is, the school side is being brought down six hundred and fifty thousand.
You're not brought down anything yet because we haven't made any decisions.
Well, I know.
That's what we're trying to get at.
That's what we're trying, but I'm trying to say that the difference between the two plans is that delta for the school side.
Again, we, we didn't disagree with you that we have to change the percentages. And that's why I presented that, we presented that last chart, to show you that we're looking at it, okay? But I couldn't go there because I told you, or in advance, we have issues with the board members on the four point five percent for the health insurance. Now we're gonna take out even more money out of the revenue plan that came from interest income. We still haven't got the rest of the feedback yet, so, you know, again, when I say not be held harmed, we're held as much harmed as you are, and we're trying to get to that solution. But if you want us to go back to the old revenue plan, we could certainly do that. And then you guys are gonna bear the brunt of the cost of all these increases in the trash fee. And I don't think you want to see that either coming out of your budget because under the old format, that's what would have happened, and that's not fair either. So, you know, we're trying to come up with a new solution, not because we're trying to benefit the municipal side, because we're trying to be fair, separating the expense where they belong, and the trash does not belong with you. Would you agree or disagree? Okay, so don't, I want, I don't want to hear again that anyone's being held harmed. We're trying to help. And if, and we gotta stop saying that we promised you that you'd be held harmless. You are not harmed. If you go back and look at, we're gonna try to find you that thirty-one million dollars that you would have gotten under the old revenue plan. We're gonna do the best we can. You see what we're working with here, and you are so just heard. We're going to reduce the revenue number. So, you know, doing the best we can here. So I presented it this evening. I asked to present it this way. I needed to get this direction because we certainly could have made a lot of decisions in the financial planning team, and they would have all gotten shot down tonight if we did it the way we were going to do it. And that, you know, the board has a right to provide there, but this is a structural change the way we have done it for years. So, I take offense to it because we haven't made any decisions, no decisions have been made yet. So, let, let us continue the conversation. Mr. Masari.
Michael, we, we know that the total between both town departments is well over a million dollar budget gap, correct? Three and three.
No, well, again, Bob, the town administrator is coming up next with his proposals, okay? So we will, right, I think that's what.
Well, that's what I was gonna suggest. Maybe we can't go much further.
It's a twenty-twenty department budget request and priorities.
The town administrator and the finance director.
So we're gonna talk about priorities. So we haven't, we haven't finalized your number yet. Roughly, it's seventeen point four million dollar request, but we know it's not going to be that.
That's the summary of the departmental request. That is not my recommendation.
Thank you.
My recommendation will not be available till April twenty-second. The next agenda item was intended to provide the board members the opportunity to give any general feedback at this hour they wish to provide relative to all of the budget hearings that we received. The finance director and I have some level of guidance before we start making our recommendation.
Yes, Mrs. Minipelli.
That's hard to do because I sit here now, this is the third or fourth year of hearing people coming and saying, I need help, I need help, I need this, I need that. But now we see this short, that's very hard to do. I would like to see the people that came here and said, we need a grant writer, we need a person to handle this or that. I need to bump up her hours to full-time. I need another staff person. I'd love that to be funded, to get these people the help that they need. And that's hard for me to say, do that, when this is, this is appearing to be a shortfall for the school. Who also needs, which also needs specific services to provide to the students, level services, you know? So how do we do that when we need, we need to fix this first, or figure it out first, I think.
Well, we're making it worse because we're gonna take money out of the revenue plan, which is magnifying.
And we should because last year, we found that as a one-time means and we said, this cannot be factored into your budget again, and it clearly was. We said one time to fix a gap.
That was my interpretation.
Yeah, but we're not using that money again. We didn't, it was one time. We didn't use it again.
Well, we clearly need it.
You're talking about the principal, we're talking about the interest. I thought both were gonna be used once. The principal was once and the interest was once. That was my interpretation.
To fix a gap, to fund a gap.
I agree with you on the principal, but the interest.
Now we're back to that.
Income, I've never heard that before.
Is this a clarification question?
It doesn't matter.
Mike, your modified level town budget, that's saying yes to everyone's request?
Yeah, it would be saying yes to everything that you heard. That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other feedback you want to give us in regards to the revenue? What you want us to take out? Mr. O'Leary, then, Mrs. Minipelli.
I'm gonna hold fast to get to the, to the insurance thing. But aside from that, the town administrator's gonna make a recommendation. And I don't even know the details, but if it's gonna be seventeen million instead of seventeen four, right? It's four hundred thousand dollars, the requests that were made that are not gonna be met. And helps close the shortfall if all the revenue remains the same as it, as it currently is. I mean, the shortfall right now, as it sits, is where it's always been. It's been two to one ratio. School gets hit twice as hard as a, as a, as a general government because they're twice the size of general government. That's why it's a sixty-six, thirty-three, sixty-four, whatever you wanna call it. Forty years, it's been the same. It's been within a percentage point every single year. We've sliced it and diced it every which way. So when there's a shortfall based upon revenue stream, you know, it's gonna be two to one ratio with the school department, you know? They're twice the size of us. Then it comes down to the prioritization, you know? General government's gonna give up a little bit more in order to fund the schools this year, or the school department has to give up in order to fund certain needs of the municipality for short periods of time because of specific needs that we have. You know, that's what, what it comes down to.
Uh, Mrs. Minipelli first, then, then, Mrs. Minipelli first, then you. You're good? Okay, go ahead, Ben. Can we get the mic? I'm sorry. Okay, okay.
So, we have a lot of stuff going on here, and I've also been involved in these several days of meetings. And, you know, I think one, the first and foremost is the allocation methodology change that the school's now living with. And, you know, I think, I think I'd love to hear some guidance from the board on what to do about that because, you know, essentially, we are asking the schools to change their method of business just based on, you know, I, I think the changes are correct, and it's shedding light on, you know, the different business entities and the way they operate. But at the same time, it's casting something on them that they had, you know, that, they're really just seeing this now for the first time and what that impact is. So that's one issue. On the, on the second point, the, I keep hearing about pulling revenue out of the plan this year, and we as a committee are, you know, we were in those meetings last year as well. We're very concerned from a FinCom perspective about using investment income, you know, to fund operational budgets. But at the same time, you know, we're, we're, we're in the financial planning meetings, and I'd love to hear from the board. I mean, you know, we're asking, we're, we're saying, schools, your, your deficit's even greater now this year just because of this methodology change, and, and two, we're pulling revenue out at the same time. I mean, I'd like to hear guidance as to where it's coming from. I, I've sat through all these presentations, and there's not a lot of, you know, there's not a lot of fluff there. And so I, it would make things a lot easier on our financial planning meetings if we had some, some. I, I'm sure you guys and Mr. Minipelli as well have some inklings of where it could come from, but I haven't heard anything in the past several hours that we've been here that, that comes up with any reasonable answers. I mean, there's not a lot of, I, I mean, Michael's job is gonna be supremely hard to get this budget down if we pull revenue out this year. Thank you.
My, my request was to accept the revenue plan as presented because next year, you're gonna have significantly more revenue coming in from the new buildings. You're gonna have two, you know, full operations, and then you can maybe make those changes because you're gonna have more revenue. And we have a lot more new growth along Route twenty-eight that's gonna come to fruition next year. But if the, if the majority of the board wants to take it up now, I can't stop you. I'm not gonna agree with, but, you know, one of the reasons why I can't agree with it, I spent a lot of hours in the financial planning team having these discussions, and it would be wrong of me to agree to that.
Have we finished the insurance? Four and a half versus seven and a half yet?
Well, Mr. O'Leary is holding off. He said he was gonna get to that.
No, I mean, again, I, I still think it's not seasoned enough, and I think we need to somehow. I need to be convinced that, that the money isn't gonna end up in, there's free cash at the end of the year and that the savings that's being realized is gonna be squirreled away somewhere where it can offset, you know, potential premium increases two, three years down the road. I haven't heard, I haven't heard the machination to be able to do that yet. I haven't heard the solution.
If, if I.
I know, I know, we have a Warren article that the administration right now isn't looking to support, so.
If I heard correctly what various people said this evening concerning that issue, it sounded to me as if there was an option, if you wanted to, to put more money into the thing with the initials.
PFA.
The PFA. But in, the, the otherwise, the decision, the discussion was also concerning getting together with the employees as well as the municipal half of the, you know, everybody getting together so for the PFA to discuss how to go forward next year, and if you were gonna set aside some sort of a special fund. But that this year, maybe not so much. And we had a buffer, and we had a.
The administration wants to sit down with the insurance advisory committee and work out some sort of a, an agreement whereby it's not gonna be a two point six percent increase, but a three point six. increase, but a three-point-six and the reserves are gonna be built up. The PFA, I mean, that's an aside, that's a side issue. We have some real savings right now based upon our budget. Seven-point-five percent of the, you know, increase is what's been budgeted, okay? And now we're saying it's gonna be four-point-five. Where'd the other three basis points go? You know, it's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars somewhere. Where is it? And where is it, and where are we gonna put it? Or is it just being absorbed into the operating budget? When I can see it's being absorbed into the operating budget, to me, that's one-time money on a risky business.
Well, Mr. O'Leary, we've just looked at budgets that have substantial deficits.
I know.
And they, and those budgets are based on a four-and-a-half percent insurance increase, not a seven-and-a-half.
I know. That additional hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred thousand dollars has been absorbed into the budget, into the operating budget. But, you know, we don't know what next year's premium increases are gonna be, right? We don't. I can tell you it's not gonna be two-point-six. Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, to answer your question earlier, I, I think part of the problem, thing that I'm struggling with is I don't think, and I don't mean this in a bad way, we're just dealing with very preliminary numbers right now as far as these budgets. I mean, our town budget is saying yes to everything. Well, that's not gonna be the final budget. I'm sure the school budget's got things like that, and theirs too. It's preliminary budget, so until we can at least-
Just schools, I don't wanna speak on behalf of them, but they, they have a, it's a modified level services budget. Their real, their, their N R P S numbers is more than that, but we didn't even go there.
Yeah, well, we have a modified level service budget too that says yes to everything. So I don't know, all I'm saying is, there's always, these numbers always come down historically as they get closer to signing off on the budget. It's kinda hard, yeah, if we're at one-point-three million dollar deficit, yeah, what I wanna do probably isn't feasible. I don't think we're at a one-three, one-point-three million dollar deficit though. That's my point. I'd like to see what our numbers look like a little tighter before we really make these decisions, but.
The schools have a hearing on Wednesday?
Budget workshop.
Budget workshop.
Is that the big one? Everyone goes to?
No.
No?
It's a private one.
It's not, it's, it's a-
Private?
It's a-
You have that one people?
It's in a super-
That's your final budget hearing, right?
Yeah.
That's not, okay.
We have two possible workshops before that.
Gotcha.
Mr. Buckley?
The only, the only thing I would like to just add here, which is, just to put the request before the, the select board here, you know, I think we've tried to work, and I think the founding planning team's done a really good job this year trying to figure out the new plan, you know, and I, and we all understood the idea of the trash, you know, coming out because even the way it was last year where a certain percentage was in the revenue fund and another percentage was not in the revenue fund, and Mrs. Minipelli's comment about, well, if you add employees, then in the past, some hopes coming out of the municipal, so completely understand why we did that. Just wanna point out, under the old format, it would've been thirty-one-point-eight million dollars, and that's where the sixty-seven-point-two-two percent gets us to, is the same number. And so, my request would just be, when we're considering that, that we've tried to work with it to address some of the issues that are being faced. And just from a real number, not looking at percentages or tying back from previous years, under the format that we've worked with in the past, however many years before I was coming to any of these meetings, it was, that number would've come out with thirty-one point eight to, thirty-one-point-eight-two-two million. And, you know, we're just requesting that we have the same number at the end of this, which would be the sixty-seven-point-two-two percent, so.
Could you put that up on the screen real quick? So, what Mr. Buckley is saying is, was gonna put it back up on the screen, so you know, and I know we're gonna wrap up here soon, but I think it's an important part of this discussion because what transpires after we go, uh, the sixty, we had the sixty-seven-point-two percent right here. So, any change to the revenue plan magnifies that number for the school. So it's sixty-seven-point-two percent. Let's just say we agreed to that. It's, they still have a two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollar deficit.
The municipal side has a million dollar deficit.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I'm just saying-
Six hundred and some-
And I'm not saying I'm even in agreement.
It's a trash issue that we have to address.
Is there anything else in this revenue plan that you want us to deduct to flush out these numbers a little bit more? I got the reallocation of the three percent for the health insurance and whatever the percentage was for the investment income. Anything else? That's it, just those two things?
I'm personally just for the one. Not, not for the health insurance, I'm for the investment income we backed up. Yeah, we should vote on them separately?
I, I think we do, I think we should take a vote. Mr. O'Leary.
Yeah, and again, I think, you know, at least on the, on the investment income side, I think that's gonna be replaced with new growth, but we also have to make a policy decision here to set forward for next year and the year after that the use of that interest income is going to shrink as the Pulte revenue comes in, if that's what we believe.
We said that last year, though.
If that's what we think, I know, but that's what we think, but I mean, we've gotta, you know.
Yeah, I do, I don't remember hearing that about the percent, about the interest income.
Well, Mr. Messer, I worked out, I worked out a wonderful spreadsheet about three years ago when this whole thing was percolating, about, as the revenue stream was coming in, you know, how long would it take for the buildings to come on, you know? And if we invested the money, how much would it gather? And then we're just gonna offset, and all of a sudden, one would pass the other one by, which is the revenue stream from the, from the buildings, and the interest income would be back into the conference, saved for different purposes, which would be for one-time things or economic development.
We can go back in the minutes. We can go back and read the minutes. That was very clear.
Well, would you be against a percentage of that? Like, like Steve's saying, like, maybe we take fifty thousand of it this year, maybe next year we take another fifty. I, I don't know, we gotta, we gotta chip at that at some point.
There's no way with the deficit you can back the two-hundred-and-sixty thousand out. You can't this year.
That's also not a real deficit, though, right now.
I know what you're saying about that, but if school doesn't add its extra positions-
There will be a deficit.
And we don't add our extra positions, we're still looking at issues, and then next year you're starting out with that. And there'll be a deficit next year, so this is just gonna keep creeping up. I like the way that this is shown now. It's more true, I think it more, it's more true in terms of how we're seeing this, the budget impact of adding employees and how that's driving some of those amounts up.
The allocation of cost for school versus general government is true to us.
Right, right. Definitely. But at the same time, you're not gonna, if we, this year do sixty-seven-point-twenty-two, it's still missing that two-sixty. You can't pull the two-sixty out of the revenue plan this year.
You should pull something out, though.
What, though? There is nothing to pull out.
Because you're, you're setting, because I, I agree with you from this year, but the problem is, I'm looking more of a structural issue. We're set up to fail down the road because we're creating, we're creating budgets based on money that we're not gonna have at some point. And I just say, we're just, I know, Steve, I know you know about time, I know how I'm verbalizing this incorrectly, but we're over budget, we're overspending based on our incomes.
But, but it will, it will shift to something else coming in in revenue.
But we said that last year, and then next year we're gonna say the same thing.
But we know it's coming, we know it's coming down. We know the buildings are going up, we know that, and it's gonna come up.
We don't know that a hundred percent, factually. It's not a guarantee, we don't know.
Oh, it should-
We know that the revenue of the one building, once it's fully occupied, will more than make up for the two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars.
That's, that's the thing.
But I haven't seen that, I haven't seen that projected out with the incremental increases in expenses.
And that's all I'm saying is that if we gave it one more year, and I agree with you, I won't be on the board then. But you guys can certainly say it right now, you can take a vote, document it, put it in the minutes, whatever you want, but I think, 'cause I don't have a better term, Steve, tinker with that revenue number now certainly is going to make this significantly harder. And I don't wanna speak for the town administrator or the finance director, but I don't know how you feel about it. I'd like to hear from you, I'd like to hear from Liz, but I'd like to hear from Ben.
So, so I keep hearing about Pulte is gonna solve all the problems. It's not because your expenses are compounding and your revenue is not. So, when you, when you compound the expenses every year, there's gonna be continued deficits. So, yeah, using operational, using the investment income as operational, uh, to solve the operational problems, yeah, it's an issue. And it will, it'll get even worse if you don't make a policy decision down the road. Uh, but I, I just wanna point out, you know, Pulte's not gonna solve the world's problems. It's gonna be, you know, this, there's gonna be deficits compounded every year.
When it comes to the healthcare number, we just learned that at our last meeting. But when it comes down to this percentage thing, I wish I'd known a little bit more about it. We never really talked about it before. This is the first time I've heard anyone seriously talk about it. And I one-hundred percent agree with you with the, the one-time money. We should never do that again. But we'll certainly go run the numbers for you and we'll show you. Michael's gonna go back, who's gonna work on his modified level services number, and we'll work on it, and I know the schools have their budget hearing on Wednesday, and I'm sure they're gonna work on theirs, but hopefully theirs won't trend upward, it will trend downward, and I guarantee you, ours will be trending downward. I guarantee it. To what level? I don't know because you heard all these budget hearings. We finished them tonight. And there, and Mrs. Minipelli articulated it perfectly. There has been a lot of departments that have been suffering in silence for far too long, and we know the services are going up in many of the areas, especially in our seniors, especially with our roads, especially with our police and fire, and we need to make change. This board has a strategic plan. We talked about dispatch, we budgeted for dispatch, we need to do the dispatch. I think these numbers reflect a lot of the stuff that we talked about in our strategic plan. These aren't just made-up numbers. You've heard all the budgets, it's all in there, everything has been presented to you. We have some tough decisions to make. And the town administrator, as I'm sure, he's gonna be losing a little bit of sleep coming up with his recommendations. So we meet again on April twenty-second, we'll readdress it between now and then, uh, we'll work on a new revenue plan, we'll look at, we're gonna look at it with both scenarios, with it in and with it out, and you guys can make a decision. And if we can get it to you sooner, we'll get it sooner. I apologize that we didn't have a hundred percent of the documents in share files this evening, that's on me. We worked a little bit late right up till the minute we, we started this meeting, so. Yes?
Is there, are we, do we, can we give some direction on the four-point-five and give some direction on the two-sixty at least?
So there's more guidance from us?
I'm fine with the four-point-five, but Steve, what you're saying is not lost on me either. I think we're tight.
I don't see how else you're gonna do it, if that's, you know.
Was there any discussion of just the straight two-point-five increase and nothing beyond that?
What does that mean?
In other words, just the rate increase and then use, using what was in the fund? What was the savings in the fund? Is there any discussion about that?
We never, never considered using anything in the savings. Uh, I don't recall any discussion where we would've kept the budget number at two-point-six only because of the unknown of the Medicare plans that were new.
Retirement, yeah.
Right.
It has to be four-point-five.
It doesn't have to be, but we never discussed it going to two-point-six, nor would we have because-
Well, I don't know where they put the four-point-five. Yeah, so you have to budget at least, at least a four-point-five to cover both.
That was movement in the right direction. It was good. No, certainly was, you know, it's more conservative. My concern again is, it's conservative, and I think it's still gonna produce some surplus. What happens to the surplus? You know, that's my concern with this insurance stuff. What happens to the surplus? It shouldn't be absorbed into free cash, it should be set aside in reserve for future increases.
Michael, did you wanna respond to that?
I guess, did, did I, did I miss here correctly, but is the four-and-a-half percent, is that, did you, did I hear you say that was acceptable?
I said that was progress.
Progress, but not acceptable.
True. But, and part of the reason is, I don't like the answer that we got so far in relation to any surplus. Where is it gonna go? It's gonna be absorbed into free cash. You know, we're not putting anything aside. Again, this hasn't been seasoned yet. It sounded like a broken record, but, um, it hasn't. It hasn't, and I think it's unreasonable not to, not to anticipate-
Michael.
-a couple of bad years.
So if we were to say, and the finance director's gonna have to probably participate in my, my line of questioning here, but if, let me make a deal with you. No, if I were to-
I'm gonna throw Bob's machine here to go off again, it sounds like some game show. Go ahead.
If, if we were to leave the budget at four-point-five percent, as it is in the revenue plan right now, with the understanding that the, the projected savings would be moved into the PFA stabilization fund, the existing stabilization fund at June town meeting, does not become free cash, it's moved at June town meeting, would that address your concern?
Which?
The one at the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty, so June twenty-twenty, the end of the fiscal year we're talking about.
What are, what are we gonna know, Mr. Twenty?
So it'd be June twenty-twenty-one, calendar year?
No, June of twenty-twenty, the end of the fiscal year we're talking about, I'm, I'm talking about here.
I have a question, Michael. If you let it go into free cash and October town meeting moved it, you know, kept track of what that number was as the year finished, and then put it into that account, would that be?
That's my preference, I just was under the impression it wasn't acceptable. But that would be my preference, 'cause then I'll know what the PFA costs were for that whole year. There's much less risk.
I find that acceptable as long as we agree to the rule you're concerned, I guess the concern would be raised, will town meeting accept it?
I mean, that, that's a question. It's a question in June, it's a question in June, too.
But will, what you're talking about, this strategy, when you talk about reallocating that delta, that three percent, is it, is it a collective bargaining, has it become a collective bargaining issue?
I see issue.
Uh, I don't think so. So again, to, to be clear, the, I'm talking about the difference, the budget being four-and-a-half percent, right?
Which is the town's portion of the seventy percent.
Correct. And the fifty percent, and the other fifty percent. But the difference between that four-and-a-half percent increase and whatever the actual costs are for that year, right? And we're talking about that money being set aside in addition to the savings in the PFA.
Three percent of the seventy percent. Three percent of the seventy percent.
I'm unclear where the three percent's coming from.
Well, if we put four-and-a-half in there and we budget it seven-and-a-half, you, you want us to reallocate that three-and-a-half at the end? That's what you said, did I misunderstand?
That's where I was, yeah, I, I went seven-and-a-half, the difference, same, right? But he's, he's, he's trying to, let's make a deal here. You know, to me, I think the four-and-a-half is low because I don't know what the retirees-
So he's talking about is three percent of the seventy percent.
That's a little different than what we do.
No?
Uh, so, the proposal, I think, was keep the health insurance budget at seven-and-a-half percent.
That's what was my initial proposal, right?
And then I, so we brought forth the health insurance budget at four-and-a-half percent.
Right, right.
And I was presenting how we would move the difference between the four-and-a-half percent and our actual cost for the fiscal year. So not the three percent, the three percent would be in the revenue plan, but the difference between the four-and-a-half percent and our actual cost, how we would handle that. I was trying to gauge what would be acceptable.
Ah, sorry, I'm deaf, my ears are all blocked again. Sorry, I'm deaf, my ears are all blocked again.
Don't you mean the four and a half percent is enough? You go to five and a half percent, maybe I could buy into the deal. Yeah, that, really that's it, was it another $50,000?
55, no.
$55,000, you know, and that, my comfort level rises a bit, still not where I think it should be, but.
This is a seven and a half, this is four and a half.
That's four and a half, correct.
So we don't have that, we don't want to add that back in because then that makes it even worse.
Right, no, it makes it worse, but, but at least you're allocating the funds and you're anticipating a problem down the road.
No, I.
Yeah, this is one-time money that you're, that's necessarily going to happen in a joint, so.
Almost there. Yes, 10 o'clock. Okay, I think we got enough.
You've got some feedback.
Maybe not. All right, so, Michael, did you want to run through that 2020 department budget request and priorities?
This was purely an opportunity for the board members to provide feedback and I, I do not find it to be an acceptable time to do that at this point.
Other than in relation to inspectional services, they have an awful lot of work ahead of them for this particular project, potentially the other one down the other side of town. They can't do it with the current manpower, I think that has to be a priority, a short-term priority until these developments are brought to conclusion over here at PULTI and if this other thing goes on, it's going to last another year or two. You're going to need, you're going to need more help there and facilities, which makes me think we may, the board, the future board may want to reconsider 102 Lowell Road as a satellite station for the fire station, going back to the old discussion you guys had way before I got on the board and maybe keep, and maybe have a fire station here and keep that one, based on what, you know, 20 Ym Street's coming along, to me it seems to make more sense because you're going to need facilities. You're not going to shut down the center of town, the current state?
Can't.
Town meeting will go.
And we have a piece of property that we don't have to pay a dollar for it. I just ask you to consider it. I won't be here, but I think it's going to come back into the equation based on what we're learning with the potential.
That's what we're going to have, there's other facilities.
We need to get that back in the equation and take it away from the EDC because I just, I think it's more useful and beneficial to you because like you said, we have to plan ahead, not staffing, but we also have to have the right allocated resources in the right areas based on what the chief has said. Okay? And.
So we can continue our discussion?
Yep, April 22nd, we'll have a lot more on that. All right. Do we got to go over the June town meeting warrant articles or we go with them?
You have the list of articles there. In terms of any of the, there goes the computer, battery died.
Lucky you.
We can all see them. So I, I'm flying blind now.
You're not expecting any resident ones, right?
No, we didn't receive any citizen petitions this, this year.
Swan Pond is, is on there.
Swan Pond is on there. We did talk with the residents at, at a meeting we had recently regarding the tree cutting that's been going on down there and we got some feedback from them and I understand there's an effort underway to try to address the holdout.
Yes.
And the two properties there, so that's on there. Again, time is going to become of the essence very quickly because again, we, we've not begun the study. We need the study to be completed so that we know what the dollar amount is that's needed for construction so we can go to town meeting in June on a warrant article. And we conveyed that to the residents who were at the meeting on Wednesday. They understand that, we're all on the same page. We talked about trying to get, you know, an end around, around the whole thing, but the problem is the, the holdout so to speak is right in the middle and so that makes the paving project much more complicated because you're talking about only half the room.
Okay.
Just the one side. Lengthwise, not widthwise.
And town administrator's report?
I, I beg someone for an ability to read from my report because at this point I'm going to miss something.
I was just looking at it.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy. So just a couple of things that I'll, I'll review. Redding Municipal Light Department began tree trimming in the vicinity of Swan Pond Road, as I mentioned earlier, during the week of March 18th. While the trimming has been consistent with their preventative maintenance program of the past few years, we received questions from the residents in the area regarding the program due to the tree density in the area. DPW director requested the trimming in this area be suspended until a meeting could be held with the Redding Municipal Light Department to review their plan in further detail. That meeting was held last week on Wednesday, March 27th, and we did have some neighborhood attendance there. Based on the feedback that we received, RMLD's contractor, Mayor Tree, will resume trimming in the Swan Pond Road area either the week of April 1st or the week of April 8th. Trimming is expected to last two to three weeks once it resumes. RMLD, RMLD will be trimming around wires and poles with the intention of removing limbs and/or trees that are near wires and poles to reduce the risk of unplanned outages and/or road lockages. While RMLD represents that it has the right to trim up to eight feet around the poles and wires, the intention is to remove only the most problematic limbs and trees. A portion of the area that is to be trimmed is along Swan Pond Road, property that is owned by the town between the paved cul-de-sac and the intersection with Adam Street. Mayor will be leaving the tree trunks and logs alongside the road for approximately two weeks for residents to take for firewood. After this period, the trunks and logs will be removed by a log truck. Residents are reminded that removing this wood is at their own risk and are urged to use caution while using motorized or other tools and while on the road, on or near the road. And so that's something that came from feedback with the Forest Committee, something that they suggested and I told them that I'd bring it up here to make sure it got out to the residents. I will note that a significant amount of the trimming is on unaccepted portions of Swan Pond Road, Adam Street and Dogwood Lane. Redding Municipal Light will contact, will contact residents of these road sections to discuss plans for the wood from the trees in these areas. Residents with questions are encouraged to contact DPW to follow up on it. I included copies of information from the MMA Legislative Update that I attended two weeks ago as well as the Mystic Valley Elder Service Legislative Breakfast that I attended with Mary Preney last week. And then finally, as the community may be aware, Massachusetts adopted a new food code last fall. I attached a state worksheet as well as a summary document from the Board of Health. Health Department's been working with the full-service and year-round food establishments regarding the code since last year. More recently, they've been focusing on discussions with the seasonal food establishments. Many of these are volunteer-run food service sites such as youth league snack shacks at our athletic facilities, but they're subject to the new stricter code. The resources of these volunteer-run food services sites are limited. The Health Department has therefore arranged a training for food service managers at these sites to be held here at Town Hall on Wednesday, April 3rd between 5:00 and 8:00. And there's been direct outreach to those organizations. We expect that most, if not all of them, will be represented. We understand the frustration felt by the many volunteers who may be impacted by this change in the food code. However, the town through its Board of Health is mandated to enforce the food code. We particularly are sensitive to food service issues due to last year's foodborne illness outbreak. We thank the public and our many community volunteers for their patience and understanding. I would also like to thank Health Director Bob Racy and the Board of Health for their diligent efforts to educate the community.